Welcome to the Tuesday, June twenty-third Planning Board meeting for the city of Miami Beach. We have a number of items that we will go through. We thank you for attending the meeting. Given the situation with the COVID crisis, we're still doing the meetings by Zoom. There will be opportunity for the public to participate. There are some instructions that will be read on how you may participate, whether you're attending the meeting by a computer or if you're attending via your cellphone or some other telephone in your space. So with that, Nick, if you can just lead us through the, some of the preliminaries, and I think you have an opening statement.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning, members of the board. I wanted to let everybody know that today's virtual meeting of the Planning Board has been scheduled pursuant to Executive Order twenty-sixty-nine of the Florida Governor, which suspends any Florida statute that requires a quorum to be present in person or requires a local government body to meet at a specific public place and permits local government bodies to utilize communications media technology such as Zoom, which we're doing today. In order to participate in today's meeting, please dial one eight 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 four seven five four four nine nine and use the webinar ID number eight three eight zero eight one seven two two four seven pound. Or log into the Zoom app and enter the webinar ID, which again is eight three eight zero eight one seven two two four seven. Members of the public wishing to speak on an item must click the raise hand icon if they're using the Zoom app or press star nine on the phone to raise their hand. Members of the public who do not have access to a computer and wish to provide testimony and/or submit evidence in support of or opposition to an item scheduled to be heard today may appear in person at the Miami Beach Convention Center at nineteen oh one Convention Center Drive through the Washington Avenue entrance in Art Deco Room two-two-nine. At this location, access to a computer will be provided. Lastly, on each quasi judicial application, I'll be swearing in each presenter, a member of the public wishing to speak. I'll be keeping time in today's meeting. Applicants will be given ten minutes to present, and members of the public will be given two minutes each. And finally, Mr. Chair, I'd like to read the city's notice regarding lobbyist registration. And if anyone has any questions after, please feel free to ask me. So if you're appearing on behalf of a business, a corporation, or another person, you need to register as a lobbyist with City Clerk's Office. If you haven't registered yet, you should register before you speak to the board. You don't have to register as a lobbyist if you're speaking only on behalf of yourself and not any other party or if you're testifying as an expert witness, providing only scientific, technical, or other specialized information or testimony in this public meeting. Or if you're appearing as a representative of a neighborhood association without any compensation or reimbursement for your appearance to express support of or opposition to any item. Expert witnesses and representatives of neighborhood associations shall, prior to appearing, disclose in writing to the City Clerk their name, address, and the principal on whose behalf they're communicating. If you're an architect, attorney, or employee representing an applicant or an objector, you must register as a lobbyist. These rules apply whether you're appearing in favor of or against an item or encouraging or arguing against its passage to fee, modification, or continuance. That's all for me for now.
All right. So with that said, we're gonna go ahead and go through the agenda. Michael, do we want to set a break time?
Yeah, excuse me, Kareem. You know, the meeting today is going to, we have a very, very, very long agenda, and the meeting has to end at three o'clock. So first of all, would we like to set a break time for lunch around noon? And we can, we can do that now and, and plan twenty or thirty minutes if you'd like.
Yeah, I think that, let's, let's, let me check in with the board members. Does anybody have an objection to maybe a twenty-minute lunch, just so we can get through the agenda versus thirty?
Okay with me.
I'm okay with that. I'm willing to work during lunch, and I do have to get off at two forty-five. My apologies for that.
Anybody else objecting to the twenty minutes?
No, that's fine.
I'm okay.
I'm okay.
All right, Michael, so we'll just set it at noon for twenty minutes, so that way we can try to move through as much of the agenda as possible.
Great. And second, sorry for the late notice. We just have been able to confirm that we can have an additional Zoom, Zoom meeting on Monday, June twenty-ninth. So before we get started, I want to poll the board members to see if they're available Monday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM. Because due to the length of this agenda, we are not going to get through all the items. So if we can have at least five board members that can participate in the meeting on Monday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM, we can give the applicants that are requesting conditional use permits the opportunity to request a continuance at the beginning of this meeting rather than waiting around all day long. You know, and then have the item continued till the, till the next meeting, which would be the July twenty-seventh meeting, so.
Michael, that's, that's, that's Monday, right?
Right, that'd be this Monday, so it'd be, basically, we would, at the end of this meeting at three o'clock, we would basically adjourn and then re-adjourn the meeting on Monday, June twenty-ninth. So are any of the board members available for next Monday at nine AM?
Jelby. I'm, this is Mark, I'm available.
I'm available also.
I'm available.
I'm available.
Okay, great. So with that, we have enough board members to have the meeting Monday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM. And we'll get started with the regular agenda. And then after we do the after-action report and the scheduled continuances, we will ask if any of the other applicants request to have their item continued to the Monday, June twenty-ninth meeting.
Okay, perfect. So let's, let's do this. I think at this time, we can take a, a motion for the approval of minutes from last meeting.
I move it.
So moving second, who was it, who moved it?
David.
Mark seconded, Mark seconded, yeah, thanks.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries, approve the minutes. Let's go to the consent items. Michael, all of these will just be deferred to a later date or withdrawn?
Right, so this, I'll read through the items, and this would be for continuance till the July twenty-seventh meeting date. This is file number PB eighteen dash zero two four four, the telecommunications ordinance, PB twenty dash zero three six seven, four thousand Alton Road, rezoning from GU to RM two, PB twenty dash zero three six eight, four thousand Alton Road, future land use map change from PF Public Facility, RM two residential multifamily medium intensity, PB twenty dash zero three six nine, four thousand Alton Road, additional regulations for properties that front the west side of Alton Road and the Julia Tuttle Causeway, PB twenty dash zero three seven zero, Biena District Overlay Amendments, PB twenty dash zero three five seven, nineteen-ten Alton Road for mechanical parking, Planning Board PB twenty dash zero three four four, AKA PB seventeen dash zero one six eight, seventeen thirty-three to seventeen fifty-nine Purdy Avenue, as well as PB nineteen dash zero two seven zero, one thousand to one thousand thirty Collins Avenue, the revocation hearing for the Fairwind Hotel. So the request is for all these items to be continued to the July twenty-seventh meeting date. And we do need a motion, and unless any board member has an objection or we have any public comment, we can have a motion to continue these items to the July twenty-seventh meeting date.
Let's see, but let me see if there are any. Let's see.
Mr. Chair, the only change, Michael, is that I think the telecommunications ordinance PB eighteen dash zero two four four, there's a request to continue that to August twenty-fifth. That's what was on the agenda.
Okay, okay, yes, that's correct.
So that would be the only change.
Okay, with that, do we have a motion to continue?
I'll move to continue those items to the, to July and then August for the telecommunications.
Second.
I'll second that.
Daniel.
All right, it's been moved in second.
And just, and just for the record, for these items that require an action, I'm gonna do a roll call vote to make sure we get all the board members recording the votes.
Sounds good.
Minutes request, I'm gonna go through the list. Kareem?
Yes.
Daniel Vitia?
Yes.
Mark Milan?
Yes.
David Weider?
Aye.
Nick Gelpe?
Jelby, yes.
Michael Barano?
Yes, go Jelby.
And Isidro Petrow?
Yes.
Okay, motion passes.
All right. So let's see. Now, we, we have two discussion items. We're gonna refer those to another day when we have more time, correct?
Correct. The discussion items will not be here today, they'll be deferred to a future date. So at this point, I think we should see if we have any applicants that would request their item to be continued to the new June twenty-ninth meeting date.
Okay. And just on that Tatum Waterway, let's just make sure that the two board members that are in that district, that they're available whenever we reschedule that.
Okay, for sure.
Okay. Um, so with that said, let me see how we're gonna do this. We're, we're doing this Zoom thing, and we're trying to learn like you guys are, so be patient with us as we correctly have excellent staff that knows how to work the Zoom and, and get us through. So I guess I'll look at the participants here. How, how do I figure out who is asking for continuance? Are they gonna raise their hand? Is that the way we're gonna do it?
Yeah, we should go by who's raising their hand. Because we two request a continuance.
So at this time, we're asking for anybody who's currently on the agenda who would, would not mind being continued until the next Planning Board meeting, which will be Monday, June twenty-ninth at nine AM. So do we have any volunteers? And you can indicate your, your desire to volunteer to move to that meeting instead of having to wait throughout the duration of this meeting by raising your hand in the Zoom platform. Okay, Michael, I don't, I don't have any hands raised. I don't know, PJ, PJ, can you verify that we don't have any?
We just have Kent Robbins, let me just allow them to speak, just give me one moment here.
And PJ, I'll be setting that the clock at two minutes, and I'll advise when the, when time's up.
Understood. Kent, you're live?
Well, good morning. I'm here to speak on, on the June twenty-third meeting on twelve-hundred Ocean Drive. I'm sorry, I'm having echoes, I don't know what the cause of that is. I represent the Victor Hotel, which is adjacent to, to twelve-hundred Ocean Drive. Twelve-hundred Ocean Drive has an applicant for continuing. Excuse me, an application for condition for a conditional use permit. I'm having tremendous trouble with echo. Is that on your side or in my side?
Uh, Kent?
It's your side speaker probably.
Okay. Well, let me turn off the, one of the speakers here. Okay, I'm here to request that continues. We got notice of this here thirty days before the hearing, that it would be scheduled for one PM. Unfortunately, because of the virus, this matter was continued on Zoom and then rescheduled, not for nine AM, but for one PM. Excuse me, not for one PM, but for nine AM. Unfortunately, I have an expert that retained as, on a sound issues. This sound expert was prepared to testify at one PM today. However, what he advised, I was at nine AM on Friday, when I first found out about, we determined that he was unavailable. I provided a copy of his report, and in his report, affirmative states, "I am unable to attend the meeting by Zoom at nine AM on Tuesday, June twenty-third, as I will be on a flight all morning." So he's unavailable. Under the rules and under the ordinance, we're entitled to thirty days' notice. And we did rely on the thirty days' notice, and we expected it to start at one PM. Unfortunately, it's starting at nine AM, and my expert is not available. He has viable material objections as to the acoustical study and the peer review. And we believe that the granting of this conditional use per, permit will, will sus- I'm sorry, I'm having an echo, it's terrible. And it appears that this application will prove activities that will unduly impact my client at the Victor Hotel. I request the continues of this matter until the next hearing in order for my expert to appear.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Robbins, we, we heard you. Do we, let's just take that one, is, is, are any of the, do we have to take them in order, PJ? Or can we take the applicant twelve-hundred Ocean Drive if they're asking for, if their hand is raised?
So I guess we have to say anybody that's here for that, that item, because we have several people with their hands up.
Okay, well, we'll take them in order, then. Let's, let's go to Mr. Bakayev.
I think, I think, Mr. Chair, I think an easy solution on that issue might be to just agree to take that item up after one, but we may want to hear from the applicant.
Correct. We're just going order, and we'll see if, if the applicant is asking to defer. So Mr. Bakayev, go ahead. You're on mute?
Yeah, yes, can you hear me?
We have you now.
Okay, hi, Ian Bachekov, on behalf of the applicant PT Opco LLC. My name is Ian Bachekov with Acreman LLP, office ninety-eight Southeast Seventh Street. And no, we, we absolutely object to the continuance. We've already been delayed several months due to the pandemic, and we wanna, we wanna get through to this. I agree that we're, we're okay to agree to be heard after one PM if that solves the issue. And frankly, we already have our own sound engineer. The city has a peer review sound engineer. There's absolutely no need for a third sound engineer. And even if there was, he has provided a letter which sets forth all of his objections to the board, which was submitted only yesterday, we received it for the first time. And, and frankly, we don't see anything in there that would raise any issues that aren't already being addressed by any of the conditions in the staff report, which recommends approval with condition. So we absolutely want to move forward today.
Mr. Bachekov, we're here, you're after one o'clock.
Thank you.
Let's move to, let's move to Hector.
Hello, hello, good morning.
Good morning.
I just want to confirm that there are no further items on the four thousand Alton Road issue on today's agenda.
Hmm. No, though, that will be continued to the, the meeting that we'll have in July.
Thank you so much.
Let's have Mr. Fontella.
Good morning. Greg Fontella with Burka, Radel, Fernandez, Larkin, and Tappanis, offices at two hundred South Biscayne Boulevard. I wanted to follow up on Michael Belucia's statement regarding the possibility for the June twenty-ninth scheduling. We are currently item thirty-one on this agenda, it's PB twenty dash zero three three nine. We would like to reserve our opportunity to be heard today, but if we're not reached on the agenda, we'd like to inquire about the possibility of them being scheduled on June twenty-ninth hearing date.
Okay, it's, it's my understanding, Mr. Fontella, that we're, we're time certain. We have a hard stop. So if we arrive at that hard stop, you will be pushed to the meeting on Monday, no matter what.
Understood, thank you.
Okay, Mr. Robbins, go ahead. Mr. Robbins? Okay, let's, let's, let's move to Monica. Ms. Enton?
Good morning, Board, Monica Enton, Burka, Radel, Fernandez, and Larkin, offices at two hundred South Biscayne Boulevard. I am requesting, last month, we listened to items twenty-three and twenty-four of the agenda, which were amendments to the RM one. This board made, made a commitment to review it again this month because we couldn't take a vote last month due to notice issues. We would ask that the item be moved up, since it's just a matter of taking a vote, since you did listen to the matter, rather than waiting all day to, to take the vote. So I would ask that if you could please move item twenty-three and twenty-four up for an early vote. Thank you.
Uh, let's see. Let's. We, well, I think we can move it up after item twenty. So we can move you a couple spaces, Monica, and if we have more time and flexibility, we'll try to see what we can do to accommodate.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I appreciate that.
Okay. All right, with that, Michael, do you have anything else, any other changes?
No, that's it for now, and I believe Tom Mooney is gonna start with the, the first items we have on the agenda for action.
All right.
Good morning, everybody. The item, the first item, it's not actually item number one, but it is the first item that we're gonna hear this morning, pertains to the Miami Beach Marina project at three hundred Alton Road. And as you'll know, this particular project consists of four separate items. One is, starts with item number twelve, PB two zero dash zero three five nine, which is PF Public Private Development Comprehensive Plan Amendment. Item thirteen, which is PB two zero dash three six three CPS four Land Development Regulations Amendment, establishing additional regulations for public-private marina mixed-use predevelopments. Item fourteen, which is PB two zero dash zero three seven six Development Agreement Marina Park Project at three hundred to four hundred Alton Road. And item fifteen, PB two zero dash three seven eight Vacation of a Portion of the Alton Road Right-of-Way adjacent to three hundred and four hundred Alton Road. My thought, Mr. Chair, is that I'm going to do a brief overview of all four items, and that the board could then take public comment on all four items, since they are interrelated, and then provide comments and feedback on all four items. And at the end of your discussion and deliberations, you would take separate motions on each of these items. So I'm gonna go ahead and give kind of a broad overview of all four items. And then my thought was that you could then have the developer, Mr. David Martin, make a brief presentation and then take public comment. Also, I believe Raphael Paz from the City Attorney's Office is on the call, and if you have any specific technical questions, if I can answer them, he would, he would be available to answer them. So in terms of the overview, the city, which is the owner of the property, the upland property at three hundred and four hundred Alton Road, they, they have a tenant, which is the Miami Beach Marina. And SunTex Marina Investors, which is an affiliate of Miami Beach Marina Associates, has partnered with Marina Park LLC, and they are proposing a public-private partnership with the city for the purpose of redeveloping the site. Specifically, their proposal is to construct a private luxury residential tower that will contain sixty residential units and approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of floor area, maximum height that is proposed to be three hundred and eighty-five feet. A new marina building would also be included with enhanced neighborhood retail uses, and that would be approximately forty-five thousand square feet. In addition to these new buildings, substantial green space, including the ground-level park of approximately one acre, as well as very significant improvements to the overall marina site, would be included. The proposal also presents an opportunity to renegotiate a new lease with improved terms for the city. Under the current lease, with the options that are in place, it's likely that it would stay in place for the next thirty years if this proposal does not move forward. The proposed transaction is, is fairly complex, as you probably noticed, and it is well detailed in all the documentation that has been provided to you in the four separate memorandums for these four separate items. And so my overview is gonna be kind of broad, but all the details are fully within the record. And if you have any specific questions, staff and members of the City Attorney's Office are here to answer those. The first major component is a new lease agreement, which would be approximately ninety-nine years. As indicated in the memo, this particular lease agreement, if approved by the City Commission and is scheduled to go before the Commission on Wednesday for first reading and second reading in July, if it is approved, it would be subject to voter approval. And the plan would be to put a ballot question on the November ballot. The second major component is a purchase and sale agreement for the sale of a portion of the development site and the air parcel within the resident, which the residential portion of the project would be constructed. This would also be subject to voter approval. And if this moves forward and is approved by the City Commission, this would be placed on the November ballot. The third major component is a development agreement that governs the development, design, and construction of the entire project. And this particular facet requires Planning Board review. So this is actually before you, in your official capacity, and you will be making a separate motion on this to send a recommendation to the City Commission. The fourth component is the proposed vacation of the western half of the Alton Road Right-of-Way, abutting the city-owned parcels along three hundred, four hundred Alton Road. This right-of-way would, if it's approved for vacation, would become part and parcel of city-owned property. So the city would maintain total control over the right-of-way in perpetuity, even if it is vacated. By vacating it, it is added to the upland properties and allows for a slightly larger parcel for which the developer to calculate his FAR based upon. This particular component does require a four-sevenths approval of the Planning Board. So this is not a matter that is advisory to you. Your capacity is to actually vote and approve this. So your approval is required under the charter. If it's approved by the Planning Board, this would then be forwarded to the City Commission, where a six-sevenths vote in the City Commission is required. The fifth and sixth components are the zoning amendments, the first being a proposed amendment to the public facilities PF Future Land Use. And you will make a recommendation and transmit that to the Commission with a recommendation. And then the final piece is the amendments to the CPS four District Development Regulations. And this would also be in your capacity as, as the local planning agency, you would be transmitting a recommendation to the City Commission. The Planning Department has done a detailed analysis of the proposal, and we have concluded that it meets all of the relevant aspects of the comprehensive plan, the city code, and the land development regulations of the city code. And our formal recommendation to you with regard to all four of these matters is as follows. That the Planning Board favorably recommend the proposed development agreement. Number two, that you approve the proposed vacation of the city right-of-way area with the vacation condition upon the City Commission's approval of, one, the development agreement, which shall include the terms and conditions for the design permitting and construction of the marina project at the developer's sole cost and expense, including resiliency and other capital improvements. Two, the city's sale of the residential parcel within which the approximately two hundred and seventy-five thousand square feet of residential portion of the Marina Park project is to be constructed. And three, the city's ninety-nine-year lease for the marina, provided that the proposed vacation shall also be subject to and contingent upon approval of the new lease and the sale of the residential parcel by a majority of the voters voting in a citywide referendum pursuant to section one oh three V one of the city charter. Number three, that you transmit with a favorable recommendation the proposed PF Future Land Use Comprehensive Plan Amendment. And then finally, that you transmit with a favorable recommendation the proposed CPS four regulations to the City Commission with a favorable recommendation. I think that covers all four. If you have any- I think that covers all four. Um, if you have any specific questions, uh either myself or the City Attorney can answer those. Or if you'd prefer to go straight to the developer's presentation and then take public comment, we can do that.
Well, let let me see if the uh the board members have anything before we allow David to speak. Go ahead, Nick.
Yeah, Tom, just a question. Is the four-sevenths vote particular just to vacation of the right of way or for all four items?
No, just the vacation of the right of way.
Any other questions from board members?
Yes.
David.
So, Tom, you went through the thing and I've 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 examined the documents uh uh this this past weekend, and I I would like to hear from you uh your vision of what this uh project is going to um look like.
From a physical standpoint, um the developer, and he's going to show you some renderings that um illustrate this. Um, the project has evolved, um I think, very, very successfully. Um, right now, you've got a little over fifty thousand square feet of um of Marina and retail and commercial space. That's from an urban design standpoint, a little clumsy. Um, there's no strong street presence. You kind of meander through the site. It's not in the best condition. And the proposal herein would transform that into a much more compact form of um of urban development that would not only better address the street and sidewalk, but would also provide a very significant open space area that would contain very significant resiliency benefits that you just can't get with the current iteration um with a large surface parking lot and with the building oriented and designed the way it currently is. This public park will then connect directly to the Marina um and the Baywalk and provide a much more successful transmission or transition from the Alton Road area to that. And so I think one of the significant benefits of that open space park is going to be how this particular park area not only relates to the Baywalk itself, but also allows for a better transition to the uh lower-scale residential area to the immediate east. With regard to the tower portion, um that's also evolved very, very successfully. And um the tower, the the narrow slender proposal is highly successful from an urban design standpoint, because what it does is it preserves what is currently a large light air and view corridor within that site. The 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 open space that exists now between the south side of Morano Grand and Rebecca Towers um is very significant, um particularly as it pertains to the larger, most lower-scale residential area to the immediate east, which is basically most of the South Point area, south of South Fifth Street. This tower massing, this tower design uh would significantly retain and preserve that and allow for that view corridor. And uh I would also just add as a bonus that um the developer is chosen uh one of the premier international architects uh to design a building. And so uh basically what you're going to be getting here is a a very iconic structure um that um I think is going to uh embody the area for decades to come.
Who is the architect, Tom?
Uh Bernard Ingles Group.
York Angles.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I have a quick question uh for Tom. Uh, how far along is the development agreement? Um, uh, if it ends up on the ballot, you know, how how many details will be, will we be able to resolve now versus what will be left uh after, you know, after November, assuming it were to go forward?
My understanding is that we've um addressed most of the issues, Nick or Raphael, if if you have anything to add to that. But I believe it has to be substantially completed and ready to go for the Commission, which I believe that it is. And it has to be substantially completed and ready to go in order to be placed on the ballot.
Okay, well, that that seems like what I would prefer, what I would think, that we it would be as transparent as possible. We would have as much information as possible, so we don't vote on something that uh, you know, that's left to be finished up. Uh, is it, is there anybody from the city that can comment on that?
I I could address that. This is uh good morning, Raphael Paz with the City Attorney's Office. So uh if you approve these matters today and it proceeds tomorrow to first reading at the City Commission, uh we, our intent would be to have the second reading by July twenty-ninth. And uh all of the terms of, all all of the material terms of all of the agreements will be finalized and um and and presented for second reading on July twenty-ninth before we adopt the resolutions calling for for a special election in November. So that's, our 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 plan is to to fully uh uh negotiate, draft and approve all of the agreements uh before Jul- the end of July.
Okay, so and but this is the final stop for the for the planning board. In other words, we won't we won't see it again uh before it's on the ballot. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, and how much of the information that's in the development agreement will we have an opportunity to to uh talk about today?
You you can talk about an and any aspect of the development agreement that um that you would like to address and provide comment on. I believe the code requirement for the development agreement is is for review by the planning board. So uh, you know, we we look forward to, you know, any feedback that that you would have.
Okay, thank you.
David, go ahead.
If I understand correctly, the park is one point four acres. Is that accurate, Tom?
I believe it's one acre. Um, and um, yeah, it's just a little over one acre.
And all right, I'll go ahead then.
And so uh do you, do you see financial benefits for the city that that um uh you could give us offhand?
The financial benefits of the city is identified um in both the memo and development agreement are um significant. Um, and um these include um paying the city uh fifty-five million dollars, which is the purchase price for the residential parcel, as well as significant improvements to the terms of the lease. And so um and that's in addition to the uh property tax benefits that um would occur once the uh residential tower is completed and occupied. So there are some very, very significant financial benefits to the city that are that are associated with the proposal.
You see financial benefits as well as aesthetic benefits and the general um improvement of the uh circumstance for that area. And let me just attach one other question. Is the is the um massing of the buildings despite its world-class architect uh comporting with the neighborhood?
Yes, uh, one of the main reasons that the iteration that's proposed um is highly contextually compatible is because when you look at all of the residential architecture along Alton Road and South Point Drive that has been built since nineteen eighty-seven, and this starts with South Point Tower. With the exception of the yacht club at Portofino, um all of the other buildings have a profile that allows for significant light air and view corridors. They're masked um and scaled in a very narrow manner. This would uh further that and enhance that. And so by uh redistributing the allowable volume in a more narrow fashion, um that very successful uh context will be preserved.
Has the planning, has the planning department uh checked for itself the the F, the availability of the views and the and the and the because I've had, I've had some additional uh emails from residents in the area who oppose the project. And I I wondered whether they're uh substantial. I haven't had a chance to, of course, obviously, the buildings are not there yet. But I'm somewhat familiar with the 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 area, and I just wondered if uh um these people have um legitimate or, you know, concerns.
We have reviewed in 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 detail the massing scheme that has been proposed, as well as the um impact on view corridors from adjacent buildings, as well as from the surrounding area. I think that's that's important to point out that uh when you look at view corridors, it's not just the neighboring buildings that you have to look at, but you have to look at how it impacts the larger area, which is composed primarily of of lower-scale uh structures. And so we believe that this proposal achieves that careful balance of of not negatively impacting the view corridors of the larger area to the east, as well as the neighboring buildings to the north and to the south.
Well, does that mean the people on the higher floors, or does that mean people at ground level? And people at
It means everybody. It means every people at the lower level, people on the Baywalk, people in lower-scale buildings to the east, people in all floors of neighboring buildings. Um, whenever you put a a taller building on a site, you're going to have uh an impact, obviously. Um, um, if everybody was concerned about um view corridors, the most ideal scenario would be to just have a um passive park. But a passive park obviously is not going to generate the same financial benefit, um nor would it be permitted under the terms of the current lease. Um, so when you look at 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 the larger project on balance, um, we believe that this presents the the best option from an urban design standpoint and the best option uh when viewed holistically, taking into account the view corridors of all affected persons.
It might be a good idea, uh, Mr. Chair, to to allow the the developer to present now, and that he may answer some of the questions that the board members have. And then obviously, if any board members have any questions, we can turn to those after.
I have, Nick, can I ask?
Just wanna, yeah, I agree with that statement. Uh, before we see the developer's presentation, a question for Tom. Is there any way to know what the financial benefit will be used for to the city? Is there any idea of what it will be used for? Is it just general money?
Um, I don't believe that we've identified um what the, I don't believe that the city has yet identified what it would use the funds for. Obviously, that would be a completely separate discussion. Um, I'm sure it would be um uh discussed as part of upcoming budget processes. So I think that that would definitely get a very significant public hearing, but to the best of my knowledge, at this point, we have not identified how we would spend the money.
Okay.
Just I I I, I'm sorry, Kareem, just one, one question. Do we have to make disclosures? Do we have to make disclosures on this item?
We should, but Nick, you tell us.
You're not, so this is not a, these are not quasi-judicial items. Uh, if if you have anything you'd like to, you'd like to disclose, you know, feel free to, but you're not required to make Jennings disclosures on these items.
All right, there it is. So with that, let's um, we're gonna have uh Mr. David Martin uh on behalf of the developer uh introduce the project. And uh I went to school with him, so I will say, go Gators. I remember having smoothies at the shop on the corner of University Thirteenth. So, David, good to see you this morning. Uh, let her rip.
Thank you, guys, and uh good morning, everyone, and uh 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 very uh happy and uh to see you all, uh, you know, through these difficult times. Uh, good morning, everyone viewing online and listening by phone. I think we're all now thinking about our future, uh which a few months ago seemed so uncertain. Uh, you know, I'm confident we, as a community, will emerge from this pandemic. Um, we need to make sure we plan for that recovery in a fiscally responsible, proactive manner. And uh in the spirit of that, it is my pleasure today uh to update you on the proposed Miami Beach Marina lease and Marina redevelopment project. Uh, like to talk to you about one of the most important city assets, Miami Beach Marina. Uh, was envisioned in the late seventies, early eighties as part of the South Point revitalization strategy. Uh, in the hopes of serving as a catalyst for the redevelopment of what was then considered by the city a blighted neighborhood. Uh, the lease was negotiated at a time when the city was desperate to attract capital. Uh, they were asked, uh, asking a Marina to operator to take an enormous leap of faith, and in the city's vision, uh, you know, the, you know, it's been proven to be enormously successful. Uh, today, South of Fifth Neighborhood, uh, you know, is one of the city's premier mixed-use residential commercial neighborhoods. Um, you know, the city has a choice, uh, you know, and our community has a choice uh of either doing nothing uh and, you know, allowing this vital community asset to run its course for the next three decades. Or we've offered uh the city an opportunity to renegotiate the terms of that lease, enhance a financial return to the city and taxpayers, and reimagine the Marina, the Miami Beach Marina uplands from what it is essentially today is kind of a back-of-house Marina facility uh into more uh vibrant piece of the urban landscape and uh uh of the South of Fifth Neighborhood. Uh, in that spirit, I'm honored to share with you our vision today uh for the uh Marina Park. So first, I want to just give you a quick outline, want to be efficient with everyone's time, given the long agenda. Uh, summary of public meetings and community outreach we've done, a summary of community benefits, uh a summary of fiscal benefits, which goes into some of the financial questions, kind of just the program, uh, site plan, and then some concept design renderings. Um, so uh next, uh, wanted to just, you know, we started off this process, uh and, you know, I made a commitment and promised to do vigorous community outreach. Uh, and uh you know, by and large, we've we've seen a a a good support. Um, basically, we've uh, we started out March eighteenth with the City Commission uh referral. Uh, we did a lot of engagement with the Miami Beach Housing Authority that basically runs the Rebecca Towers, which is our neighbor to the south. Uh, kind of, you know, very happy to tell you today uh that their uh, their Board of Commissioners uh voted in favor and and endorsed our project uh with certain uh requirements. Uh, you know, but things that we're gonna hopefully be mitigating uh uh to noise and other matters, but we're really excited to uh to share that with you today. Uh, we also have presented to the Chamber Executive Committee, uh South of Fifth President's Council, uh Miami Beach Board, uh Chamber Board of Governors. Um, we also did a presentation to the Friends of the South of Pit, uh South Point Elementary. Uh, the um, a series of of continued meetings. And uh last week, I think June uh or a week and a half ago, June tenth, uh, we did a virtual town hall meeting that was hosted by SOFNA um and and the city. Uh, we had around two hundred and sixty uh participants. Uh, we also launched our website, uh, uh, you know, for for the project. We also opened up a community information center uh, you know, for uh for the project. We've been uh receiving a a several questions. Uh, and we've been posting those questions and answers uh from the town hall, as well as after the town hall. We've also been responding individually to individual members with questions as well, and we continue to post uh those. Uh, and uh, and so here we are, June twenty-third today, uh, and I just want to say it's been a a pleasure and honor meeting everyone and all our residents on the beach uh and how much they care about our city and how much pride they have ha- have in our city. So, you know, you know, just really uh excited and honored to be getting the, you know, support of the Miami Beach Housing Authority, support to community leaders and other statements like Frank Delacchio, or, you know, getting a lot of the condo board officers of Senator Fifth and the South of Fifth Neighborhood to support. Um, and, you know, at the end of the day, um, you know, some some residents uh of the adjoining tower, you know, in some way would prefer status quo. Um, you know, we've been, uh, you know, for the next thirty-two years, we you know, obviously don't believe that's in the best interest of the city. Uh, we are going to be doing a Morano Grand uh uh residence presentation on July seventh to be able to continue to an- answer uh questions uh and comments from them as well. Just wanted to update you on that quickly. Um, uh, next, now we get into the kind of meat of the project, uh, kind of the uh community benefits. It kind of uh the beginning and end of conversations always, you know, what's in this proposed transaction for the city and the city on Miami Beach residents, right? So you know, kind of, you know, kind of the first, uh, you know, driving forces of of this project, uh, you know, uh behind the Marina Park proposal is is this park where where we're basically converting, uh, you know, what what you see is asphalt today, uh, converting it into over two acres of uh open space and 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 public green space. Um, but it will have a a a minimum of one acre of an acrid park. Um, the second component uh is the Marina. Uh, you know, we uh have made a commitment uh to really try to address the challenges of sea level rise, climate change, and really just harden the infrastructure uh and kind of preserve the Marina to kind of really position uh Miami Beach as a premier yachting destination. Uh, you know, uh, on the Baywalk, uh, you know, one of the, you know, big community assets. Uh, you know, what what can we do and uh as it relates to investment in order to uh uh kind of really improve and enhance? And, you know, a lot of things like improving security, appearance, lighting, wayfinding. I I, you know, at the town hall ten days ago, I had a much uh uh more You know, at the town hall 10 days ago, I had a much more detailed presentation, but today I wanted to be as efficient as possible, but I could share more details of, of those types of improvements we'd like to make to the Baywalk. Also, the life, the retail, you know, when the Marina was built, it was somewhat, you know, somewhat important for the Marina functions and uses, but I don't think it was a contributing asset to the neighborhood. We want to convert that retail into a neighborhood amenity, so it really can provide more enhanced waterfront dining experiences as well as others. And then fifth, obviously, you know, this, you know, water resiliency is one of the most important things in our lives and in my life in development right now. And, and we want to make this project kind of a model for what, what, what we can be doing together as a city and as an industry to, to really tackle the challenges and address the needs of the South of Fifth Neighborhood. So with that, you know, I'd like to just, you know, quickly go through the, the fiscal benefits associated with this project. You know, today, what, what we've, we, we had originally proposed to invest around $35 million in capital improvements as an out, you know, with an outside date of 30 years, but there's a schedule of, of invest, minimum investments we have to make. And I want to repeat that, that $35 million is a minimum requirement. And then also, when the city did evaluations of the, of the air rights, and you know how appraisals are, but basically, we, we felt that the appraisal should have been around, you know, $50 million. It did come in, you know, at around $70 million. We basically committed to pay the city $55 million in, in, in cash payments for the upland development rights, plus we committed to an additional $15 million of capital infrastructure in the uplands that is specific to neighborhood resiliency. And I have more details on that if, if you, you guys like. So in total, around $70 million. So when you really look at it, and I have a slide that'll kind of explain this 147 number better, but when you look at the increased rent, the increased property tax revenue, and the sale of air rights only through the year 32, and this does not include the $15 million of, of capital infrastructure or the $35 million in the Marina. When you just include those for the first 32 years, that's around $147 million in, in increased financial return. Not total, but increased financial return. I want to repeat, this is not for the entire duration of 99 years, which would be much higher. I just wanted to compare it to, you know, the existing lease today has around 10, three 10-year options, so around 30 to 32 years. So I really wanted to compare from that with the city's currently getting from that versus what we're providing. We also obviously highlight the, the additional incremental taxes, kind of, you know, one of the big moves, I think, for our city is to diversify our tax base. We want to preserve our hospitality and tourism industry, but I do think residential tax base may, maybe has less volatility on certain aspects. The job creation, kind of, we hired Miami Economic Associates to do all their factoring and analysis for job creation, and then kind of a quarter of GDP growth that Miami Economic Associates estimates from our project. Quickly, I just want to go through the, the improved financial lease terms, which I think is important. Again, what we have is, we have an air, we have the residential air rights, which is one transaction, and then we have the lease, which is a separate transaction, all connected within the development agreement. So here you see, originally, we had proposed around a million dollar minimum annual guaranteed grant. We increased that through negotiating with the city now to 1.9, and with CPI annual increases. Remember, that's a minimum, not the total. In addition to that, we have around 10% of, of, of the, of that lease, of the gross receipts of the Marina and the Marina retail the city would be receiving. We doubled the gas, and then we also did a revenue share on the parking facility that the city wants us to manage and run for the community and for the Marina. Again, the current lease does not have this, but, but we do have the 35 million, and I summarized kind of the, the $15 million and 55 million for the air rights. And so that's currently what the improved, you know, significant improved financial lease terms from what there is today. This is kind of going back to that 147 number. I just wanted to walk you through this, and, and the city has, and I have an Excel spreadsheet that kind of arrives at all these values. But basically, we have the new lease, what the total projected revenues are, which was gross, and then we did it at a, at a, at a discounted net present value basis today, what those gross rents should be, look like today, which is approximately 62 million. We have our real estate tax revenue, and only the city share. We didn't include the, the school board or the county share of approximately 70. And then we have our sale of air rights, so a total of $187 million. The current lease approximately is estimated with projected revenues, et cetera, around $40 million on net present value. And so this is how we arrive at the 147 increased revenue to the city. Next, wanted to talk to you guys a little bit about the program. I think it's important that when we highlight that. First, wanted to just show you in this slide, the overall intensity of the site is going from 57,000 square feet of restaurant, retail, and office to 45,000 square feet. So that, that's obviously a 21% reduction. We also are only building resident, 60 residential units. There is a cap in the development agreement. We cannot increase density beyond that. Obviously, these are larger residences, you know, probably an average size of 30, 3,000 to 3,500 square feet, kind of in keeping with some of the buildings in South of Fifth. And, and then also, we have our, our Kimley Horn did our traffic study that shows a around 40% reduction in traffic and PM peak hours. Kind of just a little snippet about the traffic study that the city has a copy of, et cetera. So obviously, I think this project not only is generating a lot of money for the city, but also in, in kind of hopefully beautifying and enhancing the, the, the asset and, and the identity of our city, but, but also is low impact, which I think is important, that we look at buildings that are low impact to, to hopefully, you know, move forward in that regard down the road. So now I'd like to just show you quickly site plan. Basically, you know, we, we have a, you know, a design study. The, the original design of the project was kind of oriented north-south, fronting Alton Road. City planners, community kind of felt it kind of rolled off the neighborhood. So kind of at our first land use meeting, so we kind of developed this taller, skinnier design, slender. And so basically, this kind of shows the building separation. So originally, like, the building was around 150 feet. Now we're 185 feet from the parking pedestal of Morano Grand. Our parking pedestal, excuse me, our pedestal is, is basically at the same height, actually around five feet lower than the Morano Grand pedestal. And then our, the distance of, from Morano Grand to the actual Slender Tower is around 313 feet, kind of, you know, football field, et cetera. And then we have around, from Rebecca Towers, we have around 270 feet from our pedestal to theirs, and then 292 feet of our, of our, our, our tower. And so in this design, what, what you see is, and I'm gonna go to the next slide here. This kind of shows kind of just big picture, the design move, move that Bjarke Ingles Group came up with, but basically kind of showing of how the tapered podiums kind of being sensitive to the neighborhood, and also kind of showing the massing and the scale consistent with Morano Grand, Yacht Club, Icon, Morano Portofino, and other buildings in South of Fifth. So just wanted to show you that. This kind of shows you our concept site plan. I don't know if it was said, I, probably this project's coming back to the planning board and the design review board if we're lucky enough to be able to get on the ballot and pass through all, all the, the future meetings. So this project will go through the rigorous design review board process and rigorous planning board process that, that every project goes through at the city of Miami Beach. The idea here is really showing the park, which basically is a significant size and, and kind of really budding Alton Road to kind of really create a city park there. We, we concentrated all the vehicular and pedestrian, excuse me, the vehicular and traffic flow on the northern side of the parking pedestal access. So currently, at this location, here is the loading for Morano Grand. Here is the access into the Marina parking of Morano Grand. So we created kind of a, a nice retail drop-off here. We preserve the underground stored fuel tanks here and access for that, and kind of all the maneuverability, and, and also the access into the garage. We also hid the outdoor currently, the back-of-house of, of the current building is somewhat outside, kind of outside in the community. And so we are, we've integrated that inside the pedestal of the building. And, and so, oh, and also, I think something to just quickly note, the building is our, the building is only 120 feet wide. The original proposal of the project was, you know, around, around, I think it was around 313 feet wide, give or take. But currently, the, the tower is basically 120 feet wide. So I'll kind of walk you through a little bit that. Here you see, kind of, we, we oriented the waterfront dining experiences to try to be on the waterfront. You know, not necessarily, not along Alton Road, or, or really try to minimize its impact on the, on the neighborhood. We also, if you look at the site, the park is basically not exactly, but basically where the current parking lot is, and the retail office is basically where the current building is. So in a way, we did, what's interesting about this site plan is that the current footprint is, is very close to this, which I think is important also, but obviously just changing all the asphalt into kind of permeable pavers and, and creating a park where we can do cisterns and a bunch of cool stuff, resiliency stuff. So, so that's that. Then we, we developed some renderings. Again, these are concept renderings. I think Bjarke Ingles is, is an amazing architect. I've done work with him in Coconut Grove. He also was shortlisted at, kind of in the original proposals for the Miami Beach Convention Center. So he, he definitely has been wanting to do work in, in Miami Beach for, really, ever since I knew him, and has a lot of passion for our city. And, and so here, we have the concept design. Basically, on the top, we have the 60 residential units in a width of only 120 feet. You see the tapering that's currently occurring, the retail and office, which is part of the lease. Remember, the air rights is, is basically the, this upper portion, and the retail office is here, and that's the 45,000 square feet. We kind of, in a kind of up close, sorry, kind of some up close. One of the questions from the community at some of the town halls were, how is this gonna look and feel? And remember, these are early drawings and renderings, but how will this look and feel? So we definitely want to create a public art component. This project has to respond to Art of Public Places requirements, and also trying to create more green over on this, call it, north side of the property. And then on the south side of the property, you could see kind of the, the city park and, and kind of the look and feel, and, and really the transparency that this project creates, hopefully for the entire South of Fifth community and Miami Beach generally. So here you have a kind of an up close that talks a little more about, you know, all the, the walkability, and also kind of how this respects the Baywalk and doesn't overwhelm the Baywalk. We really wanted to only have a two-story kind of structure that, and we created around a 50-foot setback from the Baywalk. So, so we really wanted to try to enhance and connect the, the park, the Marina Park, with kind of the rest of the open space throughout the property. And then here, you just have an up close, kind of on the right-hand side, you're seeing the Rebecca Tower parking, and also kind of what the potential is for this park, which we're really excited about. Hopefully, if we're able to move forward, we're able to really work very hard and be presenting the design review board and planning board much more refined and detailed drawings and finished design concepts for, for the park. And so, you know, with that, just wanted to do a quick close is, you know, kind of, you know, really appreciate, you know, all your time that you've given us, you know, to be able to present to you today. You know, we, we really would love, you know, a recommendation of the land use amendment, a recommendation of the camp, comp plan amendment, a recommendation of the ultimate ride, ride away vacation, and, and a recommendation to adopt the development agreement. You know, you know, we, we'd launched, you know, the Marina Office and website, and, and it's been an amazing engagement with the community. You know, in the, in the end, you know, our view is, you know, and here, here you could see the address and, and website and, you know, office hours. And, you know, in the end, this proposal is to give the voters, you know, the choice, right, to, between doing nothing or embracing this new vision for, for the Miami Beach Marina, which we feel is fitting and, and, and up to the standards of the South of Fifth Neighborhood. We're very excited about this project, and I'm here to answer any questions or comments. Thank you so much, guys.
Hi, David. This is Nick Jelby. Kareem, can I ask a quick question?
Yeah, go for it.
That, that looks great, and, and, you know, it's an admirable project. Just a quick follow-up. Do you, can you expand upon what the 15 million in capital investment is? Or do you have an idea of what particularly that will go to? You said something like neighborhood initiatives.
Definitely. So there's a, there's several, several initiatives. And in my town hall, I kind of walked through the resiliency initiatives. But basically, there's, 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 there's a, a significant amount of, of, of neighborhood saving that can occur if this property were to be able to hold water, were to be able to slow the water from getting into our stormwater management system. And so what we are proposing, and the city's basically put together a, call it a list of resiliency components that, that would specifically delineate exactly what the $15 million is going to be used for. So one component is water resiliency, whether it's cisterns, whether it's blue roofs, whether it's the, 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 the type of, of pavers that we're currently using. For instance, we have an advisor by the name of Walter Meyer that is, that worked on the, on the Miracle Mile and Gerada Project in Cole Gables. He's proposing these permeable pavers that basically have made those streets the most resilient streets in the country, handling around seven inches of rain per hour. So, so our idea is, and, and this is all delineated in the development agreement, a series of resiliency, water resiliency benefits for the community that will hold and, and, and reduce pressure on the First Street Pump Station, also reduce pressure and flooding currently Rebecca Towers, who, who's an important community asset, currently is built at a very low grade. And so for us, what we, what we want to do is, is try to, you know, hold that water into the property and, and really try to manage the water the best we can. Also doing a lot of water polishing prior to the water getting into the bay. There are certain design characteristics that we're gonna be doing for water polishing. And, and then also from, we have a significant amount of wastewater management and reductions with this project. So again, one aspect of the 15 million is that water resiliency element that's gonna be part of the project. The second component is, today, the Marina parking is currently not, call it, designed or with the infrastructure and technology necessary to be able to maximize revenue for the city out of that, those Marina parking. So one of the investments that will be used with the $15 million is more of a financial thing for the city, is to be able to really start receiving revenue from the Marina parking, which in the past, and in the current lease, it's not basically required. So there's gonna be infrastructure upgrades that we're gonna be making to, to each one of those four parking garages. Also, there's a slew of Alton Road enhancements and improvements that we're gonna be making, not only from a mobility, from a cycling and pedestrian mobility perspective, but also with, with bio swales and permeable pavers, et cetera. We're not obviously gonna be touching Alton Road. We know that is sensitive, and we don't want to disrupt that. But on the flip side, we do think that the adjacent to, to Alton. But on the flip side, we do think that the adjacent to, to Alton Road, which is part of the right of way, we're going to be making significant impro- resiliency improvements to that. Um, addition there, so there's like a list, Nick, and, and what I can do is I could, uh, uh, I could, uh, uh, kind of send, send that to you or, or, or get that in a copy. But it's kind of an exhibit.
Yeah.
Basically was delineated in the development agreement.
That'd be great.
And i- i- if I may, it's exhibit six to the development agreement, uh, item in, in your package.
Okay.
All right, let me, let me just, before we go on any further, um, David, let me just clarify one thing that, that is, the way you said it, I, I just want to make sure everybody watching, uh, is, is seeing it the same way that they may be reading it. So the annual percentage rent and the annual guaranteed rent, the way we have it in our reading is that it's an either or with a floor at one point nine. So I didn't want to make it seem like they were a, a additive. So just wanted to clarify that.
That is correct.
But the floor is one point nine, so.
The floor is one point nine and then every year it goes up with CPI annual increases.
Absolutely. Board members, Mike?
Yeah, I have, I have a few, uh, a few questions for Mr. Martin. Um, and, and thank you for your presentation is very thorough. Um, and, and that's, uh, reassuring. Uh, could you expand a little bit on your vision, uh, for the local shops, local vendors, community? Use the word community related to this item. Um, I think you are sincere in wanting to achieve this, but what, you know, and, and as you know, I mean, I'm sure you've heard it two thousand times, what a, what a neighborhood, community treasure, uh, Monty's is. If you want to go hang out with your neighbors, uh, a lot of evenings you just walk over to Monty's. So, um, you know, it's a big change, right? Um, what, wh- what, what, what are you willing to? How can you share your vision in this regard? And I always talk about the need for, for more casual, local, uh, you know, local vendors, local businesses, you know? Uh, I, I wouldn't change, uh, uh, you know, I don't want to change, uh, that we have the fine restaurants in the neighborhood. I'm not, I'm not against that. I just feel like we need a little more balance. Um, and then, and then what is included, David, what is the also, what is included in the development agreement? And, and, and what might happen down the road should you ultimately sell your interest, uh, in the retail, uh, component? Uh, you know, we, we, we like you, uh, we, we end up, uh, liking your proposal, but, uh, you sell out and somebody else isn't so committed to this idea. So how would you, what, what would you share about that?
Yeah, uh, but maybe I could tackle the, the second question first, then I'll go to the first question. Um, the city's imposed a, a requirement upon, uh, Marina Park, uh, to, uh, have a controlling, uh, a certain percentage controlling interest in this project through completion. Uh, so, you know, uh, uh, Mr. Berenow, I appreciate the, uh, the, the, all, all the kind words. Uh, we just wanted to let you know that I'm committing, uh, to that role in the completion. Uh, I think your first question is more about the curation of the experience rather than just my role in delivering this project, which, which I appreciate. Um, as it relates to the first question, um, you know, to be perfectly, uh, frank, we are currently having active discussions with the existing tenants, um, with the, uh, uh, the existing tenants of the current place. Uh, uh, we will have Marina uses, uh, there will be dive shops, uh, you know, Marina offices, uh, brokerage offices, uh, and we also, our plan is to have really enhanced waterfront dining. Uh, and one of the biggest things, uh, uh, kind of being a user of the Marina and kind of the user of the waterways and, and for Miami Beach and living here so long, uh, you know, and actually I was a resident in Morano Grand, uh, from two, you know, uh, two thousand four, two thousand five, two thousand six. Um, the, the idea here is that, um, that this Marina and the uses here need to be kind of, uh, synchronized with the Marina lifestyle. And the Marina lifestyle, uh, even though I love Melo's and it's an amazing restaurant, uh, that, that, the Marina lifestyle may not fit that, that realm, right? And so for us, um, a, a, a restaurant, uh, that is like a Monty's, uh, or Monty's, right? Is, is something that, um, is gonna definitely needs to be part of this project. But at the same time, uh, I do want to tell you, Mr. Berenow, that, um, just from a rational business person perspective, you know, we, I want to be honest with you. The, uh, the, the restricting retail in today's market is somewhat difficult. Um, because, um, there is, uh, uh, you know, not only do we want great businesses and great concepts, but we also need, uh, people that are going to be able to survive volatility in the economy and also have some sort of credit worthiness. So, uh, there's a delicate balance, uh, what I've found, uh, we own a significant amount of retail, uh, shopping centers, uh, throughout Dave County. Uh, and what I've found and what's interesting is that the entrepreneurs and small businesses that are local, uh, you know, really care and really, uh, uh, want to and paid at least a portion of their rent during these times, while the institutional types and kind of large chains types kind of hired these sophisticated attorneys and they'll pay rent, right? So in a way, um, this pandemic has showed us, uh, who behaves, who, who really you can work with and do business with, uh, but I do believe and, and Mr. Berenow, I don't think I could control what happens five years, ten years or twenty years, uh, down the line as it relates to my role, uh, and ownership stake, uh, once I deliver this asset to the community. Uh, I am selling condominiums. These are not rentals. Uh, so, um, you know, that, and, and there is basically going to be a, a master association similar to other, uh, condominium buildings throughout, uh, South of Fifth. Um, and, and I definitely will have a role with this building, uh, long-term. But, but I can't make any, uh, today, any representation that, uh, a specific restaurant will be there. But what I can make a representation to you is that I will work, uh, with and have a, a, a variety and eclectic group of tenants, because I believe, you know, forty-five thousand square feet's not a lot of square footage. And when you take out the office component and the marine use component, you're really now down to around twenty, twenty-five thousand square feet of available kind of waterfront dining or other type of retail coffee shop, health and fitness. We, you know, kind of having a, uh, you know, concepts, uh, for health and fitness that are, and wellness that are kind of coming, uh, of age today, I think should be kind of part of, of this project. But, but those decisions, uh, have not been able to be made yet. And so I just wanted to, uh, kind of see if I tried to answer that, but you know, uh, you have my commitment and, and I'm, you know, nobody's can really get rid of me until this is delivered. So, um, um, after it's delivered and after it's leased, um, if there's second generation retail, et cetera, Mr. Berenow, I don't, I, I don't think I'm going to be able to control that. But, but I do think that this should be a lifestyle center and a, and a community amenity. And I think the success of the Marina and having that affordable, uh, food and beverage and casual food and beverage experience is, is important to the success of the Marina. And if you look at Sun Texas portfolio and the marinas they control and own throughout the country, really, uh, they, they're, that, it's consistent with that. Uh, at the same time, uh, there may be a second restaurant that maybe is a little, has a little, a, a different unique quality or offering that maybe is not currently being offered in South of Fifth. So, so definitely, um, uh, the curation of that retail is not only important to you, Mr. Berenow, it's important, uh, to the Marina, it's important to our neighbors, adjacent neighbors and broad neighbors. But I also think it's important to the residents that I'm going to be selling, uh, uh, selling units to. Uh, and, uh, and, and so I'm, you know, it's a very important part of the identity of this project. Uh, and it's something we're going to be very careful with.
Well, uh, yeah, I, I think, thank you for, Korean, can I keep going?
Go, what, what, what I really would like to do, uh, unless you have a.
Well, I would just have a follow, follow up to that, to that answer, so.
Okay, but after this, what I do want to do is let the public speak first. So I think we get a better opportunity to question once we get the public.
I see. All right. Well, I'm sorry. I thought we were.
No, 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 go, go for it. Ask your question and then we'll go to the public.
Yeah. So thank you for the anal-, thank you for that commitment and thank you for the analogy, uh, the Marina lifestyle versus Melo's. I think that is, uh, I think that is, uh, a good, a good way to, to, to show the contrast. And I think when you look at this, you know, stunning, really gorgeous, uh, building, uh, if, of course, that's my opinion, but this architect has really knocked it out of the park, I think, with this design. Uh, you don't think of Monty's, quite frankly, I mean, you look at that building. So, so I, I just wanted to hear you say that, that, that the curation was, was one of your top priorities. Uh, you know, if and when we get to that point, uh, you'll be thinking about the neighborhood. Thank you.
All right. So at this time we'll give the public the reasonable opportunity to speak. Um, if you're calling in from a phone, I believe it's star nine. And if you're on the Zoom, uh, video, you can, uh, there's a, uh, selection. If you're on a computer or iPad, you can hit more and then hit raise your hand. And then there's, uh, if you're on a computer, you can go straight to, uh, raise your hand up. There's a two-step process there. So with that, we have some, uh, folks from the public that are, uh, waiting with their hand raised. And we'll take Mr. Flaherty, Flaherty, uh, first.
And again, Mr. Schall, set the clock at two minutes.
Go ahead, Mr. Flaherty. PJ, we have him on mic or he has to do that on his side?
Uh, Joseph, if you can unmute yourself.
Yeah.
We hear you now.
Yeah, a, a few, uh, points. One, it's been said that there's been extensive community input and I see the, uh, institutions listed. I haven't seen, uh, listing, um, of any real community members. Uh, I'm a physician. I live in the Morano Grande, own a unit there. Uh, most of us have not been involved in any kind of discussion. I think you've met with the presidents of different, um, um, condo associations, but not with the people. And within those condo associations, presidents have not got input in people. In the Morano Grande in particular, there are virtually dozens that have just signed up in the last two days, asking for, uh, to be heard at, at, when the commission does meet. The second point is this changes the nature of the community significantly. I think the man talking about Monty's, uh, really got to the gist of it. A new large building, a beautiful building is not an icon. It's a gentrification of the neighborhood. And, um, it is, uh, perhaps one that, that is useful, but is something that dramatically changes how we live and go about our business and makes it less amenable to rank and file people, including the many people that use the Marina, that are boat owners and others are not looking for another upscale restaurant, of which there are dozens in the South of Fifth neighborhood. Final point in the presentation, um, which I thought was, maybe not Mr. Martin's presentation, but there was an issue raised about there's no disclosures necessary. I think there should be full disclosures of who people work for, where they get their money, and exactly, um, how that may or may not influence how they vote on these issues going on up to the, um, commissioners. Um, I think this is, is, has not had sufficient data presented, including today by Mr. Martin, of other issues, including traffic, parking, and even the financial gains talked about did not include what time period, did not include the financial losses.
Your two minutes are up.
Okay, thank you.
David, um, what I can do, I can let all of the, um, public speak and we can comment on it? Or do you want to?
Uh, we can let the public speak.
Okay. All right. All right, uh, Mr. Jacobs, or I'm sorry, Robin Jacobs.
Thank you. Thank you for giving this opportunity to speak this morning. Um, as a thirty-year resident and chair of the board for the Miami Beach Chamber of Commerce, which is nearly a hundred years old. I say that because the chamber's always been very involved in the evolution and development of our beautiful community. This project was presented to us in depth and the board voted to support this project. The full resolution has been submitted to the city. This Marina project provides us with the opportunity to work in partnership for the beautification of this property, bring it up to the world-class status and increase revenues for the city. It's a responsible endeavor that contributes to Miami Beach on many levels. Please approve this project before you today. Thank you again for this opportunity.
You got it, Ms. Jacobs. Thank you. Uh, we're going to go to the next, um, person, uh, I'm not going to butcher the name. I, I think it's Shagan or Kagan.
Yeah, it's Moje Kagan, Mr. Brantley. I was the one who interviewed you on the Public Health Trust, um, for the Citizens Bond Oversight Board at Jackson. So I'm so happy to see you chairing this commission, um, to the planning board, chairmanship, and thank you, all of you who are serving on the planning board. Hello, Mr. Barino and Mr. Milland as well. I am speaking in my position as chair of the Housing Authority of City of Miami Beach. We manage Rebecca Towers, among other, um, housing throughout Miami Beach. So we are the neighbors exactly to the south of the proposed Marina Park project. I want to commend David Martin and Representative Victor Diaz. They've been working with us very closely. I want to state, we actually submitted a resolution which was circulated to, to you members through, uh, Mr. Mooney yesterday, as well as to the entire commission and the mayor. We are supporting this project with a number of caveats of what we would like to see, um, in terms of responsibility to the neighbors in the whole, entire neighborhood, as well as to Rebecca Towers just south of this project. We also want to voice that as the commission that oversees City of Miami Beach Housing Authority, we want to advocate on behalf of all of our senior citizens and all the residents, um, that they matter and they will not be thrown under the bus, you know, with respect to other neighbors objecting to, you know, blockage of their views, et cetera. Um, we hope that this project will be presented to the voters and move forward. Uh, in terms of my own personal opinion, in life, you always give up something to get something else. So as wonderful and beautiful and lovely as this project is going to be, there's always, you know, pros and cons to the City of Miami Beach, to the residents and all of that. But overall, we are very much in favor of it and want to applaud the developer for being very relatively transparent and forthcoming in terms of helping mitigate any kind of negative effects and, you know, on the neighbors. Thank you for, um, and thank you.
Thank you for that. And thank you for the memory. I, I, I did forget that. That has been a while. So good to talk to you again. Uh, we're going to go to caller ending eight, three, eight, seven.
Hi, good morning, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity. My name is Jay Parker. I'm the CEO of Douglas Solomon here in Florida. And I've had the great opportunity to work with many developers across the state in redefining our luxury landscape and many of our retail products. I think it's important that we recognize the significance of architecture in today's environment, particularly as it relates to the gateway of one of our most coveted residential neighborhoods, the South of Fifth region. Um, you don't have to look far to recognize the extraordinary talents of the Ark Engels. And I'm quite sure that directed by David, he would again create one of the most important towers in our market, and at the same time create a much more appropriate gateway, uh, to the City of Miami Beach. I also think it's particularly important to recognize the passage of light and how important the sunshine and the light it means to us in the South of Fifth region. And I think that the current structure will allow for the passage of light coming in through our sunsets, uh, to still pierce the South of Fifth region in, in, in a way that is important and will allow for the areas that are east of the tower to enjoy that sunset and the opportunities. I also think it's important to recognize the distance between the buildings. And I think that this structure combined with the elevated retail will allow for the distance between the neighboring towers to be extensive and quite frankly, much more than we see in many of the other buildings in the area and throughout the state of Florida. I'm also grateful for the financial impact that will be realized upon City of Miami Beach. I think it's important that we also recognize the reduction in retail square footage and really the necess- necessary improvements of the Marina as it relates to the Marina sustainability and ultimately where that Marina ends up if we don't pursue this important project. And finally, last but not least, I think it's important to recognize the reputational quality of Tara, David Martin and his company, and the proven track record that he's had in redefining and improving some of the most important neighborhoods in our community. I'm very much in favor of this project and hope that the City of Miami Beach and the planning board will allow it to proceed forward. I thank you for your time.
All right. Let's go to, uh, our next, uh, um, looks like somebody joining us by, uh, by Zoom is Andrea.
Hi, hello?
Hi, good morning.
Hi, good morning. Thank you. Um, my name is Andrea. I am a South of Fifth resident. I'm not calling on behalf of any registered agency. I like live very close to the project. So, um, I just wanted to ask a couple of questions to the developer and also to speak to the board just really quickly. I submitted a couple of questions. I submitted a couple of questions via the developer's website thirteen days ago. I still haven't received any answer. Uh, my question was, where is the pool located? Because it's not shown in any of your, uh, renderings. And I'm worried that the pedestal size will change. And I know you have it as a concept site plan. I just wondered how much can this pedestal change in size after we vote on it? Cause that's like a scary thing for us. Okay. And then to the, uh, board, I thank you. And I just wanted to say that this is the last piece of waterfront property in all of South Beach, the last piece. It's a really important piece of land. I personally think it's worth more than the fifty-five million considering that, you know, uh, Lincoln Road corner spaces go for eighty-one million, but that I understand. Uh, you know, it's up to you guys. Um, you might hear some people talking in the next couple of days about another design plan, which was the original one. It was a wide building that literally was a wall across Alton Road. I just wanna let you know that one hundred percent of the very few people that support that design are all in the Morano Grande and are only looking out for, I'm sorry, but for themselves. So if you are gonna go with a building, it's gotta be the tall, skinny one because you're gonna ruin the view of the entire east side of town. Um, and it would just be paying attention to only a vocal minority instead of the whole community if you go with the wide building. As far as I'm concerned, I think that the space is beautiful and I believe that what the developer and others call as doing nothing is actually preserving our city's history, not just Monty's, but the whole vibe of the city. We're just gonna put another building, you know, another space, another glass and steel building. If we got rid of everything that was dated, remember Ocean Drive would have been destroyed as well. So I would prefer us to have our own unique sensibilities. And I do believe that the Monty's building has that. Um, and I just wanted to think.
Go ahead, Andrea. Finish your statement.
The last thing would just be, I wanted to thank you and that to consider what some people consider is old-fashioned is what makes our city special. And also all the retail on South Point Drive is empty. If you go around South Point Drive, there's thousands and thousands of square feet of retail. How can the developer guarantee that we're gonna have retail that will be full when Lincoln Road and South Point Drive are empty? Thank you so much.
Perfect. Thank you, Andrea. And, and, and we'll have the, uh, developer to respond to that. He's made some comments about the retail. Um, but he'll probably reiterate some of that as we go. Uh, let's go to the next, um, uh, member from the public, Patricio Fernandez.
Hello, do you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman. Uh, I am a resident of the South Fifth Neighborhood and, uh, I'm support and strongly support development of the project that brings a facelift to act to, to actual area. Uh, we are a world-class city and we deserve the best for South of, for, for South of Fifth. And the Marina project will bring us a new lease for the city and several new jobs and business opportunities for our community. This project brings to the City of Miami Beach world-class facilities and amenities, mixing with the opportunity to get more open spaces and parks for residents and neighborhoods. Also, I think this project will bring a better quality of life to Rebecca Tower residents because it will give to them a park downstairs of their, their homes. In the economical side impact, I think it will be benefit for the City of Miami Beach on a long term because actual fees are too low for twenty twenty, bringing more taxes revenue and adding extra value to our beloved neighborhood. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Okay, let's see who else we have. Uh, thank you, Mr. Fernandez, uh, Terrence Golden.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Good morning, Mr. Golden. Go ahead.
Good. Uh, my name is Terry Golden. I'm a resident of Morano Grande. Uh, I have, uh, I'm here today, uh, representing many people in Morano Grande. Over a hundred owners who've, uh, gotten together and, uh, sent letters to each of you individually and asked me to speak on their behalf today. Um, I think the comments that we would have are fairly straightforward. When we purchased our condos, we asked the sellers of the, uh, condominiums, you know, what was happening to the land to the south of us? And we were assured at that time that, that land would not change at all, that it was, uh, owned by the city, which we thought was a real positive situation. And then it was under a number of long-term leases, uh, uh, stretching out over a hundred years and would be preserved as such. So uh, what's happening today is kind of a breach of what our understandings were, uh, as we bought condominiums in the, uh, property. Uh, I'm, we, we are particularly concerned that we really haven't had the responses from David Martin and the interaction with David Martin, uh, and his development team, uh, as it relates to, uh, Morano Grande. As you noticed, uh, when we went through, when he went through his schedule, he has a meeting scheduled for, uh, uh, after, I think it was in July, early July, to meet with the residents of Morano Grande. Uh, we're the most, the people most affected by what's happening. We feel that we are really, uh, being, uh, worked around and, and worked over by this, uh, approach. We do have issues. We have issues that are, are important to us and I think, uh, issues important overall. Uh, we feel that the building will obstruct our views, which is something that we value and treasure. And, uh, particularly in one of our buildings, we'll, we'll be facing directly into the, uh, the building that's, uh, being contemplated. We're concerned, we have a wonderful, uh, tennis and a, uh, swimming pool con- complex, which is gonna be, uh, seriously affected by the shadow lines and, and the shadows created by the tower.
Minutes are up.
Go, go ahead, Mr. Golden, if you can just wrap up.
We're concerned about tr- to, uh, the traffic and two years of, uh, noise that we're here. And I think most importantly, we, we're interested in the quality of li- uh, life issues that were described earlier about local services. Uh, we, we also wonder, this, this project seems to be sole source and is it a good value for the, for us as a community? Are there other opportunities or other things that can be done? Uh, and are we getting the right price from the developer? In short, we think that things are going too fast. Uh, we, you know, there's a whole issue of trust about how we're, we're being managed uh, in this whole process. And we think that the, the, uh, process should be slowed down so that we can all, uh, uh, make sure that we've got the right, uh, developer and the, the right choice.
Got it. Thank you, Mr. Golden. Thank you for your comments today. We're gonna move on to, uh, Jerry Levin.
Can you hear me now?
Good morning. Go ahead, Mr. Levin.
Thank you. Good morning. Uh, I, I would like to just say to the board that, uh, you have a rare opportunity before you to use someone else's money to significantly enhance a major property as our, such as our Marina. Simultaneously enhance the resiliency of an entire neighborhood while significantly improving the financial, uh, fortunes of our city through this public-private development. And we really need to start looking as a city at the opportunities to diversify our tax base. With COVID nineteen, you're gonna see significant property value reductions over the next few years based on the fact that businesses are gone out of business sadly. Uh, other buildings will be, uh, partially rented. And I think a lot of people choose to work from home and will take less rental space for their offices. Uh, the resiliency benefits here are significant. Uh, it's a low-impact project that will provide forty percent less reduc- uh, reduction in traffic while simultaneously improving the three million dollars of tax benefits to the city. Uh, not to mention the fifty-five million of upfront costs. So I'm hoping that you today will approve the four items and move it forward. You're never wrong to let the public decide. And if you guys will, uh, move forward, the ninety-nine year lease, the sale of the air rights, the development agreement, and the vacation, the vacation of right away, allow the commission to consider that tomorrow. And hopefully the commission will put it before the voters in November, November for a referendum. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Uh, Seth Fuer.
Yes, thank you very much. This is Seth Fuer. I'm an eighteen-year resident of Miami Beach. I've worked here full-time for the eighteen years as well. Miami Beach is lost friend in so many areas. Um, as an example, look at the waterfront in Coconut Grove and the amazing Renaissance happening there. Here we have a one-time chance to not only catch up, but hopefully lead again. When you consider the amazing developments like the Baywalk along the West Avenue Neighborhood, Park on Fifth and Miami Beach Can- canopy, imagine how great it would be to have the new Marina Park and upgraded Baywalk to enjoy on the walk down to South Point Park if this comes to fruition. With COVID and our current budget situation, and not even knowing if we'll have our possum Miami Beach this year, we cannot afford to say go to this project. This project needs to be put forth in front of the voters to decide if they want it or not. All these issues will be handled through community meetings, the development cycle before the project can even get started. Please let's go forward and thank you all for your time.
Thank you for your comments. Uh, Lastar.
Good morning. To Miami.
Good morning.
Oh, awesome. Great. So I, you know, I won't be redundant. I'll be respectful of your time. Uh, as a long-term resident, a business owner in the city, property owner, South Fifth Street, I heavily endorse this project. I think it's incredibly well thought out. I think it's beautiful and I think there are tremendous benefits to the city, all of which have already been covered. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Stern. And the last comment that we'll have from the public would be, uh, Joseph Flaherty. Is that correct?
Uh, no, sir.
You're, you're here to speak on another.
One other individual, Mr. Chair.
Uh, Jeff Bracken.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Thank you so much. I just wanted to commend Mr. Martin for putting together such a well-thought-out project and to welcome an architect like the Arc Angles into our city. I hope we can get this one done. Um, this is really gonna be a special project that we can, um, bring visitors to see on the boardwalk and residents to enjoy. And I know David will do something special with the retail, whether it's health and fitness, you know, local food and beverage operators. He's very much tapped into our community. He's from here. Um, many residents, well, a majority of residents trust his vision. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, with that, um, uh, we have one more. Let me, let me just, we're gonna have this last, uh, person from the public and then we're gonna, uh, close the opportunity for the public to speak. And then David will allow you to respond to some of the note, the, uh, comments and then we'll have some discussion amongst the planning board. Go ahead, Dan.
Hi, hi, can you hear me?
Yes, good morning.
Good morning, Deanne Connolly Graham. I have worked on Miami Beach for almost twenty years in the tourism and hospitality industry. And I'm also, um, very active with the city and the Miami Beach Chamber. I see this project as being a real solution to the deficits that are happening with the city right now. And I would encourage the, uh, city officials as well as residents to consider the huge advantages to this project. It's amazing. It's phenomenal. It will put Miami Beach even more on the map as an international destination. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With that, we're gonna close the public uh, opportunity to speak. And, uh, Mr. Martin, go ahead if you would like to respond directly to, uh, the comments that were raised.
Sure. Thank you so much, uh, Chair, Chairman. Um, I guess the first, there was, I took notes of, of some of the comments and I'll try to address them in the, the best order I can. Uh, one question was a traffic plan and traffic study, uh, that was performed by Timmy Horn and submitted for the record uh, to the city. Uh, basically because we're only building sixty residential units, uh, the reduction of the retail actually shows a, makes this project uh, uh, basically net neutral or actually a net reduction of traffic trips and counts, uh, for the entire day. And with a specific note, uh, to the PM trips. Um, and, and obviously, uh, that, uh, traffic study and report, uh, is, is, is part of the record as well as our Marina office. Uh, any and all, uh, the, uh, residents at the Morano Grande, uh, we've probably answered, uh, over sixty, uh, specific questions. Uh, my personal name and address was transmitted to all the residents and I've been, uh, a- answering all questions as we go uh, and hopeful that I can get to all the questions that, uh, that have been presented. Uh, some questions have been duplicate, so we haven't answered every question that's been a duplicate because it's already on the website, et cetera. Uh, parking, uh, we have, uh, parking within the pedestal. Uh, so, uh, basically we have commercial parking as well as residential parking all fit within the pedestal. Uh, one of the ways we made the pedestal so compact is we did provide, uh, for parking underneath the pedestal. So we have parking underneath the pedestal as well as parking within the pedestal. Uh, give or take above two hundred, two, uh, two hundred additional spaces. Um, again, the, the casual waterfront dining comment I, I think is important. Uh, you know, as it relates to disclosures, uh, all our disclosures for our, our firm, our company, uh, all lobbies registrations have been made, filed, et cetera. Any questions specific to that, I'm, I'm open to. Um, and the pedestal location is set. Uh, that was another question that, that, that was, that was had. The, the other question there was the pool. The pool would be on the roof of that pedestal. Uh, that's where it would be going, uh, for, uh, for the residential building. Uh, another, uh, question, uh, had to do with, uh, the evaluations. Uh, the city commissioned two, uh, independent appraisals, uh, that worked on the evaluations and, uh, we met the threshold originally, we were at fifty, we increased now to seventy, uh, and, and met the thresholds of, of those two uh, uh, evaluations. Uh, you know, although, uh, you know, there, there were certain, um, questions as it relates to those valuations, i.e. using comps from Oceanfront, et cetera, but we, uh, we, uh, agreed uh, to, to increase our, our, uh, our contribution to this project and to the city. Uh, as, as far as, uh, noise, uh, all the operating restrictions, all the, uh, um, all the, uh, South of Fifth requirements, uh, we're gonna meet. Uh, and obviously it's gonna be in the purview of the planning board, uh, that we answer, uh, uh, and address any and, and all of those comments as well. Um, you know, we're grateful for, for there to be, uh, broad community support, but I am hopeful, uh, and I'm gonna work my, my hardest uh, to, uh, convince, uh, each and every, uh, Morano Grande resident why this project not only is uh, very minimally impactful from a, from a, from a view perspective, uh, and also shade perspective really, uh, maybe, uh, nine in the morning on a specific season, but, but also, uh, just, uh, you know, overall kind of the benefits and the qualities that this project, uh, has to offer. Uh, I do agree that, uh, that historic preservation is really the identity of, of Miami Beach and, and its history and treasure. And it's something that, that we view as, uh, part, you know, part of the, you know, our, our value system in, in Miami Beach. Uh, but I do wanna let one of the speakers know the building is in, uh, very bad condition. Uh, and, uh, something that I, I don't think is really contributing to the, you know, great architecture that we see South of Fifth. Uh, and, and really the slender tower, uh, some residents in Morano Grande wanted this other tower. I think the slender tower really addresses and maximizes the views for all the residents. Uh, and I also think it really has a very minimal impact, uh, but does impact in, in any construction, in any building on this site will have an impact. But really, the width of the building's only a hundred and twenty feet on Alton Road. And then the depth of the building is around a hundred and eight feet. Uh, so we really felt that by making that compact, um, and that includes the balconies, by the way. Uh, we, we just felt by making that really compact and then really having the building almost, you know, really above a football field away, uh, from Morano Grande, we were hopeful to try to make that, uh, and address that. So, um, I think, uh, I tried to address any, any, any questions. Uh, but, uh, all the questions that were asked, uh, but if there's any more, I'm, I'm here prepared to answer them as well.
Yeah, so there, there will now, uh, David, there will be some questions from, uh, members of the board. So we wanted to get through the public opportunity to speak. I wanted to allow you an opportunity to respond to them directly. And then, uh, we'll, we'll now go through our questions with the board directly with you now that that opportunity to speak from the public is closed. So, um, we'll start with, uh, Mike Barrino. Mike, you there?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I, I actually have, first I have a follow-up question for, uh, for Mr. Golden. Is that possible to do on this format? Possible to ask Mr. Golden a follow-up question?
Yeah, I mean, you can, you can ask.
Okay, so I'll just, I'll just go and then we'll see what happens. So, uh, I, uh, I have. So, uh, I, uh, I have a lot of familiarity with this property. I was president of the South of Fifth Neighborhood Association when the last proposal uh, for this property came through. Um, and I did a lot of, you know, obviously spent a lot of time on it at that time. I can, I can tell the folks who live at Morano Grande. Uh, this is, uh, this is a, this is a vastly, uh, better, uh, approach and a vastly better, uh, proposal. But, you know, one of the questions that's not being asked in this conversation is, you know, uh, because our choices are really uh, let the lease run out and, and take it back to a hundred percent public space. Or continue this, uh, uh, public-private, uh, it's not really a partnership, I don't guess, really more of a joint venture. Uh, and the decision to, to enter into this type of arrangement was, was made in the early eighties, as Mr. Martin said in the very beginning of his presentation. Uh, we were desperate for, uh, for investment, uh, long before my time, but we were desperate for investment and, uh, the city entered into uh, uh, the arrangement. And now our choice is really to whether to, whether to continue with this proposal or whether to, uh, let it, uh, revert back to a hundred percent, you know, public space. So, so I would ask Mr. Golden and his neighbors to consider, uh, you know, I like to use the word stakeholder, and in this case, we're all gonna be able to cast a vote in November, uh, probably. Uh, we're gonna all be able to cast a vote on the project. Uh, I think everybody that's a voter in Miami Beach is a stakeholder, uh, in this situation. So what would, what would Mr. Golden and, 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 and his neighbors say, uh, to his fellow citizens in Miami Beach? Uh, passing on, uh, on the, the public benefits associated with this. Would, would Mr. Golden and his neighbors prefer to see it revert back to uh, a hundred percent public space and, uh, and, and, and then how would we as a community pay for that? Uh, how would we pay for the upkeep of the, you know, of, 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 of the, of the property? Um, and so, you know, that's a little, that's a little deeper than, than we've gone so far. But I, I think that's the, that's really the question for all of us, you know, and, uh, it's hard to imagine, and I, I guess it's possible, it's hard to imagine, uh, uh, a better proposal. And I say that once again with the experience of having seen the last proposal from a very, uh, successful, uh, developer of of Four Seasons properties, uh, around the country. Um, they certainly knew what they were doing and, and I can, I can, I could give you point by point how this one is, is an improvement. So, um, so anyway, I don't know if Mr. Golden can respond or if he even wants to, but, but, but that's my, that's my question for him. And then I have a couple of questions for David Martin and I'll, I'll, I'll shut up.
Sure. Uh, PJ, can you let Mr. Golden, he has his hand raised? Can you let him speak?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me? Uh, well, let me, let me say thank you for the opportunity to, uh, uh, to respond and I, I would say I, I personally myself.
Let me interrupt you, Mr. Golden. You're, you're speaking in the capacity as a, as, as whom relative to the Morano Grande?
I'm Morano Grande, a group of a hundred homeowners that have asked me to speak up in their behalf.
So you're, you're, you're a resident in the building speaking on behalf of your.
I'm a resident of Miami Beach and a long-term resident of, uh, of Morano Grande.
Okay, no problem. I just wanted to clarify that.
And I'm a, uh, real estate developer and, uh, have, uh, been the managing partner of the largest real estate development company in the country. And, uh, also the head of, uh, Host Marriott Corporation, CEO of Host Marriott Corporation, which is, she knows a big, uh, hotel developer. Uh, and the answer I think is for us, from our point of view, first of all, is that this, this project, particularly given the fact that we're dealing with COVID and are not able to communicate and be together, uh, is very frustrating in the sense that we, we at Morano Grande feel like we're being run over. And, uh, we really haven't had, despite, uh, David Martin's comments to the contrary, not have, not have had the com- communication and uh, uh, give and take that we should have had, uh, in order to be really comfortable with this. Uh, we, we'd like the process to slow down some so that we know what exactly is happening. And, uh, uh, have all of our, our questions answered. They haven't been answered. We haven't had a shadow study. Uh, we haven't, uh, done many of the things that we are really interested in doing in understanding how this, this is, our views and the like. So I think that that's, that's the big issue from our point of view. Uh, we clearly would like to see it more green space in South of Fifth. And, uh, and so, you know, the idea of not developing it is a, is a, uh, i- is attractive to us. Uh, but I would say that recognizing the economics of the city and so forth, that we would, uh, probably, uh, the city would much prefer and the majority of people would prefer to move forward. We just wanna move forward with the right project, with the right developer and with us being heard, uh, overall.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Golden.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Golden. So, uh, am I still up, Kareem or?
Yeah, go ahead, Mike.
Okay, good. So, uh, Mr. Martin, uh, previously, I mean, once again, I wanna, I wanna delve a little deeper into this idea of Alton Road and, uh, and trying to find a way to calm traffic on Alton Road, whether it be, uh, y- you know, uh, I mean, permeable pavers, I don't know if that's a possibility. Uh, I don't know how much you budgeted with this overall proposal for, for Alton Road itself. But, uh, from a pedestrian standpoint, Alton Road's pretty dis- big disaster. I mean, it's terrible. So, uh, uh, you know, second and second and Alton, uh, could use a big upgrade from a pedestrian standpoint. Uh, the whole street, you know, uh, folks are trying to get in the neighborhood, they're trying to get out of the neighborhood. It's really hard to, to maintain, uh, uh, you know, the proper speed and, and a, and a focus on pedestrian there. So, so beautification, you know, uh, it's really not that attractive. Uh, uh, you, you know, within the overall context of our community and how beautiful it is, uh, there's a lot of work that could be done there. What is your level of, uh, what is your vision and your level of commitment to, to that, uh, that idea?
So, thank you, Mr. Barron. Um, so the Alton Road is, uh, is something, you know, that, uh, not only do we need to consider kind of the north-south, uh, pedestrian and cyclist, uh, 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 you know, kind of connectivity and, and passageway. We also need to worry about the pedestrian crossing of Second over Alton, right? One of the interesting things with this site, it was part of the town hall presentation we had, uh, around, uh, thirteen days ago. Uh, but the, the connection of Second Street from Marjorie Stoneman Douglas Park, Washington Avenue, uh, Washington Avenue Park. That connection kind of really Second Street ends at this Marina Park. And so, uh, improvements from a pedestrian cycling standpoint, uh, from is, will be part of our proposal, part of that fifteen million dollars, uh, uh, that we have, uh, agreed to invest, uh, into this, uh, into the neighborhood and into this project, uh, will include Alton Road enhancements. So the crossing of Alton, I think, is as important and, and similarly important as the, uh, pedestrian and cycling connectivity in Alton. Uh, the second thing is, obviously, uh, you know, I think, uh, you know, it was very positive now that we have on Fourth Street, we have, uh, we have our street signalization there, uh, which I think has done a good job from a traffic calming standpoint. I do not have details on what more I can do between Second Street and Third Street, uh, but we're, we're open to doing that. I, you know, Mr. Barron, I get very sensitive with, uh, uh, you know, touching Alton Road or, or having, uh, infrastructure or shutdowns of lanes, et cetera, uh, because I do wanna be sensitive to the neighbors and, and not propose something that the neighborhood doesn't want, but uh, you have my commitment. If the neighborhood wants, uh, uh, you know, certain elements of Alton Road or traffic calming devices that really, I don't think, um, I don't think, uh, uh, require too much of, uh, of, of, of infrastructure and, and impact on, on the road, but uh, any traffic calming, uh, opportunities, uh, along Alton Road, we're, we're open, we're game to doing it. We've done it. We, we're working on one now on Eighty Seven Park, uh, with DOT in that regard. DOT owned, uh, Collins Avenue, but here I think we're lucky that Alton Road is owned by the city. Uh, so I think we're gonna have a lot more flexibility to try to meet those, those challenges, uh, uh, and try to design something that makes sense. Uh, today I don't have anything designed in traffic calming, but it's something that I'm wrote down and taking a note on and, and will, you know, ask Kimberly Horn and, and our, and our, uh, engineers to really, uh, come up with some ideas to propose to you and the community.
That would be great. I, 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 I can tell you, uh, it is my understanding also that Alton Road is a s- south of Fifth Street anyway, is a city uh, street, and so we can kind of do what we wanna do with it. Um, and just so you know also, yeah, I don't know if you'll write this down or not, but, uh, the whole neighborhood is designated a pedestrian priority zone, uh, which is, which is a designation within the city's transportation master plan. Um, you know, it calls, it brings lower speed limits, it brings better pedestrian crossings, it brings a whole host of uh, uh, like a menu of, uh, of, of items that can just be rolled out that, that have been proven, proven methods to, uh, to calm traffic and make, uh, make an area, uh, more pedestrian friendly. Um, and certainly we need, uh, we need, uh, work on that all across the, the neighborhood, but, uh, but, but Alton Road is, is probably the worst uh, within the ki- within the community. So, uh, a third, and I'll, 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 I'll leave it to the rest of the board to ask questions. Um, uh, would you, would you address specifically, uh, Mr. Golden's, uh, comment about, uh, I know he said, I think he said sightlines. I'm not sure if he said shadows, but, uh, what studies are underway? Uh, what studies have been provided to everyone who lives at Morano Grande, uh, frankly, um, and/or Rebecca Towers? Um, uh, what, what, what is in the works, uh, to help those folks understand how they will be impacted? You know, I, I, I've had a couple of buildings, uh, interfere with my, uh, my wonderful view of, uh, of the government cut and, uh, and Fisher Island uh, and the Atlantic Ocean. I've actually got a little bit of an Atlantic Ocean view, uh, and I live in the center of the neighborhood and, and I, you know, it was heartbreaking frankly, you know, when those buildings went up. So, so I, 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 I know that, you know, from a legal perspective, view is not, uh, is not something that, that, uh, you know, they don't own the view, but I accept that, but I also feel like, uh, you know, uh, somebody like, uh, you, uh, would want to, would want to try to address that in every way that you possibly can. And what are you doing to do that?
Yep. So, uh, July seventh, uh, we were able to confirm, uh, a Zoom meeting, uh, with Morano Grande. On, on that date, I will, you know, we got the request, uh, I think it was, uh, June uh, tenth, uh, for, uh, shadow study and sightline study. We have had our architects working on that and will be presenting that, uh, on, on July seventh. Um, I will say that, um, this proposal, uh, the entire design, uh, has views, light and air as part of its, uh, concept, right? By making the building only a hundred and twenty feet wide and a hundred and eighty feet deep, a hundred and eight feet deep, um, it's really a, a kind of a, almost a box, but it's a nice small box in a site that's got over a hundred and fifty thousand square feet of land. Um, so, um, you know, we also, uh, were able to move the pedestal. We also shrunk the pedestal, moved it back from Alton. We also oriented the building, uh, you know, closer to Alton rather than being center on the site for the very fact of, of trying to expand the, the view corridor, uh, for Morano Grande, for Rebecca Towers, and for that matter, for the entire center of Fifth Community. Uh, so, so I, I'm hopeful that, uh, when I present that on July seventh, uh, that, uh, that we, 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 that, and, and that, and, and obviously, uh, the Marina office and website, um, also will have it as well. Um, and, uh, and so I'm hopeful that, uh, Mr. Golden and others, uh, uh, can, uh, engage with me and, uh, on, on a, on a productive dialogue. I, I do think that, um, you know, certain, uh, residents and building, uh, in this community over the last twenty years, um, a lot of times, um, you know, we, we wanna do our best we can and, uh, and we're, you know, we want to get the most, uh, if not all, uh, community support, um, that we can, uh, for this project and, uh, and I promise, Mr. Barron, I'm gonna work my hardest on July seventh and after, uh, to try to A, answer any other questions and B, uh, be able to provide and really show the minimal impact, um, uh, that this.
Okay, so they can, they can count on, on something that they can look and touch and feel on July seventh. That's, that's the answer?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you so much.
Uh, David, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, uh, Mr. Martin, thank you very much for your, uh, very, uh, thorough presentation. It was, uh, it's a delight to see a, a, an architectural structure of that quality uh, in, in the area. It's, it, it, it does have, in my opinion, uh, uh, a significantly interesting, uh, view, and I think you've done a lot to accommodate, uh, the neighborhood. Uh, the, the question I have is, do we have any renderings of the perspective from the Morano Grande? Because I don't believe anybody who complained about the project was, was, uh, excuse me. I, I don't believe anybody who complained about the project was from anywhere else. I don't think there were, there was anything else. I, I just simply heard support from people who, who were, uh, residents, uh, residents of the other parts of the area. And I didn't hear anything from anybody except Morano, Morano Grande. Uh, I know there was one, uh, lady who was concerned that there wouldn't be, uh, you know, more accessible or less expensive restaurants. So my question to you is, do you have renderings of what the view would look exactly like from the area where the people are complaining from? Um, let me, and then I'll have a follow-up after you've answered that, Mr. Martin.
Uh, uh, no, sir. Uh, Mr. Barron, I do not have a rendering, uh, from Morano Grande to the building. One of the interesting things that I.
I'm, I'm Mr. Weeder.
Sorry.
Mr. Ma- Mr. Barron.
That was a.
And why you.
Mistake. I'm reading my, I'm taking notes and not paying attention, Mr. Weeder. I'm, I'm extremely apolog- apologize for, for that.
Mike, I congratulate you on your, uh, your notoriety.
Oh, you're much better looking, David. Much better, yeah.
Alright, so after that, uh, I don't know where to go, but sorry, Mr. Weeder. Um, so the, the, we do not have a rendering, uh, from Morano Grande, uh, of the building. Um, the, when, when we looked at, uh, Morano Grande, uh, it's basically a, um, uh, it has a diagonal position, uh, to the water. Uh, and, uh, the, there's basically three towers that make up Morano Grande. Um, and I believe, uh, personally, Mr. Weeder, I, I lived in, in unit twenty ten. I was actually one of the first individuals to move into Morano Grande and the, uh, unit, uh, the ten line in Morano Grande would be probably the most um, impacted if, if, if we're, we're considering that, uh, for, for any building really that were to go here. Uh, but what we've, uh, done is, uh, we've pushed the building away. Uh, and we have, um, uh, pushed the building closer to Alton in order to try to open up the.
No, 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 I, I know, I know that. You've already, you've already said that. As you know, a, a picture is worth a thousand words and it's hard for me, uh, perhaps to visualize, I don't know about the other members of the board, to see what they're complaining about without a, without a photograph or a, some kind of rendering as to what their view is gonna look like or how much it's been obstructed.
I, I, I would have to maybe take, uh, I, maybe just go into the unit. Uh, I just have the view so much in my head because I lived there so many years. Um, uh, basically the primary view, uh, is not only of, of that unit, is not only the water, but it's also of the ocean and of South of Fifth. Uh, and so, um, the, and it, it has like kind of a, a ninety degree, uh, configuration in that uh, a part of the ninety degrees is facing the water and then another part of the ninety degree is facing, um, is facing South of Fifth and the ocean. Um, we've done a significant amount of renderings. Uh, Mr. Weeder, if, uh, uh, if this is a rendering you would like me to do, I, I will do it.
Um, I would, I think, I don't know if, how the other members of the board, uh, feel about it, but, uh, you, you know, uh, historic preservation's always been one of my, uh, primary concerns. But, you know, I, I think the architecture and the explanation you gave concerning the, um, development of the, of, I hate to use the word development, but the, 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 um, construction at the, at the, at the project is, is, um, beautiful. I think the, I think the building is, is stunning. And it's completely above what I've normally seen, uh, as some, of some projects that have proceeded here in Miami Beach. So, in terms of the building itself, I'm happy with it. I, I, I like the park area behind the, uh, you know, and, and all the efforts you've made to accommodate. And obviously you're not gonna be able to accommodate everybody. Uh, there's always gonna be people who are, you know, complaining about their view being circumstructed. Everybody here on the board has heard that complaint numerous times and I've heard it for ages on historic preservation when I served there. So I, I understand, you know, the efficacy of getting this project underway because it is a splendid, uh, opportunity to renovate the area. And not all renovations are historically. And not all renovations are historically deleterious. So I, I, I just, I just want to say that I do support the project. My only concern is whether the legitimate, the complaints issued by the gentleman who says he spoke for one hundred people at the Morano Grande is, is as serious as he says it is. After all, a hundred people don't all have the same, you know, a hundred apartments don't all have the same view. So I wondered if, you know, that, what, what it would look like from the, from the views of people who live there. And that's why it would be, I think, helpful to me and helpful to the board. But other than that, I'm in favor of the project and I think it's a terrific undertaking. And you certainly paid a lot of attention to the, to the architectural details. It's, it's, it's a gorgeous building and I'm not real easy to please in that department. So, thank you, thank you.
David, what is your specific request? What is your specific?
I'd like to see a fo, of rendering of the complaint. That's the only complaint I really heard was that the views were obstructed. Other than, you know, against the economic forces of development concerning the, the economic forces that development bring in terms of, you know, gentrification. Gentrification is a, I guess, a kind of euphemism for people saying that the neighborhood should remain the way it is. And obviously, we know that that can't always be the case in a, in a city that's as fluid as Miami Beach. So that's, that's my, that's my understanding of, of, of how development works. I don't know if the other members of the board agree with me, but you know, I'm not against, I'm not against development. I mean, my other pet peeve is when people say world class. I mean, what does that mean? World class means, I guess, a lot more people than other cities.
Mr. Weeder, not only will, will, on July seventh, we have a, a shade study of the building. We also are going to have a sightline study. And so in that sightline study, even though the building, you know, we've said this again and again, that is over three hundred feet away. The, the sightline line and the actual unit floor plan depiction can kind of really show a cone of where the view impact is. I think that site plan is gonna, and the shade study, obviously, because there, there was a complaint about, a concern that there would potentially be some shade in the tennis court or pool. My goal is that I'm able to satisfy all those questions with the sightline study and the shade study that we're going to present to Morano Grand on July seventh.
Well, we clearly can't address the promises that have been made to people in the Morano Grand by, when they purchased their apartments. And they were sold, those apartments by the previous developer and as to promises that were made, which may not have been, you know, foreseeably annulled by future events. So I understand that and certainly you're not to be held account, to account for that. But the financial benefits to the city seem pretty good. And also, it, it seems like the, the sensitivity evoked by the project itself is, you know, good for the city. So if the city's gaining benefit financially and the, and the area is being beautified, it doesn't necessarily mean that some of the area which is quote historic shouldn't be altered, you know, in perpetuity. Anyway, that's my take. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Um, let's, let's, let's do this. Mark, let's go, Mark, Nick, Asa, and then we'll have our vice chair last and then I'll comment. So is that, is that fair? Mark, you want to go?
Sure. I, I, I don't really have much to say. I like the project. I think it's worthy of pursuing and proceeding. This isn't the final iteration of this project, so certainly it may change a little bit when the negotiations happen with the city and when the voters vote. So, you know, the only thing I, you know, and I, and I actually am in favor of the slender tower as opposed to the blocky building. I think it's much better, looks much better, creates better view corridors and more land, you know, available on the, on the size of the property. I think it's a much more beautiful project as opposed to a blocky building. The only thing is I, I'll sort of, you know, Mike already discussed this, but I'm a boater, long time Miami Beach resident. And I can tell you, there's not a lot of places anymore as a boater, as a beachy kind of guy that, that loves to go to the beach and loves to enjoy our waterways. And there's very few left. And this is really, there's only two left in Miami Beach right now, would be Shuckers and Monty's. There's some other places that have access, but they're incredibly expensive and not as accommodating and friendly. And I think this is incredibly valuable because, and I, and I would tell Dave, don't buy the Shuckers because we're, we're going to be, we're going to have no more places eventually. And so, you know, it, it's, I understand you can't commit to, to Monty's and to have a certain tenant in there. But I, I would certainly would love to see in the document that there is a commitment at least to a type of restaurant that is oriented to, you know, to, to marine boaters as opposed to some uber expensive and high-end, high-end restaurant that, you know, we have plenty of in Miami Beach. And so I would actually like to actually document that in some sort of agreement as opposed to just saying there's a commitment there. Because, you know, you'll have a lot of, Dave, you'll have a lot of choices and, and there will be tenants there and it may not be Monty's, but you know, but, but it's sort of a style of restaurant that I, that I'd love to see. And the other thing I would also like to, to see, and you know, I, I don't know if this is a time or not, but it is super important. It's, it's hard as a boater to find dockage when you go to restaurants. And that's why I think Shuckers does so well. Because they have really terrific dockage. Monty's is okay. It's not great. And, you know, there's a, there's a part of it that's free. It's along the seawall there. And if you, but if you're not there early enough or you, you know, you can't get a spot, it, it becomes very expensive. And so I'd also like some sort of commitment to the Miami Beach boating community that it'll be available dockage at a reasonable rate, you know, unlike some, you know, some of the places that have access to, to dockage for boaters. You go there for a few minutes and you're spending, you know, seventy dollars to dock your twenty-five foot boat, which is really ridiculous. And, you know, it's one of the beauties of those two places. We're down to two and I, growing up, there were probably seven of these kind of places growing up. And so, you know, I, I, you know, words are great, but I'd like to see something more sort of documented in some sort of commitment related to the type of restaurant and the dockage. Otherwise, I think, I love the slender tower. I think the architect is beautiful. I think the park is, you know, tying it into the baywalk is really amazing. And I, I think it's a lovely project and I think that, you know, it, it'll be great benefit to the city. And I think the money that the city will make is, is going to be very material at this point. And that's all I have to say right now.
All right, then we'll go, uh, thank you so much. We're going, uh, Nick, uh, we're Nick, Asa, and then Daniel.
Great, thank you. I, I think we've had some great comments here and I agree with most of them. And I, and I think, you know, David did a great job summarizing blog issues, David Weeder. My comment would be to David Martin, I wonder to what degree have you decided? I'll ask a few questions. You can respond if you want. You know, for the record, have you decided who the landscape architect will be? Who will be designing this park? I'm not exactly sure if that is going to be designed concurrently with the tower. And I would just say, you know, South Point Park is such an exceptional park because of the way it's activated and programmed. And not all parks are created equal, you know, open space. I understand there is a ecologic benefit to just having open green space for water retention, things like that. But have you made any decisions about that? Is that going to come back to us at some point to review?
So, so the, definitely the, so, uh, uh, the Arch Ingles group has a, an entire landscape division. They were working on the Big U project, which was a, a project that was proposed by, I think FEMA, you know, including FEMA and HUD. And when Mayor Bloomberg was in New York, toward the Lower Manhattan, kind of, uh, kind of, uh, you know, resiliency Birmingham, and creating all this green space in Birmingham for Lower Manhattan. So, so, so Biarke has a landscape group in, in his office. But we've also engaged Raymond Jungles in, in our project that we work with Biarke. We worked with Raymond in collaboration. And so we've already even signed Raymond up. But that would go, uh, uh, that would go to Design Review Board and, and Planning Board after the referendum, if we're hopeful to be able to be supported by, by the voters. So, so, but definitely, uh, Biarke Ingles is the architect and, and, and Raymond Jungles will be the landscape architect. But Biarke and Raymond kind of collaborate on the green space more than just two different languages or vocabularies.
That'd be great. And I would just say, you know, to the neighbors, to Marana Bay and, and to all the neighbors, the neighborhood, you know, a, a great park makes a neighborhood. And, and I don't think it can be overstated. So, you know, that is the public benefit. And I think Raymond Jungles, of all people, you can be assured this is going to be an excellent place to go. So I, I applaud that. So thank you, David.
Asa?
Alright, um, I'll keep it short. You had me at permeable surfaces. I think the project's beautiful. I wish we would get more buildings like this in North Beach. And I just want to second Mark's concern over the restaurant that would move in and making sure that there's still affordable docking. Also being a boater, having somewhere you can go is really important without paying big dock.
I'm sorry, I know I spoke already, Kareem, but if I can just maybe ask, I, it's not clear. This, this project, it is the Miami Beach Marina, but to what degree is it now severed from the docks and the Marina that operate out in the water? Is there any connection anymore? Is there any changes planned for the Marina itself?
Yes. So, so thank you, Nick. So the Marina is, currently has around four hundred slips. And they will be getting redesigned, reengineered and permitted for an upgrade. So the entire part of this proposal is a, a minimum of thirty-five million dollars that will be invested to improving and enhancing the slips, the, the, all these slips in, in that basically a bay bottom that is currently actually owned by the state and then leased to City of Miami Beach, which is then being leased to our group. In addition to that, the lease not only has the bay bottom or the Marina, but also has a component of the uplands. And the actual retail, the forty-five thousand square feet of retail office will be a lease, will be leased from us to the city. And we will be paying a, a, a rent associated with that forty-five thousand square feet. So it is synchronized and symbiotic in that the lease of the, uh, uh, of the uplands and the lease of the bay bottom or the Marina are part of one document, one lease. And then the air rights are a separate kind of transaction. So there, there is that connectivity and there is planned a significant amount of, of, of investment in that Marina.
Daniel.
Hi, everyone. Thank you, Mr. Martin, for your presentation. My first question before going to David is staff. What's the current height in this zoning or the surrounding buildings? I know there's a variety of heights in that area, but if staff can update me on what the current zoning is and what the makeup of the existing building is on, I would appreciate that.
Daniel, the, the property is zone GU, government use, because it's, it's owned by city. The, um, the development regulations that are used for purposes of new construction, you take an average of the surrounding districts and the two abutting districts are CPS four. So we would use the CPS four regulations. And the current maximum height for the CPS four district is a hundred and fifty feet.
What about the built context of the area if I didn't go with zoning? Because I guess there was changes in zoning. I, I know there are much higher towers around there.
Yeah. Most of the buildings were built prior to the changes in the zoning, but we put this in the memo. Icon, which is at the northern part of the area at the corner of Fifth Street and Alton Road is four hundred and twenty-three feet. Morano Grand, just to the north, is four hundred and seven feet. Rebecca Tower to the, to the south is a hundred and fifteen feet. The Yacht Club at Portofino, which is south of Rebecca Tower, is three hundred and forty-one feet. And Morano, which is just south of the Yacht Club, is four hundred and two feet.
Thank you for that. I, I, I know we're looking at the development agreement and I don't think we're really, I appreciate the renderings. I know we're not really looking at the project. They're trying to give us some ideas of what's been discussed and being introduced to the community. With regards to the, to the design envelope, are we looking, since this is going to change from a GU to something else, are we going to be looking at the underlying design envelope and regulations that we want to adopt formally for this GU side? Or is that just going to be part of the development agreement?
The, the, the code amendments are specific to CPS four because anytime you develop a GU property, in this particular instance, you would use the CPS four regulations. So that's why the CPS four regulations are being amended.
Okay, perfect. Um, Ms. Martin, thank you. This is a beautiful project, most certainly. I am most certainly in favor of the open view corridors, specifically when it comes to a waterfront property. Today, it is hard, even though you have access to the Marina, it's not inviting as a public amenity. And unless you're a boater, you don't really know that that's there for you. The parking is very limited and it's just not very open to invite the, the community to go there. So I do think that this is a great way to take that public land and open it up to the community and invite them to interact with the water and the Marina. There's so few marinas, so few access to the waterfront. So, you know, I'm very supportive of that. When it comes to the development agreement, there are some discussions about investing additional land, additional money over a period of years, of segments. Can, can, can I get a better understanding of how that money is supposed to be spent? Is that for Marina improvement? So you're going to deliver the public park as, as a matter of, of the completion of your project? And then you're dedicating additional capital investments into Marina project over the years? Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. Basically, there is two buckets of capital infrastructure dollars. There's thirty-five million that, that in the development agreement, there's a schedule, a minimum of fifteen million has to be spent in the first ten years. A minimum of ten, second ten years and a minimum of ten, third ten years for a total of thirty-five minimum. And then the fifteen million dollars, seven and a half would need to be spent in the first ten years. And then seven and a half would need to be spent in the second ten years. So in essence, the first ten years would, would, would get twenty-two and a half million dollars minimum capital investment. And then the second ten years would be seventeen and a half million dollars. And then the, the third ten years, last years is, would be an additional ten million dollars.
And that's all to the Marina portion?
To the Marina and the uplands. So thirty-five million minimum needs to be spent in the, in the Marina as well as the schedule of the fifteen million dollars that's laid out in the development agreement of what we need to spend money on. Alton Road improvements and a bunch of resiliency issues for the neighborhood.
All right. No, that's great. I, I'm very supportive of my fellow board members' comments about boaters' access. You know, we're surrounded by water on Miami Beach. There are so many of us that are boaters. I'm a boater myself. And we are very limited in where we can go on our boats. And, you know, I live in North Beach, so of course I go to Shuckers often enough. And it's just this amazing way to spend with your family, so little traffic on the water, maybe not so much in this area. But I do think that that's something to consider as far as a public amenity and how to open that up to the public and make sure that there's public mooring or docking available to visit the site. I also really appreciate the design. I, you know, I do think it's exceptional what's being presented. I don't know, you know, I know you by reputation in a sense that you're not going to present something, you're not going to deliver. I don't know, you know, how we ensure that what you're showing us is actually what you're going to deliver. It most certainly looks like a, a something that's well engineered, not simple to build. I want to make sure as high-class as it is, that it's very inviting to the public. So we're talking about a lot of commercial activity at the ground floor that invites the public, not just the residents. So we want to make sure residents and the public is invited to the commercial spaces. Particularly like a dive shop as an example. Are you seriously considering putting the dive shop inside the pedestal base of it? of it? I mean, that that would just be amazing because, you know, diving is an amazing resource off of our waters. And again, having being on Miami Beach and making sure we have access to that in that type of environment is is really does distinguish us here in Miami Beach. Unlike going to other locations where, you know, their public arenas and the dive shops, you know, aren't exactly as as amazing, but this seems like something very inviting um, to the public. And it's amazing that you would build something of that of that quality that would remain open to the public. So I am supportive of a more of a marina or marine relationship with your restaurant operator. Um, I do agree, south of Fifth Street carries with it a very high-end type of environment. We don't want to lose the ability of the community to access this based on some type of economic barrier that doesn't allow them access to that. And I think that can be addressed in many different ways, and it also will ensure the success of the restaurant if it can certainly serve more individuals within the community. I think that would be great. And again, I I'm really um, thankful for the openness and trying to make sure that this project doesn't, you know, unintentionally have economic discrimination by making sure it's very open to 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 everyone. On on the development agreement side, I not towards you, more towards the city, just as a message, you know, we're going to have this payment coming through to the city, and I most certainly think there needs to be a discussion of how to allocate those funds and ensure that that goes to some of the needs and the displacement in the community. Most certainly, you know, affordable housing comes to mind. This is right next to Rebecca Towers. I'm curious, when was the last time we did a similar project uh, that has that type of impact serving uh, a community in our area? So I most certainly feel that's something I'd like to urge the commission to discuss. It's a big check. And I'd like to make sure that when these unexpected funds come through, I know we have a lot of demands for our city, but I most certainly feel we need to start making some commitments to those harder uh, goals of affordable housing or workforce housing, whatever it may be. And I'll leave it at that. But thank you very much for your professionalism. The way that you're engaging with the community, I realize this is not um, a guaranteed thing. You've got to go for a voter referendum. It's not something very easy, but I appreciate your approach and attitude towards making sure that you understand that you're dependent on the community and most certainly see it in the way you're presenting the information and and everything else that you're doing. And you most certainly realize that we're uh, giving you the opportunity to make our public space something that everyone can enjoy and benefit from. So thank you very much for that. That's all.
Well, Mr. Martin, thank you for appearing today. I think that the building is a phenomenal building. I think I concur with the statements about the accessibility to boaters and just keeping that in mind. I think as we uh, put forth a motion, if it is to support the project, then I would just ask that the comment specific to um, having, you know, some type of um, um, I don't want to call the words protections, but some some type of access to the marina for everyday boaters. And having those uses in there would be terrific on your part if you can make that happen, but it would just be a comment. It's nothing that we can afford, of course. Um, I think that uh, you know, the comments about the city, this has more to do with the city than you. We will ask that those be forwarded as well. Uh, Tom, with uh, regards to some kind of public benefit use of the funds that will be received by the city, obviously, the commission has full authority um, to negotiate that, but maybe that can be something that's in uh, made part of the final agreement, um, especially if it's going to go to the voters in the uh, fall. So with that, uh, I have no more comments, uh, David, except I I would just say to you, fantastic presentation, great development. I think you've taken into account the sightlines. Um, from my perspective, I think that there's some more detail that you'll provide forthcoming to make the folks in the neighboring uh, development a little bit happier with the types of steps that you've taken. Um, and they'll be able to see that more concisely as you develop your plans. Um, I will say to the one uh, public comment that came that there was an uh, email sent and then, you know, didn't get a response back. And I I do know how it is. You you've already answered the question and you're getting the same question over. If you could just tweak that on your side and have your team just reference back to wherever the link is, where the answer is, or, you know, a response saying this question has been answered and here's where you can find it. I think that'll be helpful as we go, but I know your team is uh, tr- terrific because I know of you. I'm in the business with you. Um, uh, but certainly a great project, and let's uh, see if we have any uh, support or if there's anything from staff first before we ask for anything from the floor.
Mr. Chair, the the only thing I just wanted to add, and I know we've talked about this tangentially, but uh, assuming uh, this moves forward and is approved by the voters in November, sometime in twenty twenty-one, two separate applications will have to be made regarding the details of the project. One would be to the planning board, since the project's over fifty thousand square feet, so you will have a more detailed look at all the circulation facets. And then it would also have to go to the design review board. So there would be some additional um, lengthy um, review processes and evaluation if this moves forward.
Perfect. And then with uh, Michael, what's what's the I, the order that we need to take these uh, these items since we have four?
I can answer that, uh, Mr.
Go ahead, Nick.
Sorry. Uh, what we would recommend is that you ta- you take a vote on the development agreement first, uh, then on the vacation, um, then on the amendments to the comprehensive, to the comprehensive plan, and lastly, the amendments to the LDRs.
Okay, so to to the direction there, we have planning board item, planning board item twenty dash zero three seven six, uh, which is the development agreement for Marina Park. Uh, do we have any, any?
I'll I'll move to to uh, push that to with a favorable recommendation to continue on.
Thanks, Mark. Any second.
I will second.
Okay, you want to call the vote, Michael?
Okay, so the motion was ma- made by uh, Mr. Milan, seconded by uh, Mr. Batia. So for the roll call, um, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Berenau?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and then, uh, staff, Tom, uh, uh, and everybody, this would be with those comments about the uh, you know, in support of the voting as well as the public benefits, uh, with the the financial return, cash financial return to the city. All right, let's take the vacation, which would be planning board item twenty dash zero three seven eight, vacation of portion of Alton Road right away adjacent to three hundred dash four hundred Alton Road. Do we have any support?
I mean, I think we're going to have to support it for to move the project forward. Is that accurate?
Yes.
Okay, I I will, I will, uh, uh, I'll 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 uh, push it forward to uh, to uh, with the favorable recommendation to continue on with at that negotiation.
This would be actually a motion for approval, uh, Mr. Milan, because the planning board has to technically approve this. So if you could modify your motion to say it would be.
Well, modify that we approve, that we approve the uh, um, as presented.
Jelpe, second. It's moved, it's been moved and seconded. Uh, Michael called the roll.
The roll call, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Berenau?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, now we would, and all of these have to be taken up together, but we just have to vote on them separately. So we'll take up planning board item twenty dash zero three five nine. The comp plan amendment, uh, I guess this would be small scale.
I'd be happy to move that forward with a favorable recommendation.
You have a second?
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. You want to call?
Sorry, who was the second on that?
Daniel.
Daniel.
Okay. Um, the roll call for approval, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. Weeder?
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe?
Hey. Yes.
Mr. Mr. Berenau?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, and then the final.
That that was a shout out to David, by the way.
And then the.
We appreciate the humor. We certainly do.
All right, the final item, PB twenty dash zero three six three, which is the CPS four LDR amendment. Uh, we have a motion to.
I will move with a favorable recommendation.
I'll be happy to second that one.
That was Mike, uh, moving seconded, Michael.
Yep, thank you.
Okay, for the roll call, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Aye.
Mr. Weeder?
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe?
Aye, aye.
Mr. Berenau?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro? Asa?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
All right, Mr. Martin, congratulations to you and your development team and the uh, your partners there. Uh, we'll see you back if you're successful in the fall.
Thank you so much.
All right.
Stay safe. Stay safe.
All right.
Sir, do we want to consider taking our lunch break now before we start another item?
You you know what? I was I was thinking that, but do you think that we can do, um, I think we might be able to get Monica's item in real quick because I I know you got a lead, Daniel. I I want to maximize the time we have.
Yeah, no worries. I think I'll join by phone if everyone's okay with it, but um, I need a a restroom break for a second, please don't.
Have we ever gotten an item done in ten minutes, Kareem?
Yeah.
I was I was going to try. There's always a first time.
Oh, yeah.
We already heard this one.
Oh, we did? Okay.
Yeah, this was the one we heard last meeting, but we just couldn't vote on it. So I was thinking, unless there were new concerns, that this would be something quick. I mean, we can wait till Daniel comes back, but I think we're going to knock it out in fifteen minutes.
All right.
Um, we we should.
Yeah.
Kareem, I think that since they made the full presentation, and Nick, Claire, just correct me if you think I'm wrong. I think that since they made the full presentation, you could waive that and take any public comments. And then you've already provided comments and feedback. I think you could just go ahead and vote. Um, I, the only caution I would have with regard to a presentation is that the other ordinances that are on the agenda that have been prioritized, they've been prioritized for this meeting, and we need to get to them before three o'clock because they are on the uh, commission agenda for July. So if we could get to those, um, that would be great.
What's this item number we're talking about getting done in ten minutes?
Uh, PB twenty-three fifty-six and three seventy-four. This is uh, the RM one district, uh, LDR amendment that we heard last meeting. With Monica.
It's I'm sorry, it's PB twenty-zero three five five and twenty-zero three five six.
Okay, I I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, I circled the wrong one. I apologize. Yep. Item twenty-two and twenty-three.
Tom, are these, remind me, are the, these are both legislative matters, right?
Correct, correct.
So, yeah, so the board, the board could certainly rely on the presentation made last month, and I, if there are any additional public speakers today that you'd like to hear, um, um, you could take their testimony and then and then vote to transmit these to the city commission.
I remember the presentation. It was very, very thorough. I remember it well now that I'm seeing the items. So I'm flexible. Whatever you guys want to do is fine.
Okay, Monica, are you ready? Can you, can you go and and be brief, uh, as possible? Hey there.
Hi there. Um, as we discussed.
Monica, before you start, Michael, could you just introduce the two items just for the record?
Sure, this is planning board file number twenty dash zero three five five, the comprehensive plan amendment, and file number PB twenty dash zero three five six is for the amendment to the land development regulations. This pertains to the um, to Lincoln Lane South, um, properties owned, um, RM one for expanded, um, use to allow hotel use with certain um, restrictions.
Good afternoon, board. Thank you so much for taking this item up. As Michael indicated, this was a mi- a matter that was heard last month by you all. It is uh, specifically to allow hotel uses in the RM one so long as the properties have an abutting uh, use on Lincoln Road. There are a number of restrictions. We have met with all of the players in the Flamingo Park. We have support from the Flamingo Park Neighborhood Association. I believe about last month, you were all very comfortable with the presentation and what the proposal was. I'm happy to address any comments or concerns you have.
Seeing none, uh, let's go to the public. Graham, you have your hand up. Is that for this item?
No, I'm 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 just waiting to defer my other item, so that's why I'm.
Okay. So when you're done. No, no problem. We'll, we'll ask for that. Just give me one minute to to dispose of this item if we can. All right.
Can I, can I, Kareem, Kareem, I'm sorry to interrupt. I I just, why didn't we vote on it last time? I just don't recall right now why we didn't. Was, didn't we not have enough people to to vote?
No.
There was a notice.
That either, so.
It was the notice.
There was a notice issue. It was a no, it was a notice issue. We needed to do a mail notice for the item. And we had not done a mail notice for your last planning board meeting.
Okay, thanks.
So 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 with that, I mean, I, there are no, there are no uh, public comment uh, hand raised at this time. So we'll close public. Opportunity for the public to speak, we'll go directly to the board. Are there any questions from Ms. Anton?
I believe we were, I believe, uh, we, Kareem, that we were, um, oh, I'm on, am I on mute?
No, you, we can hear you, David.
We hear you.
So I I believe we were ready to pass it and that the only thing was, uh, the only issue was mail notice. And so therefore, why don't we just call the question?
You want to go ahead and move it?
I'll move it.
All right, we have a second?
I'll second. And I I, we're going to do both or we do them separately?
We'll do them, we'll do them separately.
We have to do them separately, and I think we have to do them in a a particular order, right?
Yeah, we'll do, um, planning board file number twenty dash zero three five five for the comprehensive plan amendment first.
Okay, so David, is that, is that your motion?
Yes.
Yes.
I'll second it.
Okay, Michael?
For the roll call, oh, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Berenau?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero. And the next item is a recommendation on file number PB twenty dash zero three five six. This is for the amendments to land development regulations.
I'll be happy to move that with a favorable recommendation.
I'll second it.
Okay, the motion was made by um, Mr. Berenau, seconded by Mr. Milan. Um, for the roll call, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes, because I is not comfortable for me.
Mr. We, Mr. Weeder?
Yes.
Mr. Jelpe?
Yes.
Mr. Berenau?
I'm sticking with yes also, yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion passes seven to zero.
David's a little older school, you know, it's a second, you know, traditional kind of thing, you know, we're not, we're not there, you know?
I was listening, it was, it was in effect of listening to the uh, impeachment hearings and all the congressional votes. Everybody said ayes, sounded official.
Thank you all.
Monica, nice job today, Monica.
Very good, Monica.
Mark, my best presentation ever.
I think now, um, Graham Penn wants to request a continuance for the last item on the agenda, which is planning board file twenty dash zero three seven four, the CD two Alton Road outdoor movie theaters with a request to continue this to our June twenty-ninth Zoom meeting. Is that correct, Graham?
Clicking the button, yes, that's correct. Uh, the reality is sunk in firmly that we're never going to be heard, so I'd like to move us. Clicking the button, yes, that's correct. The reality has sunk in firmly that we're never going to be heard, so I'd like to move us to Monday.
I'm I'm okay with that. Do we need to vote on that, or?
Yes, we do need a motion and second for the continuance.
I'll be happy to to make a motion to defer that item to to Monday. Jelpe seconds.
Okay, for the roll for the roll call, Mr. Brantley.
Yes.
Mr. Vatia.
Yes.
Mr. Milan.
Yes.
Mr. Weeder.
Aye.
Mr. Jelpe.
Yes.
Mr. Berenow.
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro.
Yes.
Motion passed, the item is continued till June twenty nine.
Right, see you then. Thank you.
All right, so so let's let's do this. Let's just, I know we said twenty minutes, let's just have recess till twelve thirty. To the June twenty third, twenty twenty Planning Board Meeting. We will resume after recess here now, and we will take up the next item. Staff, do we have anything preventing us from moving to the next item? PB twenty zero three seven three.
Let's see, I think we're actually.
I'm sorry, I missed one. PB twenty dash zero three five eight, correct?
Yes, we're gonna take the items regarding Fortieth Street together. This is PB twenty dash zero three five eight, zero three six six and zero three six five, I'm sorry. Yes, and zero three six five. And Rogelio is gonna give the presentation on those three items.
Good afternoon, everybody. So as Michael said, the three items are companion items. This this item came about as a result of a recommendation from the mayor's forty first street Blue Ribbon Committee. And the committee felt that additional flexibility was needed on the lots on the south side of forty first street so that they can move around FAR. Currently, those lots have split zoning. The northern sections have CD three. The southern sections have CD one. And pursuant to restrictions in the charter, they can't move that FAR around. So the committee recommended that the CD one portions have their zoning changed to CD three. So the first item before you is a is an amendment to the comprehensive plan future land use map. And so that changes the parcels from CD one to CD three. The second item is a is a companion zoning map amendment, which changes the zoning from CD one to CD three. That would increase the FAR on those sites from one point oh or one point two five for mixed use development to two point two five or two point seven five, depending on whether the sites are over or under forty five thousand square feet. And then it affects a total of two point seven six acres. This increase in FAR is subject to approval from the voters due to the city charter. So there is there is that protection, and so the city commission tomorrow will be considering whether or not to place that on the November ballot. Staff did feel, and the land use committee did agree, that in order for that FAR and flexibility to be allowed, that it should be only allowed on unified development sites that have frontage on forty first street. So the third item before you is a text amendment to the land development regulations to ensure that the FAR is only available when there is a unified development site that fronts forty first street. The there is additional protection. Two of the three blocks that would be affected by this have an alley. So in order to create a unified development site, that alley would have to be vacated, or or the city would have to join in. And so that would allow for additional opportunities.
Rogelio, can I can I interrupt? Could you could you speak a little bit more about what you just said, so I don't so you get too far past it about why it has to be connected to forty first street? Why does it need to be a contiguous site?
So this, we didn't want to see just an independent development facing Fortieth Street. We wanted the development to be focused on forty first street. We want this to benefit forty first street, not necessarily to create an active Fortieth Street. We want this to help improve forty first street. And for Fortieth Street to serve as a transition into the residential areas to the south.
Was that was that also the intention of the the forty first street committee who made this recommendation?
That that's that's their focus. Their focus is to improve forty first street, not Fortieth Street. They didn't necessarily consider that recommendation as as part of their their motion. But that is their goal, is to improve forty first street, and and that is staff's goal as well.
Has anybody asked them how they what they think about about this?
I don't believe so. It went to the planning, it went to the land use committee last month, earlier last month, late last month, so I don't think it has had an opportunity to go before the Fortieth Street, the forty first street committee.
Okay. Yeah, Mike, it it did go to the forty first street committee. It was placed on on their agenda after the land use committee recommended that it be transmitted, and they did endorse the proposal.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And and okay, good. Thanks so much for that, and sorry to interrupt you, but when you finish, would you also at least highlight for me what's the what are the primary differences between one and three, CD one and CD three?
Okay, so then I just have two more two more comments to make. So most of the sites have an alley, so so that needs to be vacated for the two site, for two of the blocks to take advantage of this. And then there is additional, there is an additional buffer between this commercial area and the residential area. The lots to the south, even though their zoning is RS four, they are within the Fortieth Street overlay, and that overlay allows for religious institutions. And most of the lots do contain religious institutions, so those kind of provide a buffer between the the commercial area and the residential area. So staff recommends in favor of the three ordinances. It does require three separate votes, and and with the future land use map amendment being considered first. So the in response to the to the question, the 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 idea here is that that forty first street primarily be the focus of this. We want the commercial activity to be focused there. We don't want a standalone project to be to be to just be fronting Fortieth Street. The primary differences between CD one and CD three are is the FAR. CD one and CD three, CD three does allow, I believe, a little bit, a little additional height. So but that, you know, the height can be worked out, the massing can be worked out as part of the designer view process. But so it's primarily.
FAR is the big thing.
How much additional? Sorry to interrupt, but how much additional height are we talking about?
Give me one second.
The the maximum height in CD one is forty feet, and the maximum height in CD three is seventy five feet, so it's an additional thirty five feet of height, but that would be corresponding to the increase in FAR.
Yeah, but Tom, to that point, if we want to push more massing onto forty first street and keep it off of Fortieth Street, then we might have to look at a higher height, because there's no way you're gonna get all that FAR within that height and try to protect Fortieth Street from that massing. I I appreciate the comments about the religious institution, but it's still single family homes bordering forty Fortieth Street, which is likely why they created the CD one buffer to have a transition into the seat, the commercial district on Fortieth Street. I mean, I have a lot of comments on this, so I'm happy to be guided, but obviously we went through this with Town Center, and this is at the heart of it. We've already learned a few things from Town Center, and I know Rogelio that you were pretty instrumental in that underlying the development code, and I don't see any of that effort here. Just going from CD one to CD three is not that easy.
I agree. Surprised.
One one of the things to keep in mind is that when you look at the map, there's essentially, from a practical standpoint, one property that could take advantage of this now, this moves forward. There's a couple of other properties, if there's a sale, that could potentially take advantage of it. And Daniel, to your point, I think you're right. I think that the intention of requiring a connection to the forty first street side was to ensure that there would be enough lot area to move FAR around. And because this has been moving at a very quick pace in order to meet the deadlines for a ballot question, we didn't really have time to analyze what would be a good setback from Fortieth Street in order to ensure that that distribution occurred. I think that perhaps that's something that we could look at. It might be a little bit of a stretch to try to cram that into the ordinance now, but perhaps one of your recommendations could be if this moves forward, that a companion ordinance be referred that would take a look at what the minimum setback should be above a certain height along Fortieth Street and what the depth of that setback should be.
I think that if I, sorry, David.
Excuse me, Daniel, I'm sorry, but what I heard was that there's, and I've been getting a huge number of emails negative from the adjacent communities, and I'm sure everybody else on the board has also, that they are, they fear a three or four hundred foot tower as a result of some of these changes. How does that play out?
Well, you definitely won't get three or four hundred feet. The maximum building height in CD three is seventy five feet. And when you form a connection with a lot on forty first street, I think that even if you didn't have a minimum setback requirement, or even if you didn't raise that height, there would still be the opportunity to distribute that volume within seventy five feet and still through the DRB process, have a good buffer from Fortieth Street. With that said, I think that you're right. There probably should be some better safeguards with regard to minimum setbacks from Fortieth Street so that you don't have a situation where you've got seventy five feet looming over Fortieth Street. That that would be incompatible. Right now, in a CD one, you could do forty feet, which is a little bit taller than what you're allowed to do across the street in the RS. But having some minimum setback for the additional height over forty feet is probably a good idea. But this will in no way, shape, or form result in three or three to four hundred foot towers here.
All right, as Daniel had said, just Daniel brought up a very good point. I want to I want to back him up on that. First of all, I want to say, aside from what Daniel brought up, why do we have to rush this project? This is a project that's gonna last for years and years and years. And why can't we go through the process? That that same process which happened in North Beach? Why why do, why is there such a rush to get this on the ballot by November? I mean, we're talking about an election that's, you know, less than four months or about four months away. And so why do we, why do we have to rush to have a referendum on this issue by November?
The ballot question has to be approved by the commission at their July commission meeting, and so that's why this was fast tracked. There is some potential for some of the, for at least one of the sites on forty first street to do a unified development, and so that's why they requested that this be moved forward expeditiously. Now, with that said, the commission in their July meeting, because they're gonna be considering four different items that involve ballot questions on FAR, you know, they may or may not prioritize this, so. But we didn't want to hold it up at the planning board. I think that if you well, because ultimately, it's a policy decision on the part of the commission as to whether or not they would want the ballot question to move forward, and we need a first reading ordinance before them in order for them to approve a ballot question.
But they're asking us to put our stamp of approval on it, and so.
Well, they're asking you to transmit it with a recommendation. If collectively you feel it's premature and that it should not move forward at this time, you could always transmit it with an unfavorable recommendation. Or you could transmit it with a recommendation to further modify the LDR amendment to include standards for minimum setbacks and perhaps adjustments to the height along forty first street.
So I I don't I don't disagree with the urgency. I certainly do feel that it is our primary goal to ensure what we're transmitting is taken into consideration, all of our knowledge and experience, and I know that planning staff, I know I work with you so closely with Town Center. You were so delicate and intricate in what you developed, and even today, with all the support I've given to that effort in Town Center, we're still highly criticized for what was approved in Town Center. I think we most certainly have a responsibility to ensure that we take all of our knowledge and put it into an ordinance. I certainly do not want an FAR question ever again going to the voters without an ordinance attached to it, a detailed ordinance that tells the community exactly what they're voting on, not just an FAR increase. We're talking about density. We're talking about uses. We're talking about comprehensive plan amendment. There is so much into this, and I know the commission is is extremely knowledgeable and wise about the community, but if we don't do this right, it won't pass. And if it doesn't pass, you don't get that second chance. I certainly believe that what we did in Town Center was right. I still believe that today, and I do believe that forty first street can benefit from that same type of strategic planning, and I think that we as a planning board should help the success of what that forty first street corridor is asking for.
You're here.
Yeah, could I, could I, I mean, yes, has there been any, I mean, you got, has there been any community outreach, Tom? I mean, of any?
There was a thirty day notice, mail notice sent out, and actually, there has been some response, because I've actually talked to some of the policymakers about this, who have talked to their constituents who have received notice of this. So people are aware of it.
Well, it's called, so, okay, well, I that's a tough one if if, you know, you know, if there's a lot of unanswered questions and we're and we're rushed, I'll be anxious to hear. Anybody, who else is making a presentation? Are we gonna hear from anybody on the committee, or?
No, this was something that was a, it was a city commission referral. So there's no project. It's not project specific, so nobody has a development project to show you. This is something that it's a modification that anticipates potential future development.
I don't see, I don't see any development.
Say, who's the sponsor on the commission and how how was the vote on the commission? How did it, how did it go?
The the sponsor is Commissioner Ariola. The land use committee endorsed it, and the commission referred it on a consent agenda without objection. Now, with that said, it still needs to come back to the commission for a first reading and consideration of a ballot question. And at that time, the commission may decide not to move forward with it, or they may decide to send it to the voters, and so clearly, it's your role, as Daniel correctly pointed it out, to provide professional recommendations regarding land use issues, and so if you believe that either it's premature or you believe that the ordinance should be further amended, either right after it's approved by the voters or before, to include more guidelines for height and FAR, you can certainly do that. You could even transmit it with an unfavorable recommendation and indicate that you believe that it's premature to put this on a ballot.
No, I think what we want to do is we want to help to succeed. I I just, for the record, I think this is a great planning issue, but this this buffer between single family and commercial uses, it actually works on forty first street, where in many other areas of our city it doesn't work. So I'd hate to take away from what is so successful on forty first street. And as we know, there's been no development on forty first street. And, you know, what kind of development do we want to see? And again, I have a lot of respect for Rogelio and your planning staff that guided us through the Town Center plan so thoughtfully. And I think it's that type of, you know, commitment and focus that's going to ensure that whatever they're trying to achieve, I think they're relying on us to help them bring the right thing. I think you, planning staff agrees, yes, these two different zonings of CD one and CD three doesn't allow us to distribute FAR appropriately. This is what kept Town Center from moving forward, but now hindsight, we can learn a little bit more about Town Center, that development code, that envelope, and how we want to further define it. I'm also interested in what uses you're looking to achieve by increasing the FAR. So increasing FAR is one thing. What are the additional uses? Do we really want to see commercial uses at ground floor along Fortieth Street? Or are we just trying to make it more viable to actually bring forward some type of development? You've had that empty theater on Forty First Street since I was born, I think. So, you know, I do think there's some realities of what we need to be trying to achieve, and I'm curious what we're trying to achieve, or what does a community there want to achieve by doing this this change other than distributing FAR equally?
Can we, can we even, can we even defer it until Monday, Tom? Is that even possible, or does that not work with the ballot schedule?
I mean, you could defer it to Monday, but I don't know what that would accomplish.
Oh, it would allow us all to research it a little bit and and understand it a little better. We don't have any presenters. We don't have any, we, I mean, I love you guys, and and I think you're you're. I love you guys and, and I think you're, you're sincere and, and smart and, and uh, and everything, but this is, this is a big one. So.
If you, if collectively the board would like to study this a little bit further and, and continue it to next Monday, that would still give us enough time to bring it to the commission on July twenty ninth. So that's certainly something from a timing standpoint that, that you could do. Daniel, just to your question real quick about the uses, um, the Forty First Street Committee has discussed that at length. And the C D three district ironically actually allows for all the types of uses that they're seeking. It allows for residential, it allows for hotel, allows for commercial. And I think what their main goal is to do is to try to form a much better connection between Collins Avenue, Indian Creek and Alton Road via a better mix of uses. And so it's sort of similar to what we were doing in Town Center, but a little bit different um in that it's gonna be a lot more low scale than Town Center was. But that's pretty much their objective is to try to um get more activity on the sidewalk. And I think on Forty Street, certainly our goal is not to um over intensify Forty Street. But at the same time, I think Forty Street, on Forty Street, there is an opportunity to make that a lot more walkable because it's basically parking lots. Other than um the post office entrance, it's basically all parking lots on Forty Street. So how that's activated in terms of the types of uses for that, perhaps that could be part of this conversation in addition to where you would put the massing of the building and the height of the building.
I, I just communicating with Seth Kudinsky, who's chairman of this committee, and he's offered to call in. Uh, can somebody, can somebody tell him how to, I mean, can he call in just on the phone?
Am I unmute? Am I unmute? Can people hear me?
Love to hear from Seth, uh, Chair of this, this committee works so hard. They're really just been hammering it out for two years or a year and a half now. So.
I, I'd like to say something if I could. The, the, I grew up in that area. Forty First Street right now is a mix of synagogue, an empty, the empty Roosevelt Theater, the, and tons of banks and drugstores. That's, that's Forty First Street. And um, I, I just don't see. I'm sorry? And kosher foods. And, and I don't see an advantage of increasing uh business activity on the Forty Street area. It's completely different. It's a completely different situation than uh, uh, North Beach. North Beach was, was destitute and needed some kind of development, which as Daniel had said, was, was well thought out. And this is not well thought out. And I don't think we're gonna be able to find anything by Monday to change my mind. I don't know how the other members of the board feel. I think this is a process that has to go through a, a regular uh time, a regular time and consideration, not, not a, a rush so that we can get it on a, on the commission agenda by the, by the twenty ninth. I think it's really troubling. No, and, and not only that, when you come off the Tuttle Causeway, uh, there's a huge number of, uh, uh, or the Forty First Street Bridge coming from the Fountain Blue is always back bumper to bumper all the way across Forty First Street if you try to go that way. I mean, very often the sixty third street bridge is closed. I have to go down Collins Avenue. When you get to the Forty First Street Bridge, it's jammed. So before we intensi- intensify development and worry about businesses there, I think the city ought to focus on North Beach more than, than, than Forty First Street, because Forty First Street is really residential on both sides. It's not residential on one side, it's residential on both sides. Offices, there's a U P S store, there's a doctor's office there, uh, and some other buildings, a couple of law offices. And I, I don't know why we have to change that, that, that zoning over there. I just, I just don't see it.
David, you mentioned this is like about one project moving forward. Am I not understanding? Is this about some project that's on the boards that I'm not aware of?
Yes, I think.
There, the owner of the property um between Sheridan and Pine Tree Drive, um, they own the whole block, which includes an existing office building and a parking lot. And what they would like to do is they'd like to uh, do a unified site with a, a brand new project. But under the code now, the C D one portion of their site is limited to a one point O F A R. And the um C D three portion is limited to, it's either two point two five or two point seven five, and they don't have the ability to move F A R around. That's the only property owner that I'm aware of that at this point is interested in pursuing a project. Now, with that said, they have not designed anything or submitted anything. It's just something that they've been looking at um over the long term.
Wouldn't that be incumbent on them? Wouldn't that be incumbent on them to come with a project and then ask for a rezoning? Or at least, you know, present a, a plan to the city before they ask that whole area to be re- rezoned? And we get into a nightmare. I just, I just don't, I just don't see it.
Let me ask, uh, I, I, I agree with Mike B. Um, if Seth Kudinsky has put time into this for a few years, I, I would love to hear that now, or maybe we have to continue to Monday to make accommodations for that. But.
Look, let's hear him. Um, is he, is, let me see if he's there, um, they, and Mike. Seth, go ahead. Uh, PJ, can we recognize Seth somehow?
Okay. Hi, Seth Kudinsky, thirty five thirty Pine Tree Drive, Miami Beach, Florida. I don't know what I'm supposed to be doing here, but anyway. So I just joined, so I haven't been part of this conversation, so I really don't know what's going on. But I, I am aware of the zoning uh, that we're looking, that's been proposed. So I'll just speak to that and not comment on what anyone else might have said because I wasn't on the call. So yeah, we, we, uh, for those of you, I don't even know who's on. So those who don't, you know, I, I chaired the mayor's uh blue ribbon panel for Forty First Street. We've been meeting for about a year and a half, maybe a little bit longer at this point. Um, and the idea is to study ways to make Forty First Street better. Um, it's been a fairly up and down process. We've had a lot of staff turnover, but it's very stabilized now. And we're working on a master plan for the Fortyth to Forty Second Street. And uh, should have the results of that pretty soon. Because we don't see it just as a, we don't see it just as Forty First Street. Was anything we do on Forty First Street affects what happened on Forty and Forty Second. So it was decided that we should just make it a master plan. Try to get the city to sign off on it and then implement it. And you know, the common theme is density. Um, you know, the city owns a lot of land on either side. And it's just kinda sitting there. And we really believe that having the ability to add some density, because that's what the master plan is gonna say. So basically the zoning is going to help make the the zoning consistent with what the master plan's gonna say, which is a way to utilize some of the land on, on Forty, Forty Second Street to create a more, a little more density for the community and create some more life. Um, so we've, we, we went through this uh internally and decided we wanted to support the zoning change. Uh, we think it's kind of vital to the future of the street, to be honest with you.
And is it vital simply because of the increased density that it allows?
It, first of all, it, it creates a blueprint, number one. Um, and you know, you, there's such valuable assets. We can envision, of course, the plan is still in process, but we envision, um, you know, on the, on some of the city lot, like one thing I've been working on for a while is um on the lot behind where Roasters and Toasters is, uh, we've had strong support from everybody I've talked to to attract a grocery store there. And uh, Publix is very much interested in coming there. They're actually now waiting on us to complete what we need to do internally to make it viable for them. Um, so that's just one example, something that really can't be done right now without without some governmental assistance. And one thing about that, probably to speak to that, I have never been involved in an initiative which had universal support from business owners, homeowners, government, even Kristen Gonzalez is coming around. Um, so uh, I thought it was a very positive sign. The owner of the Roosevelt Theater wants to do something with his building in the parking lot next door. Right now that can't be done. There's not a blueprint for that. So we see there's a lot going on and a lot of support for this. So I done, did I answer your question? I'm sorry, maybe I was just rambling.
A little bit. Um, no, I think that's helpful. And I'm curious what the others think. But Tom, just to clarify, this would only allow density increases for unified lots that touch both Forty First and Fortyth. Is that correct?
Yeah, basically, it, it applies to a very limited um area. And there, the areas are basically three separate blocks. It's the north side of Forty Street between Chase and Prairie, the north side of Fortyth between Royal Palm and Sheridan, and the north side of Fortyth between Sheridan and Pine Tree Drive. Um, as of right now, there's only one property that wants to take advantage of this. Um, the other ones, um, at, at least for the foreseeable future, one's owned by the phone company, the other is by the post office. We don't see that moving in that direction. Then the ones between Chase and Prairie, part of that, there's an alley, um, that would prevent the the, the joining of those properties. So that would have to be resolved. And then there's a C V S, um, and we don't know whether or not they would be interested in doing that. But um, it would, what it would do is it would increase the allowable intensity. Um, it wouldn't increase the density per se. We, we need to do a further amendment of the comp plan to create the debt, to increase the density. But by going to a C D three, there obviously is an increase in density by, by doing that. So on the C D one sites, but the C D three sites on, on, on Forty First Street, um, you, you would be able to, um, if you would, if you were able to form a unified development site with a corresponding lot on Forty Street, it would significantly enhance your um development potential and give you a lot more latitude.
I'm looking at that map, Tom. What, what Seth is describing, the Publix behind Roasters and Toasters, what, what is the zoning of that? Is that government use currently?
Well, what Seth was referring to, that's actually to the north. It's not part of this. Those are, those are G U lots to the north. Um, this is applicable to the south. Um, I know that the, the owner of the, the lot on Sheridan Street, between Sheridan and Pine Tree, they've talked about bringing a Publix over there, but they've never really been able to make the project work. Um, I know one of the, the shortcomings is that they were not able to move the F A R around on both sites. And so I know that they're a big proponent of this. I don't know if anybody from that building is um on this call to speak to the planning board, but I know that they were a big proponent of this.
Yeah, by the way, I, I, I'm aware that the north side is a part of that. Just trying to give you a flavor for some of the discussions. And Tom, the reason the Publix deal died at that was and it just became too small to fit them on that parking lot. At the end of the day, they just walked away because it was like a nineteen thousand foot store, which was just too small.
So for me, the, the initial shock is, has diminished. I'd like to really talk about planning and how to help this be successful. If this is what the community really wants, I think you have some of the best staff that has already spent a good amount of time understanding how to introduce this. I like hearing what Tom said about managing density versus massing. I wanna make sure the community understands the difference. So we can develop a development code that shifts the massing onto Forty First Street. We can develop a development code that ensures that even though you're increasing from a C D one to a C D three, that you still have density in check. You already have that roadmap. So now it's really a question about everything else associated with it. Traffic, pedestrian, transportation, all those issues associated with it. I don't like the block, the skipping the blocks. If you're gonna do a master plan, let's do a master plan for all the Forty First Street, south and north side, and not just address what we feel is an immediate potential. Um, to create this type of change based on what a developer is looking for is concerning versus creating this comprehensive change to plan the future of a community. I think this is a successful corridor. It's a successful corridor because the community that surrounds it supports those businesses. My biggest concern recently was a hardware closing. But other than that, I don't see a large failure rate of businesses along this corridor. In fact, I see a highly patroned by the local resident. So I certainly wanna hear more about what the residents feel they're missing out on by not providing this. What type of retail activity are they looking for? Because that's what drove North Beach was a failure of ground floor retail and what we would need to develop in order to bring successful ground floor retail activation.
I don't think that that's something we can determine at this time. For example, the Roosevelt Theater has been, has been empty for fifty years. And, and uh, they're certainly not gonna put a movie theater there. There used to be a food fair supermarket on the corner of, on the nor, on the southeast corner, on the southwest corner of Chase Avenue and Forty First Street was a pretty large supermarket. And so I don't know whether displacing, uh, you know, restaurants, I don't think we have, I don't think we have nearly enough to, to advance this uh project with a favorable recommendation at this point. I think we need a lot more information. And also that I don't, I, I, I don't really understand the distinction between density and intensity. I mean, I just, when, when I hear more density on Forty First Street, it's auto- and it's automatically uh, a turn off for me because that is not an underserved neighborhood. There are comfortable homes, there, 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 there are nice uh, houses all along there. There's synagogue, it has a community field, there's an elementary school on Forty First Street. Um, and, and uh, whether we need a, you know, more commercial development there to keep the neighborhood alive is, is, is questionable because a lot of people live there because of the school. And there's a lot of people who live there because of the proximity to the, you know, the synagogues and the, and the, and Saint Patrick's uh, church. And I, I've heard, I've had uh complaining emails from, from uh Saint Patrick's Church about about, you know, this Forty, Forty Street project. So.
But I think that's a different project, David. Um, are you talking about the tower at the end of Forty Street?
Oh, I thought the zoning was.
Oh, this has, this has nothing to do with that, David. I've, I've received more letters about that tower than I have anything in two and a half years on the and they're all negative. So.
Yeah, that's different than this, David.
That has nothing to do with this.
I'm sorry.
Oh, thank God, we figured that out.
Yeah, and let me. The tower was put to be continued to next month.
For me, this isn't about a favorable recommendation or not a favorable recommendation. This is truly what I think the city wants the planning board to help them with. The community has successfully brought this forward to us. I think they're asking us to interact with our amazing planning staff that I know can craft this into something that can be successful. My biggest concern in being on this planning board for the years I've been on is a successful transition from a low density, single family neighborhood into a high intensity commercial district. That buffer is something that only professional planning staff can guide us through. And that's the primary concern for me is not the density nor the massing. It's really about the other factors associated with the success of this, which is that buffer and how do we handle transportation? If we really believe that cars are going to diminish over time and that traffic is gonna be impacted, then what are the other multi modes of transportation that's replacing those cars that are part of the plan of increasing this type of, of commercial usage, which is what was successful in North Beach that many of my planning board members, board members continue to comment that we haven't done yet. We brought the private development, but those other four big ideas sit on the back burner and not being addressed.
So what, what, what is the ultimate objective of this? If, if it could be distilled down, what is the ultimate objective of this rezoning other than to increase density? Even without putting the tower project aside, which is, you know, in the same area. Wha- wha- what is it? Uh, what is it that's?
David, I think the biggest objective of this proposal is probably less about significantly increasing intensity and density because in the short term, there's not a lot of properties that are gonna be able to take advantage of this. But I think the number one goal is to provide the ability to create unified development sites where you can more easily move around your development rights. Because right now, if somebody wants to form a unified development site um on any properties and go from Forty to Forty First Street, they're going to have that lag of part of the site is limited to X, part of it can go. of part of the site is limited to X, part of it can go to Y. And the proposal here is to unify that. And so that's really what the goal is. I think that uh you as planning board members are correctly acknowledging that um how this will impact fortieth street is paramount to this effort and that there probably needs to be some additional regulations as to um how fortieth street will look and how for what the development regulation specific to fortieth street would be because that street is different than forty first street.
Yes, it is. Tom, let me ask you this, what what's you, what's your vision for fortieth street? I mean.
I mean, fortieth street, you walk along fortieth street and um the south side ironically actually has a lot more interest because um there's smaller scale buildings, they're um primarily small religious institutions. But when you walk along the north side of fortieth street, it's basically back of house and parking lots. And so I think that there is an opportunity on fortieth street to better engage those buildings or to better engage that side of the street. Other than the post office, it's really pretty desolate. And so um if there is an opportunity through a combination with a lot on forty first street to have a more positive that a positive effect on fortieth street and not treat it as just back of house and an alley, I think that's what the ultimate goal is.
Could you distinguish between intensity and density, please, Tom?
Intensity is the increase in FAR. That's the amount of square footage that you're allowed to go to. So if if this rezoning went forward, those lots that are CD one, their intensity would increase from the current one point oh to potentially between two point two five and two point seven five. The density is the number of residential units that you could place on that. And obviously, by going from CD one to CD three, you'll be able to put more residential units. But the density in the CD three is capped. And Rogelio, what's the maximum density in CD three?
Uh, CD three is a hundred and fifty units per acre.
Oh, good.
I I would also add to that, Tom, that, yeah, fortieth street is is a really strange street where the residential fabric ends. And then you have the back of house parking lots, but you have traffic lights at those intersections. And it's a very sparsely populated area. I often will kind of try to duck around forty first, even take that. It's actually not much faster. It's 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 a really unique street that I agree could use like some rethinking. Um, but to Daniel's point about the buffer, how do you see the buffer still being accommodated if if we went forward with this?
If if it goes forward as is, I believe that the buffer would be addressed through the design review process because all of the new projects, if they're over fifty thousand square feet, they would have to come to the planning board, but they would absolutely have to go to the design review board. I also think that um a recommendation to the commission that the development regulations pertaining specific to fortieth street uh be further enhanced would be a very good recommendation. And I think that if it's the will of the commission to try to move this to the ballot in November, that we could uh during that intervening time period, come up with some recommendations that could then be part of either this ordinance or could be a separate referral that could be done fairly quickly. And so um it would come right after that. Because we don't have any development projects in the hopper, nobody's got a DRB application that's contingent upon this, I think we do have the time to put that together.
And what about, what about coupling some some form of foresight in terms of transportation that Daniel was mentioning? Like, is there a way to link these two things together?
Yeah, on on fortieth street, on forty first street, that's actually a major transportation corridor. And the state and the county have proposed forty first street to be a bus rapid transit line. Now, I know that the forty first street committee has some concerns about that. It's still a work in progress, but um our transportation department and our planning department, we've been looking at that. Uh, we believe that there is an opportunity for forty first street to become a very significant transit corridor, which in turn could have a major impact on the need for parking storage and 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 traffic congestion. So I think that 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 is moving along in and of itself. And because forty first street is already CD three, um, you don't necessarily need this proposal here to do new development on forty first street. People wanted to redevelop their properties and aggregate land on forty first street. They could certainly already do it now. This would present an opportunity to incentivize um joining the parcels on fortieth street so that the development could, one, be more comprehensive and, two, potentially down the road, address uh fortieth street in a more positive manner.
Uh, I actually, Da- uh, Daniel, if I can just add, I'll say I'm generally in favor of this, but I I find your insights uh quite insightful. So if you could make some suggestion for how to accommodate that as a condition of this would be great.
Yeah, I mean, to to start, absolutely. Why do we need all these surface lots? Look at how successful the city garage was on the north side of Sheridan. I'm sorry that I don't know every street as well on forty first street. But that's actually very, a very successful parking garage with a high utilization rate. I have all of these inefficient surface lots back in fortieth street that makes it kind of a dead street with no continuance. Rogelio is the expert on no s- no street left behind. So let's just apply what you already designed in in North Beach Town Center with making sure that fortieth street isn't designed as a back of the house. Let's spread the massing so we can have a parking garage that's surrounded with active uses because the parking garage on the north side of fortieth forty first street didn't follow Rogelio suggested on the street behind. So then we have this back of the house of a parking garage with no activation on the ground floor. There was a private project that came not too long ago between Chase and Pine Tree that did a very good job activating what would be, I guess, forty second street or forty first terrace or something of that sort. So, you know, I'm thinking that absolutely this is a great idea to unify the sites. I don't agree we should only pick the sites that are viable. I think we should include the ones that have alleys to encourage the continuous walkability of fortieth street from one end to the other. If it takes twenty years to happen, at least we're thinking of a plan that's worth twenty years of our effort and really just worry about the design envelope of pushing the ma- massing off of fortieth street, which all of you guys are experts on. It's like sixty ninth street going into seventy first street in my eyes. So we're stepping up the massing every so many feet. You can go so much higher in height. You're controlling the uses so that you have some control of the amount of residential units that we don't have to amend our comprehensive plan. I think like we have all the knowledge to make this viable. I think it's just what I feel is a gun to our head on a timeline. And I don't think it would take more than staff thirty days to come back with all the knowledge they already have and all the research they already did and put this into an ordinance that the voters will decide after first reading whether or not it deserves a second reading after the ballot.
Daniel, I mean, could anything be accomplished between now and Monday? Because if we go later than Monday, it won't be on the ballot in November, so.
I don't know. It it all depends if Rogelio wants to do anything on the weekend or not.
And and that puts it, that puts it well into next year and and, you know, maybe that's okay. But uh, but but I think that the goal here seems to be to try to try to get some moving forward.
The biggest, the biggest criticism I can tell you is that there wasn't a single person in North Beach on that steering committee that did not agree on the plan for town center. All of us stood one hundred percent behind the need for a town center. And what created some division in my community was the political pressure for the commissioners to decide what that intent was. I hate to create any division in that mid beach community by not assuring them what they're voting on. I I I certainly would like to avoid that pain for any community because this is a community that is successful. Forty first street is successful because every single resident that lives in that community supports forty first street.
Seth, are you still on the line?
Yeah.
Okay, you want, you want, can you respond? I'm sorry to interrupt you, Daniel. Uh, do you want Seth, you want to respond to what Daniel just said? And do you, you want it on the ballot in November? And do you feel like you have community support uh to to get it, get it through?
Yeah, um, the answer is ye- yes and yes. Um, I think, uh, you know, we've had a lot of feedback from the community about forty first street and I appreciate your view that it's successful. But if it was successful to the level you were saying, we wouldn't need this committee. There's a lot of problems on forty first street that are, we were trying to address. This rapid transit is a separate issue altogether. But the reason we went with the master plan is so that we could um um uh, have a blueprint for the street, which it didn't exist. You know, we done this rapid transit, we were going to widen the sidewalks, we were given fifteen million and everyone's happy. And then the bus rapid transit plan came around and now everybody's got conflicting needs. But the overall feeling is that the street needs a shot in the arm. And by creating opportunity for people to create some density around forty 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 first street with the help of the master plan, which will be adopted by the city as well, is a great one-two punch that we really need right now.
And and I hear what you're saying, Seth. But what I think we need to do is, is like you said, you you need that wider sidewalk for that better pedestrian walkability. You need to take that parking lane and you need to remove that parking lane from forty first street and put it into garages so that you can have your mass transit so that when you're trying to get home, it's not impossible to deal with the traffic of of getting into your neighborhood. And I think that inviting new development is for the purpose of setting it back further off of forty first street to give you that wider sidewalk. And I don't know if planning staff agrees with this or not.
I don't agree with any of this. I don't see why we, forty first street is a prosperous area. There's, there is, as I said, there's a school there, it's residential on both sides. I don't, are you trying to, I mean, this sounds like it's trying to turn, and we don't have the transportation there. The that there's going to have to be, you know, a huge amount of time devoted to uh in improving the transportation, the building of garages. I think you're going to run into a huge amount of uh community opposition from the people in those area, in that area. I grew up in that area, I know that area. And I think that, I I just don't see, I just don't see what we're trying to accomplish. More and more development, more buildings, height increases, a unified property on both on both sides. So, you know, and then applications for higher towers there. Where are we going?
David, David, to your point, if I may, just Tom, David, to your point, it's really hard for a private developer to be able to deal with two different zonings when trying to develop. So I'm supporting staff in the unified site so that they, someone can come forward and actually really develop what's best from a planning perspective and not be restricted by the two different codes. Our, the trick to that is to make sure it doesn't backfire in the sense that you get what you don't want on fortieth street.
Folks, um, we probably should bring this home because we've only got about seventy five more minutes and we still have the Wilsonian to do and one other ordinance. And so I think my suggestion would be that if you're favorably disposed based upon the comments and feedback that I've got, is that you transmit to this to the commission. I'll let you guys decide whether or not you think it should be favorable or not. But that you also recommend that a companion ordinance be referred by the commission, a separate companion ordinance be referred by the commission that would address the things that we've discussed here, creating a separate set of development regulations regarding fortieth street so that it's not back of house and has a stronger pedestrian presence, that the um allowable volume and massing is redistributed away from fortieth street, that there be increased setbacks on fortieth street and that uh appropriate uses uh be developed um for fortieth street. This is not something that we can do in um over the matter of a couple of days. This is something where to do it right, we would need some time to do it. And if the commission prefers it, we could actually do this in the coming months and have it ready to go if the commission puts this on the ballot and if it's approved by the voters. So while it might be separate, it would be traveling uh in tandem with this proposal. Or your other option would be to simply say it's premature um and you don't recommend that it move forward to the voters at this point and you you transmit it with an unfavorable recommendation.
And and Tom, just remember, we have the option of just keeping it here and not transmitting it and forcing the city to start looking at this in a more comprehensive way. I'd rather not do that. I'd rather set a discussion item or a workshop. If this is so important to forty first street, then I think the planning board should dedicate some time to help this be successful in hopes that some commissioner picks up and sponsors what we're creating out of our discussional workshop.
Can we do that as part of a companion ordinance, Daniel? Or do you feel we we, I I kind of like Tom's suggestion?
Yeah, the idea.
I like that as well, favorable with with a lot of, a lot of these recommendations attached to it, yeah, and the companion.
Yeah, the co- the commission referred this so that they could make a decision on whether or not to put this item on the ballot. And so I wouldn't hold it up to prevent that. Um, I would definitely send it to the commission because that's what they asked for. But you can always include a very strong recommendation that the uh legislation be further developed, um, either in the form of a companion ordinance as a new referral or as part of this. And that's something that we can um certainly do.
I I would support, I would support it if my planning board members agree to a workshop or a discussion item on forty first street. I'm not going to be responsible in supporting this and pushing this forward if my fellow board members are not willing to dedicate the time. I know we have a heavy agenda, but we can create another meeting date specific to this discussion where we discuss nothing else, just this, invite people from forty first street in that committee, invite other city departments. I think this is exactly what it is, at least that I find passionate about being on the planning board and not just uh looking at the ordinance that was sent to me, but taking it a step further and contributing what we can. I just really believe in our planning staff and I know that if we give them the support, they can just create something that's amazing and will increase the success at the ballot.
Perfect. Let's let's do this. Let let me just interrupt.
Find success.
Go ahead.
Let me interrupt. We have, Jose Al has has his hand raised. Let's let, let's hear from him really quickly and let's manage the time we have left because I do want to get through the items. So PJ, can you let him speak, please? And then we'll wrap this up.
Can we table this? Can, I want to, I want to make.
One second.
One second. Can we table this?
Okay, I'm I'm not going to accept your motion yet. Let me just hear.
I don't know if you guys can hear me. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Uh, I just, just echoing what what Tom was saying, um, as far as what you guys were talking about, um, transportation impacts. Uh, that's something that, you know, once this is referred to commission, we would have to take a look at that and have to take a look at the anticipated trips, have to uh play out different scenarios on what the trip generation, if if the, if the FAR in the quarter was to, was to, or the FAR in the area was to, you know, be be higher, how that would impact in terms of traffic and also how that would impact the residential areas to the north and the south uh in terms of uh cut through traffic and things like that. Um, so that's, that's an item that in all honesty, I'm not ready to respond to right now. But I think in the, in the coming months, the same, the same way that, you know, the planning department has to do their analysis, we would have to do an analysis on that, too.
Perfect, thank you. Go ahead, David.
I think we should, I would, I think we should put uh forward this to the commission with the recommendation that it's premature and that we we need to consider a lot more and discuss it a lot more, including the workshops that Daniel uh suggests. I just don't think we have enough to to favorably recommend this at this point.
I mean, just to take this board back a little bit, I remember when Sunset Harbor was an industrial neighborhood and this planning board was pivotal at having workshops and bringing all the city departments together to to create what's there today. And I think, again, this board can really pay a big role through workshops with the community to bring that together. I'm not saying if that's been done, I don't know. I haven't been at these meetings uh that the forty first street Blue Ribbon Panel has done. It, but if all that was done, and I think a lot of that would be presented today, but just hearing from Jose Al, it's clear that there's still a lot of work done and I'd like this planning board to help achieve that.
Yeah, I have another suggestion. I have another suggestion. Why do, why can't we, the city, send out a a email to the residents in the area and presenting to them the alternatives or what's what's proposed and the consequences of what would uh occur in the event that um these these combinat- these lot combinations go forward? Uh, especially the people who live along Pine Tree Drive in not inexpensive homes and also the people who live in, you know, the the other homes on Royal Palm and on Chase and all that area along fortieth street. I I think, I think we should, I think this, that we should get some early feedback on what uh what the people in the area think about. I I think I think we should, I think this that we should get some early feedback on what uh what the people in the area think about.
Well, David, a workshop would be publicly noticed and and the entire neighborhood could attend that, which would be great, right?
Right.
I'm up for a workshop. I'm up for whatever the board uh recommends. I I I would like to to balance what Daniel just said. I I do have some firsthand experience with the work of this committee. I've attended some of their meetings. And uh this untold number of hours that have been invested uh in in with a real passion around trying to uh trying to do something special for forty first street. So so I, you know, that's why I I was hoping Seth was available to to speak.
Yeah, can I can I just say something? We um we um we're gonna have, we've had a, we haven't had, I wouldn't call them workshops, but. We've had a lot of, we, you know, with the Gale, the Gale Studios came up with a master plan for forty first year, we adopted. And then this rapid transit plan reared its ugly head, which threw everything sideways for a while. Which is how we then led to the hiring of ACOM to do the master plan for fortieth to forty second street. That that is going to be ready, I'm told, sometime in July. And I really think that that should be the blueprint from which we start, you you have the workshops and some that that's gonna be our working plan for for that whole area. Um, I know that ACOMs met with transportation, they met with staff, they met with all the stakeholders to craft something that may answer everybody's needs. We haven't seen the first draft of that yet, so I don't really know how they're gonna accomplish all that. But we, I don't think they need to hold workshops and seminars. We're in the process of basically doing that already.
Got it. So 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 with that, Tom, let me just get an understanding. The last, when is the last date that this has to be sent favorably? Or the commission can take this up to put it on the November ballot?
Miss, should you have the last mission meeting at which the at which ballot questions can be approved is is its meeting on uh July twenty nine?
Okay. So so we, and when is our next meeting?
Next Monday, June twenty nine.
I'm sorry, our July meeting.
July twenty seven.
So both meetings are headed to the uh commission deadline.
Yeah, now, I can tell you that if we come back to you either next Monday or July twenty seventh. The issues are gonna be the same because I can tell you, we're just not gonna have the time to put together a comprehensive ordinance for this. Uh, that's something that's going to take a lot more study. And so I think you recommend that. And if the commission decides to even move forward with this, then we could commence that study. But at this point, we're not even sure that the commission is going to prioritize this proposed upzoning and ballot question. And if they don't, then yeah, I mean, we're basically back to the drawing board and and we can look at this certainly more holistically. Because any future ballot question would be way down the road. But in this particular instance, they have requested that the item be transmitted to it so that they could consider this um ballot question for the November ballot.
Daniel, do you wanna, do you wanna suggest something, Daniel?
I wanna say, I would just wanna ask Tom, would you be willing to entertain us with working on an ordinance? Even if we didn't have a commission sponsor on it? And I don't, I know, I don't wanna formalize it that much. I just want you, planning staff, to understand that we're about to allow something to move forward. Knowing that we don't have everything necessary to ensure that it doesn't negatively impact unintentionally. If we can just get a dedication that this board has an opportunity to draft an ordinance. Or some type of document or recommendation for the commission to understand. How it is that this should be drafted as a companion ordinance? I just, I know we're all on the same page. It's just very shocking because, you know, it took me two years to get town center to be where it is. Because we wanted to do it right. So I am, my voice is a product of what you guys told me I needed to do in town center. So how this sounds to me like the blue ribbon panels is is more advanced than I know. ACOM has been hired to do a master plan. There is a transportation study. It sounds like everything is being done, but it wasn't presented to us today like that. So I would like the opportunity to have a commitment from staff that whether it's directed by commission for you to do so or not. We as a planning board have the right to have a discussion item and dedicate some of your staff time to what we feel is gonna be important. Should the commission push this forward onto the ballot?
Daniel, what you're saying is is we don't, we should just uh push this forward and recommend to the commission. That we do not at this time uh have the maturity of the issues uh defined. And therefore we should uh s- uh make an unfavorable recommendation saying that it's uh premature.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying it came to me in a rush. It sounds like a lot of work has been done. We don't have the time to present that all to us today. The commission wants the opportunity to put this on the ballot, further discuss it. I don't think our commissioners are irresponsible. I think they're thinking about everything we just thought about today. But I also think that there's a reason, there's a layer of coming to the planning board to help them draft and craft that. And I think we have amazing planning staff that, as you can see from our agenda, is pretty busy.
Do we have any sense about whether ACOM is gonna come back with this particular zoning change as part of their master plan? Is is that, Tom? Is that uh?
That I don't know. I haven't had any discussions with uh with ACOM about that.
Well, okay, well, I mean, once again, we're going around and around, but but it seems like why would we be doing this before the master plan uh?
We keep going in a circle here. I mean, let's let's just say we're not ready and.
Well, if if you wanna say you're not ready, um, I mean, I I think Tom's opt. We we need to transmit it. We can transmit it without a favorable recommendation or with a favorable recommendation.
And and you could also include a recommendation um that um that staff be directed to develop. A companion ordinance that we would then, that would be referred to the planning board. So um if the commission elects to move forward with this and place a ballot question on the November ballot. We could also recommend that they refer a separate companion ordinance to the planning board that we could then work with you on in the coming months. That would be ready to go if the voters approve it in November. So I I think we can accomplish what you're looking for. It's just that it would have to travel under a separate track. That's all.
Tom, you're saying that if this upzoning occurs, the maximum height anywhere along the fortieth street corridor will will be seventy five feet?
Is that what you said? That that's what the existing height is.
Okay, so on a combined lock, could somebody come and say, well, we need more height?
They would need a code change for that.
I I know we're kind of sensitive. Can can we, can we, we do what Tom said or vote on that?
So so let's do this. Let's he, let's hear a some kind of motion from the floor to incorporate uh what Daniel said. If if Daniel wants to make the motion and that it also in include what Tom said. But but it be inclusive of us, uh, our recommendation would include us, Tom, having a uh uh workshop. Um, for the planning board ahead of any recommendations back to the uh commission. I'm I'm in favor of that, if that, you you can, you can wordsmith it, but I'm in favor of that if we wanna move it forward.
I would like to see one of my fellow board members take a stab at a motion. I certainly agree with Tom that.
Me. I have, so I would take a stab. I would say.
I'm not doing it.
I would say we move it forward uh with the favorable recommendation and contingent that there's a companion ordinance. Um, drafted with staff and the planning board through a workshop process, something like that.
I I'm, I would move that we, I I would move that we uh move it forward with an unfavorable recommendations. Saying that the ordinance is not, is not sufficient.
Nick, Nick's got a motion on the floor.
We have a motion on the floor, yeah. Is there a second to Nick's motion?
I'll second, but with discussion, please.
Discussion.
Mark, you're as knowledgeable as I am on this planning board, and I would really like to hear what you have to say.
I, the thing is, I, what's, I'm kinda with David to a certain extent, but on the other hand. You know, Seth and and the group worked on this for a while, and I often defer to the folks who spent a lot of time and effort. And who have, who are stakeholders here, right, who have put the effort in and have put something out there that they think is important as community members. You know, the I I know Seth and and Seth loves the city and he's gonna look out to do something that's gonna be terrific for the city. So while I'm leaving leaning to David, I certainly could be swayed to push it forward at least. Cause it seems like there's a timing issue. I don't like the way this happened, to be frank with you. I feel like we've been hotboxed a little bit. I don't like that at all. Yeah, and and so that is, you know, really a bad uh feeling for us and a bad look to to be put in this situation. Because, you know, we're now trying to get this so it gets on a ballot, which is not, really not appropriate for us, but.
We're really, really, we shouldn't be subject to political influence.
Yeah, I I I agree, I agree, except this was still created by the community, you know, which is very impactful to you. Just like, you know, when I was involved in the North Beach, you know, it was really a community uh document, you know, and and there was so much community input. And and I sensed that there was quite a bit of community input put into this one too, and people who care. And so, you know, to to push this along, perhaps, uh, you know, with Nick's uh Nick's motion, I could probably be okay with that. But I'm not gonna make the second though.
So to that point, Mark, that's why I wanna make the commitment from this board that if we move this forward, regardless of commission action. We're gonna take it upon ourselves to further study this and provide additional recommendations. If it's not through the commission sending ordinance back to us, it's through us having a workshop where we're continuing this discussion. And at least pushing forward a resolution from this board for the commission to digest as they consider putting this on the ballot.
So let me just add to Mark's comments, if that's okay, uh, real quick. Um, uh, I I don't like the position we're in at all, if it, you know, and I can see David's, uh, I can see David's point very well. But I but I do, I'm familiar with the work of Seth in this in this committee and and I do uh respect. And and Seth is at, I asked him directly and he is asking, he would like to see it on the on the ballot. So uh, you know, maybe we, I feel like I will be comfortable to defer to that, so.
All right, so let's, let's call the question and then if it if it fails, we got David, David has a motion to come behind it, re- uh recommending unfavorably. So let's go ahead and Michael.
So let's start with the first item, which would be planning board file number twenty dash zero three six six. This is for the fortieth street future land use.
Let let let's do it differently. We have a motion on the floor that has nothing to do with the amendments. It was a planning board motion. Let's just get that.
Okay.
Approved yes or no, it shows who's supporting and not, and then we'll go into the three items.
So this is the motion made by Nick Jelby for the favorable recommendation contingent upon uh the statements that he made. Do we have a second to that motion?
We already had a second. Daniel seconded.
Okay, Daniel made the second, okay?
Yes.
Um, for the for the roll call, um, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes, but can you please clarify exactly that motion on the second part? You know, we're favorably, I got that, but the other one with.
Let me do that. The the motion is is a Nick, correct, Nick Gelpi, correct, anything I misstate. It's transmit the um the proposal, and this would be a separate vote for all three. But it's basically to transmit it with a favorable recommendation. Number two, that the commission refer a companion ordinance in accordance with the following four criteria. Uh, to reclassify forty as streets so that it is not a back of house street and has a stronger pedestrian presence. To redistribute, number two, redistribute allowable volume and massing away from forty street. Number three, to study and potentially increase the setbacks on fortieth street. And number four, to study it appropriate uses for the street. This would be a separate ordinance that would be referred to the planning board as part of a workshop. And then if it's referred, it would uh travel under a separate track, but then would be able to come back to the commission. In November and December to potentially be adopted at the same time as the C D one to C D three rezoning.
That's it, Tom. Thank you so much.
All right, go ahead, Michael.
Okay, to continue on, uh, Mr. Milan.
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
Nay, and it sounds like a rude girl Goldberg arrangement, so I think, no, definitely nay.
Mr. Jelby?
Yes.
Mr. Berno?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
So the motion passes six to one.
All right, so we'll we'll go with that and and I'm sure the commission will hear uh the passion. Um, that was spoken about uh this ordinance today. And hopefully we can uh get something in front of the voters in November that really um is able to be trans- translated easily. For someone who has not been a part of this experience thus far, we're asking them to vote on this.
And Nick, Nick Calergis, could we apply this vote to all three of the um items regarding the fortieth street rezoning?
Yeah, that's how I understood it.
Okay, so it applies to all three, okay?
That's how I understood it.
So let's, let's, let's take them up in that order. Let's go to planning board, uh, planning board item twenty dash zero three six six, fortieth street. This is the uh, the land use, uh, the flume amendment. Do we have a a motion on it?
I'll move it.
So do we have a second?
So unless anybody objects, we're gonna apply the same vote as previously.
Yeah, we don't, we don't need to vote.
Well, we need to go through the motion, so that's fine. Anybody objecting to their prior vote? Okay, moving that, so that'll be the same, Michael. And then uh planning board.
No, we need a, we need a second and a vote.
Oh, second.
Okay, Nick, so Nick is seconded?
Yes.
Uh, Michael, can you call the roll?
I thought Nick made the motion. I thought Nick made the motion.
Probably voted on all the uh, all the items.
Just keep my motion and Daniel's second and then most anyone wants to.
That's cleaner, yeah.
That's motion, yeah, that motion was approved, six to one, and now you're voting on the individual amendments. That that was a separate motion, um, transmitting your recommendations that a separate, that a separate ordinance process moved forward. So now you, now you need to vote on the on the three items before you. So we have a motion.
Nick, Nick, can I carry the same recommendation which each of these? I don't wanna create bureaucracy. I don't want one to be lost without the other, so I'm happy to vote on all individually, but the same exact thing that Tom said is carrying with each of these.
That's fine.
No, no, the 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 first motion applied to all three. That's how it's been, that's how it's been recorded. So now you're, now you're voting on the actual items.
Okay, so the first item then is P B twenty dash zero three six six. This is for the future land use amendment. Um, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
No.
Mr. Jelby?
Yes.
Mr. Berno?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, we're gonna take up planning board item twenty dash zero three five eight, fortieth street rezoning from C D one to C D three.
Moving it.
Nick, you gonna go, go again?
Yes, I'll move it again.
Daniel, you wanna keep it?
Second.
Let's go.
Okay, Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
No.
Mr. Jelby?
Yes.
Mr. Berno?
Yes.
Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
All right, now we're gonna take up the final one, planning board item twenty dash zero three six five, fortieth street, um, F A R modification.
Tom moves.
Second.
Michael.
Mr. Br- Mr. Brantley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weeder?
No.
Mr. Jelby?
Yes.
Mr. Berno?
Yes.
Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries six to one.
Okay, now we're gonna move on to a- any other comments or we can move on?
Well, Kareem, quickly, can we just um try to set a tentative date for this workshop so we don't, you know, lose steam on that?
Um, I think we only have a little bit of time. You wanna do it like?
Yeah, we're, we're probably looking at August, and why don't you let us send out um a separate poll? Cause we've gotta find a Zoom address uh and a and a and Zoom availability for that meeting in August. So let us um, let us do that uh independently.
Okay, that's fair. So we'll, we'll just say, but it will be within two months roughly.
Yeah, we're thinking August, latest September.
Okay, all right. Is that fair, Nick?
Sounds good.
Okay, so now we'll move. Okay, so now we'll move to our next item, uh, which would be PB twenty dash zero three seven three, Washington Avenue Complan and uh uh amendment. Is that correct order?
That's correct, companion items.
And then we have PB twenty dash zero three seven two, uh, which is companion to that, which is the FAR uh modifications and step that.
Correct. Um, okay, so I can, I can go ahead and present. So so PB twenty three seven, zero three seven three and PB twenty uh dash zero three seven two, their companion items is stated. Um, the first ordinance is a comprehensive plan amendment which establishes the Wolfsonian Art District within the CD two future land use category. And that district essentially allows for an FAR of three point five. Um, the second ordinance establishes the Wolfsonian Art District within the CD two category of the zone of the zoning ordinance. Um, and that also increases the FAR to three point five, and that is subject to voter approval pursuant to the city charter. Um, that ordinance also changes the height limit from fifty five feet to seventy five feet and slightly modifies the setbacks. Um, that seventy five foot height is consistent with what the CD two district allows on Washington Avenue um for lots that are wider than a hundred feet. Um, and that was approved uh back in twenty fourteen, twenty fifteen as part of changes for the Washington Avenue for zoning incentives. Um, the um, this um expansion, anything done on the Wolfsonian site would be subject to approval from the Historic Preservation Board. Um, and this came about as a result of a bond that was approved countywide in two thousand and four, the Building Better Communities Bond. Um, and that approved ten million dollars for the Wolfsonian uh to expand their facilities by twenty five thousand square feet. Um, currently, the Wolfsonian is a nonconforming building. Um, it exceeds the FAR and height limits allowed pursuant to today's code, and so that addition that was approved countywide by the voters um essentially cannot be built. Um, they could, because they are, they are maxed out. Um, so staff recommends in favor of these two ordinances. Um, and it needs two, two separate votes um with the future land use map amendment occurring first. Um, so with that. Mr. Chair, real quick, I just need to make one slight correction because um, the maximum that they are being proposed is actually three point two five. And so the land use, um, the the land use map amendment um is correct. The ordinance on the comprehensive plan, that ordinance shows three point two five. However, the LDR ordinance is, was not adjusted correctly. That shows three point oh, but it is three point two five. The Wolfsonian has requested three point two five, and so that's what, that's the increase that's before you.
I just have a quick question if I may, Staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, how is this not spot zoning?
Um, it includes multiple parcels. Um, it includes um uh, the Wolfsonian building itself plus the the um so, I think two parcels to the north of the Wolfsonian. I think they are um working on acquiring them if they have not already. Um, so because it's it's a few parcels, it would not be considered spot zoning. It's not just a single lot.
And a great thing to consider. Thank you for that clarification. It's just strange because we're we're increasing, we're considering increasing FAR leases being presented to me because of the use.
And also, and also for institutional uses, um, there is special consideration given to institutional uses. Such as GU zoning is typically on a single um, a single spot. Um, so so it's institutional nature also, also uh um affects that.
Thank you.
As as I understand, there are going to be uh uh alterations to the facade of the building um that are not in context with historical uh uh frontage?
Yes, actually, I think that there's somebody on the line. Casey Stedman is on the line who wanted to make a brief presentation to the planning board, but they are proposing a a very comprehensive uh renovation to the north side and an expansion on the north side. And this would require Historic Preservation Board approval, um, assuming that the voters approve this. And I see Casey's here, and so if you let Casey take you through a brief presentation, he'll be able to uh fully inform you on that.
Thank you, um, Tom, and thank you, Chairman and members of the planning board. Um, the materials were provided in your uh previewing materials ahead of time, but I would like to walk you through our uh request for your favorable recommendation for an increase in FAR for the Wolfsonian uh properties located on Washington Avenue, and as Tom mentioned, this is from one point five to three point two five. Um, my name's Casey Stedman. I am currently the acting director for the Wolfsonian located at one thousand one Washington Avenue. Uh, and I'm a seven year Miami Beach resident. Uh, as noted earlier, we are the beneficiary of up to ten million dollars in bond funds from the Building Better Community Bonds uh that were approved by the county voters in two thousand and four. We, sorry, we by the county in December of this past year, asking that we bring forward a plan uh for the realization of this twenty five thousand square feet of new publicly accessible space for their consideration by the end of this calendar year. And has been noted by staff, our current properties, uh, the five land lots that we're talking about do not have sufficient FAR to allow for the existing museum building and the necessary expansion to realize this twenty five thousand square feet. Hence our request for the increase in FAR for the properties. Um, in developing our master plan, we really looked at three or four major goals. Uh, one is tripling the size of our programmatic spaces to over fifty thousand square feet, which of course means substantially more of our collection will be on view at any given time for the community and our visitors. The idea of developing a new street and lobby presence that better integrates the museum into the neighborhood. Um, also creating state of the art instructional spaces, studio environments, galleries, and interactive digital labs. And then, of course, to sort of anchor our vital role as part of the Wolfsonian Public Humanities Lab. This is an FIU Emerging Preeminent uh interdisciplinary program for the humanities. It's about engaging the faculty, the students, lifelong learners, the various academic programs in the humanities and the community in discussions about civic and cultural lives as it relates to the humanities, museums, arts, uh, all the different human areas of the humanities. Um, in our efforts to develop these plans, we did consider uh a number of guidelines or uh items that we thought were important. One is to be modest in scale and dimension, dimension, and being respectful of our location uh on Washington Avenue. Uh, also to be very mindful of historic preservation and resiliency. That's very important, of course, to this community and of course to the university. Um, and then we needed to make sure that the project was financially sustainable, both in terms of the capital cost and in its ongoing operation. So of course, that was was a limiting factor in making sure that we could afford this uh to build it and we could afford to run it once we have built it. In terms of location, the information, these properties are the current Wolfsonian historic building and the design store located adjacent to it, and then two lots to the north. Those are currently a gallery, a bakery, and a restaurant uh in those spaces. Um, the spaces are in the CD two zoning district. And also our efforts are consistent with the work that was done by the Washington Avenue Blue Ribbon Panel. Um, there are some developments already underway along Washington Avenue as a result of this Blue Ribbon Panel's recommendation, and we think that our opportunity to expand the Wolfsonian only builds upon um what will be their successes in trying to encourage and make the Washington Avenue once again uh a vital resource and a place where the community wants to visit and our tourists want to visit. We have a few historical images. This is in the nineteen forties. Uh, of course, the Washington Storage Company is the future home of the Wolfsonian. Uh, of note, uh, in this historic image is this open space to the north of the Washington Storage Company. You'll see that recur in a moment in our our conceptual plans. Um, here, the image of the construction in the mid nineteen twenties. The original building, when completed, was only three stories uh in height. What is of interest in this historic image for us is these window bays along the Tenth Street facade. We would like to see those returned as part of our project. We think it'd be very important to opening up and creating some vibrancy um and what is now our auditorium, but most likely will become a common lobby area uh as we think about the future. Other than that, those window bays returning, we have no intention of disrupting the historic fabric of the Washington Storage Company uh building and actually very minimal changes on the interior of the building. Uh, we think Mark Hampton, Billy Kearns, and Mickey Wilson did a very good job uh in the renovations of that building. In terms of our conceptual plans, we worked with Ziskovich Architects to develop these plans. Uh, they had also done the work with the city on the Blue Ribbon Panel. Um, and they helped us work through understanding the dimensionality and the scale of a of a structure that would fit our needs, realize the twenty five thousand square feet, and also um fall within those design guidance guidelines. As I previously noted in that historic image from the forties, we want to return the open space. This would be currently where there is uh existing stores currently. This was the restaurant, the bakery and the gallery. Um, this open space will allow the opportunity for the public to sort of step off the Washington Avenue corridor into an area that's a little, hopefully a little more quiet and a little more uh peaceful. Um, it also allows us to create a way to identify ourselves uh along Washington Avenue as the Wolfsonian and create a new and inviting entrance, because this would become our new uh main entry for the museum. We also would like to introduce carefully curated retail experiences in this area. Uh, we certainly feel that there's a need for others to help us bring vibrancy uh to the avenue, and we think finding the right complementary retail or restaurant operators uh certainly will help to ensure that there's an activities going on in this space, on, not only when the museum is open, but in during those times when we are closed. Um, the other advantage that we have here is we're retaining the historic facades of the storefronts that are there presently. Uh, we will be opening those up. I realize this rendering may represent those as glass, but those would be open air. The idea is that provides a boundary between the avenue, the sidewalk, and the courtyard, and also allows us to control access for any period of time when perhaps the retailers or and or the museum may not be open. As we step back, we can take a broader view. You can see that they were preserving and sort of let allowing the historic Washington Storage Company to stand alone. Uh, rather nondescript connection, uh, and then moving into what would be new development in terms of uh a new structure that has its own sort of identity, uh, separate from the historic building or the connector. Behind that glass curtain wall featured on the second level is a two-story Great Hall Gallery. This space would allow us to display some rather monumental collection items. Uh, currently, we cannot display those items uh in our galleries due to their physical size and limitations of our gallery sizes.
Excuse me, may I, may I interrupt you for a second? I just wanted, I just wanted to ask you, the the histor- the present configuration of the facade of the of the Wolfsonian, uh, when was that uh constructed? Was that constructed originally as the Washington Storage Company?
The first three levels were, they were completed in the night, at nineteen twenty seven. The fourth and fifth floor were added in the nineteen thirties. And then Mickey Wilson added the sixth and seventh floor uh with Mark Hampton in the nineteen nineties, just.
So those little, those little prison type windows uh are original, uh, uh, that's original, that's not going to be, that's not going to be uh disturbed?
No, as you can see on this, um, sorry. Need to allow this. As you can see here, those windows are there, uh, they're on the front of the building.
Well, um, yeah, the 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 ones, the the photograph on the right is the way it looks now, correct?
The photograph on the right is from nineteen twenty seven. This is how it looked in nineteen twenty seven.
Okay.
The fourth and fifth floor are not present, and those windows with the um, for lack of a better word, the the ironwork, the medieval ironwork is present in nineteen twenty seven.
Is that remaining?
Yes, we have no intentions other than the Tenth Street facade to make any changes to the historic building.
Okay, so this other building on the left is the, is, 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 where is that?
That was the building under construction. They're one in the same. The building, this is the 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 where the Washington Storage Company before it was completed. Uh, it was under construction during the period of time when the Miami hurricane um hit Miami Beach, and as a result, it actually was probably over engineered because they had the opportunity to increase uh the reinforcing steel and the concrete in the building at that.
Which hurricane was that?
The Miami Hurricane of nineteen twenty, I'm going to get the wrong year, about nineteen twenty seven.
Nineteen twenty seven, okay, okay. So this building that's under construction will be adjacent on the north to the to the existing building?
Correct, so we'll move back to the.
I understand now, okay. And this open area, you say this, that looks like glass, but is that an open area?
Yeah, it's just, correct, it is open.
That will not, that there won't be any air conditioning, is that what you're saying?
Correct, that that's envisioned as an open courtyard, and it allows us to push the mass of the building. I believe our setback before we start to rise to the second level is almost thirty five feet from the property line. So it allows the mass of the addition and the expansion to be pushed to the back of the lot so that we can retain that pedestrian feel of Washington Avenue.
I get, I get. And is there parking? Is there going to be parking?
There will be some added parking at the rear of the building uh for for business, uh, for basic purposes. There is not a parking developed as part of this project, as this conceptual plan um at this time.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Um, as you can see from this image, you can begin to get an idea of how we might be able to use the expansive roof areas uh and and efforts for resiliency, whether they be green roofs or other opportunities. We also feature a third floor terrace, another programmatic area that looks out over the uh courtyard um and Washington Avenue. And then there is a large volume on the third level. At least in the initial phase, we will not be programming or developing that space. This is a concern for budget so that we can accomplish the project, but it certainly allows us to sort of future-proof the project that we will have this opportunity to expand as we identify new programmings uh and the funding to go forward. Also featured on this level is a new roof mechanical area. This is substantially larger than the space that we would need for the expansion. This again is something that we're provisioning for the future of the historic building, which does not, which no longer has space for mechanical systems, so this sort of allows us, if we need to make any changes in the future for the historic building. Uh, so it's, it's a bit of a future-proofing exercise. As we move through the floor plans, as you, as I noted, everything on the right is the historic building uh as, other than the introduction of the windows and maybe some changes in this ground floor auditorium. There is no plans to make any changes within the historic building other than the few penetrations that are necessary between the new addition into the space. We have a new lobby, which is our new, would be our new entrance. We have a new vertical core. Um, if any of you've visited us, you know that it is sometimes challenging to move up through our building with our elevator, uh, our single el- passenger elevator. This gives us a secondary elevator. And then, as I mentioned, the cur- these retail spaces configured as three here, but certainly can be configured in various ways uh to allow for us to curate um uh retail experiences that are, that are complementary to the museum and to the community. This Great Hall Gallery, we're very excited about this space. Uh, it's almost ten thousand square feet. Uh, we have already identified a number of collection items that we think would work well in this space. And in its most common form, it will be an exhibition gallery. However, this will also be the area where we host our programa- our programs and events. Um, we envision it as being a flexible area that we can clear the main central area of the, of the gallery and set this up for programming. We also have a couple structured classroom spaces available. As I mentioned, on the third level, we have an open air terrace, and then we have almost nine thousand, almost ten thousand square feet of programmatic spaces that would be available for future expansion. It should be noted, the fourth floor of our existing building is currently a private floor. This will become part of our plu- public experience as part of this project. Uh, and I'll share with you some images of ideas of uses for that space.
You mean there are people who live up there?
I'm sorry?
Are there people, private floor, there are people who live up there on top?
Uh, actually, no, it's our collection storage. We have almost two hundred thousand objects in our collection, so we have collection storage throughout our main building as well as a secondary storage facility.
I see.
Again, I mentioned the roof area. Um, an idea of what some of these large collection objects might be. Um, this piece um was deinstalled from a Chase Manhattan branch on Twenty Third Street and that uh many years ago, it is still in its crate. Uh, we see this as potentially being a large anchor piece in the Great Hall, much like the Norris Theater facade. Um, is an anchor piece in the current lobby behind the fountain. Um, is an anchor piece in the current lobby behind the fountain. Um, many of these items have never even been reassembled. Um, the porcelain heater here is probably about twelve feet tall. Um, once it was deinstalled, it has not been reassembled. Uh, Archangel Michael, this is exactly how our founder Mickey Wilson found it. I I actually think it was a little more overgrown when he found it. In someone's backyard. Um, but this gives us an opportunity to really bring out some of these really large pieces. And incorporate them into the spaces. These renderings give you an idea of what we envision for these interior spaces. Um, this would be the Great Hall Gallery, uh sort of that front anteroom area. All the items that are featured here are actually modeled from items in our collection, so we do have these items, uh. And they they could be the possible items that are included here. Certainly, the chandeliers. Are something we're very interested in using and the redevelopment. Now we're looking into the the secondary space of the Great Hall. You can see this large mural is an anchor piece. The Dutch chandeliers, um, some of the larger items floating on islands. And the idea would be that when we shifted into programmatic mode, those floating islands of collection items would move to the side. You open up the central area for programmatic uses, so you have this really exciting program space where you're surrounded. By the museum collections um during your, during your programs and presentations. The other areas, this could be an idea for the fourth floor or existing museum spaces. This is a digital lab concept. Um, we have been very fortunate. Uh, in working with the Knight Foundation over many years and developing our digital assets of our collection so we can expand its reach. The idea here is that we create some of a flexible instructional workspace and sort of start to centralize some of those activities. So this is one idea of pulling that together. This ties into the Public Humanities um program that we're working with with the university. And sort of the evolving pedagogies of higher education, which are more tend toward more flexible. Um, less structured uh learning environments and learning experiences. Um, the space here, this is sort of drilling in, creating a dedicated production space for digital content. Um, currently, we we sort of shoehorn this in where we can in the building. It'd be nice to have a really clean divided to the uh digital studio. And then finally, as I mentioned, our collections over two hundred thousand objects uh between our library and the museum collections. And it's very hard to give a sense of that when we create our curated uh exhibitions. So many museums have taken the stance of open storage. It increases the accessibility and the visibility of the collection. As you can see here, you can create informal areas where you can introduce other instruction or programmatic content. Um, so we see that again, this opportunity exists throughout the building. How we will allocate spaces in terms of each use, that's certainly still part of a larger programming process. What we're, again, we're trying to do here was represent what was the potential and what was some of the uses that we might introduce into the building. Um, the remainder of the presentation is available for you guys. We can look at it. It's the how we calculated the floor area. Uh, working with the the planning department and with uh Ziskovich. Um, I certainly can go through that, but I thought in the interest of time that I would sort of end my presentation at this point. Um, again, once again, ask for your favorable recommendation for our request for the increase and then, of course, open it up for any questions or comments.
Go ahead, and do we have any questions uh for Mrs. Stedman?
No, but I commented, this is a splendid uh use uh renovation and. I'm always in favor of the expansion of of museums. I've been to the Wilsonian uh many times. And one of the uh things that troubled me was a confined feeling when you, when you enter through that. That small door. This is a terrific uh addition to Washington Avenue and of course. I think musician, uh museums deserve a special consideration in terms of FAR, so I'd be having favorable. In favor of it.
And.
Yeah, David, I I mean, I echo your sentiments. This is a no-brainer. It's such an amazing place and to make it more amazing. Um, these are the type of projects we should encourage.
Yeah, uh, I would just uh comment, uh, I don't know who else is gonna speak, but I I I spent quite a bit of time with uh. Mr. Stedman's uh letter. I don't, I'm sure you all received and he was very thorough and careful with the with the letter and. I I can't, I can't. I think it's a wonderful addition to Washington. Have a wonderful uh historic preservation uh. Example, so I'm 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 comfortable and enthusiastic about it.
I move it. If the chair will entertain it, I'll move it. Right, yeah.
So you, you wanna, which one you wanna go first for you guys?
The comprehensive plan amendment, so that would be.
I think we need to take on public comment first.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
I apologize, I I. We all there. Um, I think Ronald Martinez is uh awaiting to speak on the item. Mr. Martinez?
I think he's on mute. Can you unmute yourself, Mr. Martinez?
Okay, let's 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 move along. If he can, if he comes back, PJ, just let us know and we'll we'll allow him to up. There he is. Well, went away. Okay, we're gonna um move along. He's uh uh lowered his hand there. So do we have any other uh planning board members wishing to speak? There's nobody waiting in queue um to speak on the item. All right, David, you got your motion.
I move that we uh recommended favorably.
For the cop, for the first item, right?
First, yes.
Alright, so that's gonna be the cop plan amendment, PB item twenty dash zero three seven three.
I'll second it.
Michael.
So the motion was made by Mr. Weider, seconded by Mr. Barinell, correct?
Correct.
And for the roll call, this is for a favorable recommendation. Um, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weider? Mr. Jelpi?
Yes.
Mr. Barinell?
Yes.
And Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
All right, now we'll take up the second item, the companion item PB twenty dash zero three seven two, which is the height setback and floor area ratio modifications. For the Wilsonian. We have a um uh movement on it.
I'll be here, yeah, go ahead. I'll I'll second it unless somebody else wants to.
We have it uh properly moved and seconded, Michael.
Sorry, who made the motion on that?
I think we have more. I think it was David and then Mike again.
Okay, David made the motion and Mr. Barinell was the second?
Yes.
This is for a favorable recommendation. Uh, Mr. Bradley?
Yes.
Mr. Batia?
Yes.
Mr. Milan?
Yes.
Mr. Weider? Mr. Jelpi?
Yes.
Mr. Barinell?
Yes.
Mr. Pietro?
Yes.
Motion carries seven to zero.
Congratulations, Mrs. Stedman.
Thank you, everyone.
All right, so now we're moving on quickly to planning board item twenty dash zero three seven five modifications of AR exceptions.
Um, okay. Yes, and and this is the last ordinance on the agenda for today's meeting. Um, this is PB twenty dash zero three seventy five modifications to FAR exemptions. As proposed, this ordinance would be a focused amendment to the list of excluded items from the definition of floor area. In order to address the evolving life city code, I'm sorry, evolving city code, Florida building code and life safety code requirements. New explosion, new exclusions from the calculation of floor area include four items. The first is secured bicycle parking. Currently required automotive parking is exempt from inclusion as floor area. And up to two vehicular parking spaces may be provided per apartment unit without counting as floor area. Typical parking space, including half of the abundant drive aisle occupies an area of approximately two hundred and fifty square feet. Whereas the same area could easily accommodate more than ten bicycles. The second exclusion is for stairwells and elevators located above the main roof deck. This, the area of two typical stairwells and an elevator at one level is approximately five hundred square feet. While such area is minimal, its exception from inclusion is floor area would be especially beneficial to existing buildings. That are currently over their maximum FAR. While many older buildings may have once stared to the roof, in order to add a rooftop deck or pool. Um, building code and life safety code requirements must be satisfied, which usually requires two stairs as well as an accessible means. A vertical access or elevator. Such an exception would allow these not performing buildings to to add desirable rooftop amenities. The third is for FPL transformer vaults. These vault rooms, when required, have become increasingly larger and often include additional infrastructure. Required by FPL to also help serve neighboring properties. Their location within an enclosed building is preferable to any exterior pad mounted option. The typical area occupied by such use is generally around three hundred to five hundred square feet, depending on the size of the project. Such exemption again would be especially helpful for existing buildings undergoing renovations. Which may need to otherwise remove a hotel room or other space to accommodate the required area for an FPL vault. And the last exemption is for fire control rooms, related pub- public safety spaces not accessible to the general public. Such control rooms are important life safety requirements for larger projects and were not standard requirements decades ago. The typical area area occupied by these rooms is three hundred to five hundred square feet. The Land Use and Sustainability Committee last discussed this proposal on May sixth of this year and recommended the following. The first was that the city commission refer this subject ordinance to the planning board. And the second was that the city commission discuss a more comprehensive strategy for FA um increases citywide. Um, staff anticipates bringing this discussion to the planning board at either our July or August meeting, depending on the length of the agenda. I'd also like to note that in accordance with the city charter, approval of the city's voters will be required. Lastly, this is a um, uh, just to summarize, this is a focus amendment for building code and life safety issues. So we'd like the board to focus on these narrow issues and the larger discussion for um other exclusions or increases. Strategic increases citywide due to other resiliency measures will be discussed at a future date. We are recommending that the planning board transmit this to the city commission with a favorable recommendation.
So I I have a question um before we start. So on those four items, there's also on page three of uh. I don't know where I am, but but there's a a statement that says volumetric buildings used for storage. Where there are no interior floors, the floor area shall be calculated as if there was a floor for every eight feet of height. So my my general question is, if you have a transformer room as it, as you gave an example. If it's a two-story volume, the whole thing is is discounted, correct? I just wanna make sure that. That's what we're saying.
Well, yes, but it's two-story volume, there's, we're not gonna count, we're not gonna, that that's really for a storage building. Where you say have an interior space that's forty feet tall, a storage building in the I one district. Then you account this this quarter footage based upon as if there were a floor every eight feet. This really wouldn't apply to um. These types of transformer vault rooms, which are not considered as storage.
And that's existing language on the volumetric buildings, right?
Right, but but in an existing building, if FPL requires because of ceiling height or something. An opening in a a two-story volume, then this would give them the credit to exclude all of that area.
We don't count, we don't count that now because we don't consider that storage area, so it doesn't change, it doesn't count.
Perfect. Any other questions? Um, I I I I will go back to the first part under the history. Can you talk a little bit about? It was included in here about the uh resiliency bonuses, workforce and FAR bonus pool. I know that wasn't a part of this ex- exactly, but there's some discussion there if you could just touch on.
Yeah, the 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 discussion was that these are um very large issues that need a lot more work. And that it was not gonna be time to have them fully developed um to place on the ballot for for review by the voters in November. So rather than um try to throw everything at the voters, the idea was that we would have a more comprehensive um review and analysis. Of the other FAR modifications in the future date and focus on what are the easiest um. Um, amendments that could be made currently, which would address um, you know, life safety code issues. Really more um functional requirements versus, you know, weighing these larger issues in terms of workforce, portable housing. And strategic increases, you know, citywide. So the idea is that that will be discussed over the next year. And possibly have a ballot initiative or ballot question or questions on the ballot for for next year.
Thank you. Any, any other uh, any other questions? Let me see if we have any um public comment on it. Uh, we do, uh, PJ, Jerry Levin? Mr. Levin?
Yes, can you hear me?
Good afternoon.
Thank you. Um, I wanted to refer back to the uh opening comments that were made when you were introducing the item that it. Uh, is taking into account the evolving life safety issues. Uh, and one of the particular amendments, and I commend the staff for uh looking at how to address. Uh, the rooftop additions. I think that that was a step in the right direction and uh not counting the. Uh, stairwell and the elevator, but I don't think it goes far enough. Uh, because when you. Have a rooftop addition and you're gonna be requiring the new wider stairwells. Uh, and a larger capacity elevator for the addition, consider the life safety. Issue of people on the rooftop e- extension now having to suddenly uh. Go down stairwells into narrower uh staircases and. I don't think that that makes sense. It it does become a life safety issue. And I I would think that a responsible developer would end up reconstructing all of the stairwells and elevators. If they were gonna be doing a major addition. So I would like you to consider uh. Tweaking this so that all of the stairwells and uh elevator shafts are excluded when a rooftop addition. Uh, is put in, uh, I think that makes more sense. Uh, the second thing is, and I'm not sure if this fits in with your conversation today, but. In uh buildings where there is required parking in a garage, um. The gar- the parking spaces are already exempt from FAR calculation. But all the uh elevator and stairwells that service the parking garage are not exempt. And that doesn't seem to make sense because. The convenience of the people to get in and out of that parking garage. So I'd like you to consider also uh tweaking it and. Requiring that the uh elevators and stairwells in a garage structure with required parking.
Two minutes up.
Uh, I'll finish right there, that that those stairwells and elevator are also excluded.
If I can just comment on the on the garage issue. So currently for us, for a main used parking garage, FAR does not apply. Um, we don't count those areas. It's all a matter of um, um complying with the the setbacks, the height regulations. But and the percentage of um uh parking spaces and requirements to the to the uses on the site. So for a man use parking garage. FAR does not, does not apply. Now, for the renovation of the existing building, if somebody had to expand the stairs, this happens all the time. Somebody can can um expand their stair within the existing envelope of a building. It's not gonna create an increase in FAR because there's just converting area that was say part of a nearby hotel room or adjacent hotel room. And it's not any increase. So that's what we focused on additions. This would be, you know, above, above the main roof line. It doesn't apply to. You know, changes really, you know, for a for a stairwell. We tried to focus on issues that um would not really be um. Um, a wholesale substantive change to 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 every building.
Thank you. Okay, uh, Matisse Cohen?
Okay, am I unmuted?
There you go. Good afternoon, sir.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair and members of the board. Um, if I can indulge you, I would, I do, I would probably need more than two minutes. If I can ask uh of that.
Well, let's let's go with two and let's let's see where you are.
Now, I first want to uh um remind everybody that the mayor promised a robust. Uh, discussion and now on how to improve and um resolve. The serious FAR questions that we have. On how to improve and um, resolve the serious F A R questions that we have plaguing our cities. And uh, as Mister Belush mentioned that you didn't want to throw um, uh, too many issues at the voters. Uh, these are crucial issues. And I'll start with the most important one that Mister Blue just mentioned, which is the F A R in parking garages. So I have a project and we'll talk about practical things. I have a project in which I have a garage that is um, uh, behind my building. And is not considered a main use garage. And because it's not a main use garage, um, the fire and safety. Requires me to have four separate staircases and two elevators in that garage. For a total of almost eight thousand square feet that I lost in F A R, very valuable F A R for no reason. And if you count, if you continue to count these, then all new projects will suffer. Now referring to the rushing the voters, well, we're talking about an F A R for spot zoning for the Wolfsonian. We're talking about F A R for the Marina. We're talking about F A R for Forty First Street. But yet we have to solve the core competence of how our F A R is looked at. And we can't look at. Um, these issues, especially when it's a garage. The entranceway and the driveway to a garage is not included. It doesn't specifically exclude it, but it's not included. The next issue regarding smaller buildings. Um, much of the um, nineteen fifty's buildings in North Beach has two staircases. They're not the uh, nineteen twenties buildings and forties buildings like we have in South Beach, which have a center core um, 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 entrance way. Now, all of those staircases will have to be um, changed.
Two minutes are up.
May I ask for another minute? Mister Chair, so if in fact, so I'll see, so I don't take too much of your time. I'd like you to refer back to. Uh, Mister Sanders shares email that I thought identified three areas where you can um, amend this ordinance. And pass to commission uh, to go to the referendum so that we can correct ills that have been um, already created. Through the down zoning and through uh, the our inability to evolve our code with life and safety. Um, over the years. Thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, I think we have one more uh, person wanting to speak and that would be uh, Sandosha.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we are. Good afternoon.
Hey, good afternoon. Um, I I uh, you know, I applaud the city for uh, wanting to do something here and um, and so. I think the message really is let's try and make the effort of what you're doing actually worth it. And the feedback in a robust discussion means that there's, you know, parties, different parties that are involved and people get to weigh in and talk about what they think. You know, works and shouldn't work. And and I think, you know, to point, um, you know. I'm trying to share my experience in doing enough work on Miami Beach. Uh, and with historic buildings and 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 how F A R is counted to say. What is being proposed practically isn't actually going to get us anywhere. It's it's a, it's like a. It it's it's not a complete solution. And if you read, uh, I hope that everybody on the 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 board had a chance to read my email. I tried to send it to you in advance. So you would have the benefit of my statements and I wouldn't have to belabor that during this meeting, but basically. In a historic building, the uh, the stairwells and elevators, uh, I'm 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 asking that all of them should not be. Uh, counted. And that's because while Mister Belush correctly pointed out that they grow on the inside of the building. What he didn't mention was that if you had an eighty room hotel, uh, uh, take the Broadmore, for example, a ninety three room hotel. By the time you're done updating it with today's life safety and stairwells that have grown and elevators have grown, you now have a fifty five room hotel. The economics are much different for a fifty five room hotel than they are for a ninety three room hotel. So so I think that I'm I'm what I'm trying to implore to the planning board and to the planning staff is that there's a practical application. Of life safety impacts and we should actually address all of them holistically. And for those reasons, uh, I just don't think that this ordinance goes far enough. And I would ask you to all, you know, agree that. These compromises don't change the outside of the buildings, but certainly make a difference uh, on the inside. Uh, because now you've you've unshackled those areas.
Two minutes are up.
If I could just ask for another minute, I would appreciate.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Thank you. So now you've unshackled, you've unhinged these. These uh, these elements from the F A R count and you can do other things that actually add value. So you don't lose net sellable area. When you look at a hotel and when you analyze uh, a project, you look at that sellable area. The same thing goes for the catwalks that were mentioned in my email. Uh, and the same thing goes for uh, these uh, the 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 elevators and stairwells and the parking garages as as spoken by Montes. So clearly we can see based on the fact that there isn't a line out the door of people that are saying this is a bad idea. That the actual concerned and affected parties are here at the table and wanting to work constructively with planning staff. And with the city uh, and with the planning board to try and improve this ordinance to something that would be meaningful. And would actually achieve the goals that have been stated in the staff report. Uh, to create a predictable method of plan review and a thoughtful planning analysis to, you know, help. Uh, spur uh, good development in our city. So thank you and and I hope that we can continue this conversation and and. And include these changes to the ordinance.
Perfect. Thank you, Sando, for your comments.
Of course, you won't.
Mister Chair, uh, could I could I respond to that and get the conversation started?
Absolutely.
So you know, I don't know if anyone uh, noticed, but I I I had uh, expressed an interest in Mister Shear's uh, uh. You know, suggestions earlier, spoke with Tom. Um, Tom, would you, would you please uh, address. Uh, Mister Shear's three items and 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 share your your opinion, your staff opinion. Uh, regarding the the three uh, items that uh, that he is suggesting.
Sure. I'll be brief because I know that uh, Nick needs a few minutes before we conclude the meeting by three uh, to go over a few things before adjournment, but. Basically, I think what Sandra was proposing and it's similar to what he had proposed to you um, earlier this year. When the cleanup F A R ordinance was before you. Um, it does result or would result in a much more significant and substantial across the board F A R increase. And so therefore. This proposal that's before you that's been referred for transmittal doesn't contemplate an F A R increase of that substance. Um, I think that some of the things that he's talked about are much better suited. For the more general discussion that will be coming before you, uh, if not July and August. Um, in general, staff does believe that there is a better way to um, allow for an increase in F A R. Than um, removing those areas that he's talked about from calculation because those areas do add to the bulk and mass of the building. And from an administration standpoint, it would be exceedingly difficult um, to remove those areas. Um, if the desire is to strategically allow for an F A R increase. Um, then we believe that there is a better way to do it and we've outlined a lot of different ways that that we believe that that can be done. That is a much broader question. The commission wasn't ready to put that on the ballot this year. But they would like to get the the planning board's comprehensive feedback so that we could potentially look at something like that in twenty twenty one or twenty twenty two. Um, with regard to the ordinance before you, I think Michael Belush did a really good job of explaining it. Um, this, these changes will benefit very significantly. Existing buildings that are legal nonconforming in terms of F A R and will help bring the code up to date with regard to. Emerging um, building code changes with regard to fire control rooms, F P N L vaults. As well as city code changes regarding um, dedicated bicycle parking.
So Tom. Okay, I mean, I I if I don't know what the rest of board feels, but 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 to take Mister, I think Mister Shear uh, offered three uh. Three specific points and I would I would like to hear planning staff's opinion uh, on those three specific points.
Well, on the um, on the stairwells, I mean stairwells do add to the bulk and mass of the building. Um, in our experience, people have been able to renovate buildings. Um, they've been doing it for the last thirty years. While still retaining existing stairwells. Um, stairwells have always counted in F A R. And from an administration standpoint, it's very difficult to begin to remove those in a wholesale fashion. Um, with regard to catwalks, again, catwalks also add to the bulk and mass of the building. And it becomes hard to distinguish those areas that contribute to that. Um, from areas that don't. And so therefore, we believe that it would be more prudent to leave those um, within the F A R calculations. As it pertains to stairwells and parking garages, oftentimes parking structures. Um, that are not main use garages also function, those stairwells and elevators often function to provide access to. Liner retail units, liner residential units, uh, and other types of liner units. Um, not very often now are we seeing. New accessory parking structures that are solely just parking. Um, so they they do have a dual role uh, in that regard.
Um, I read it. It seemed in Sandra's email. I'm not sure I have this correctly, but it seemed that uh. We're talking about legally nonconforming buildings, so built, you know, with different F A R requirements. Um, if they're nonconforming anyway. Um, it seems his argument is that the existing circulation system is kind of grandfathered in. Could you foresee some?
Yeah, in buildings that are legal nonconforming in terms of F A R. Um, they could be legal nonconforming in terms of F A R for a number of reasons. They may have been built. Uh, years ago and then there was a down zoning. Um, they have they may have been built. In the nineteen nineties, in the late eighties, early nineties, and then the city was down zoned in the late nineties. Um. So buildings have become have become legal nonconforming in terms of F A R, but the area that is counted in F A R has remained consistent.
Right, because it it seems to me he's arguing that um. Historic circulation systems, you know, are half of what the current requirements are for egress and life safety. Um, I mean, have you ever contemplated for a legal nonconforming building allowing, like if he were to replace. What's there? It not only gets larger in size. Um.
In our experience.
Adds F A R, yeah.
In our experience, when when like historic hotels are renovated. Fire department can usually work with a property owner in terms of retaining existing stairwells. If a stairwell is so nonconforming that it needs to be expanded, the expansion may go into existing units slightly. Um, but we've never seen it to the point where it results results in a drastic reduction of units. Um, but be that as it may, um, regardless of whether your new construction from the ground up or you're within an existing building. You're going to count internal stairwells in the F A R. So um, it's going to count either way.
But so so Tom, help me understand a little. The the one that's the most compelling of the three uh, is the the idea of of a parking garage that doesn't count. Uh, but the stairwells within that structure do count. Uh, and in in this ordinance is kind of a cleanup ordinance, as I see it. It's incentivizing bicycle parking, but the item, other items are kind of, you know, cleanup issues and wouldn't this be uh, wouldn't this be? Uh, 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 another kind of cleanup. But how how do you see it that it, you know, that's different? It it. It just seems very.
What's different about it?
Simple to me, you know, so.
Is that um, if you have a parking structure that is accessory to a building, um, and it's providing required parking. What the code allows for is for the parking spaces to be uh, exempt from F A R. Um, and that was done years ago because uh, there was a shortage of 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 off street parking in the city. Now stairwells and elevators that access that, um, they do add to the bulk and mass of the building and because oftentimes. Those stairways and elevators don't provide just access to the parking levels. They provide access to the entire building. Now what we're seeing is that they actually provide access not just to the building, but they also provide access to liner units. That are part and parcel of the parking structure. And so. It starts to become nearly impossible to distinguish what portions, which stairwells, which elevator cores only access parking spaces. And which only access residential, commercial, office, any type of liner accessory unit. So from an administration standpoint, we certainly would wouldn't recommend that change.
You you don't see it as clear cut as uh, as I described it because, you know, on its face, it just sounds like. It's just kind of a disconnect.
No, I think that when you look at what our proposal was to um, exclude stairwells and elevators above the roof line. That has a very tangible benefit on buildings that are legal nonconforming, that want to. Either access a roof deck or provide residence and amenity at the roof deck. And under the current code, they can't do it because they have no physical way because they're legal nonconforming of that in F A R. Of providing, you know, a second means of egress and an elevator access. And we've seen buildings in the past go through hoops. Um, for instance, I was explaining to you, Michael, when we talked about the Leslie on Ocean Drive. They're legal nonconforming in terms of F A R and they wanted to reintroduce historic solarium. And so. They had to, because they only had one stairwell going up to the roof. They had to actually cut out a portion of their roof to have an open light well to allow for a second stairwell to go up. And then an open chair lift uh, for accessibility. And that clearly is not the most ideal way to accommodate that. Um, if this exemption had been in place, they more easily could have provided. Um, accessibility in the form of an elevator bulkhead and a second means of of egress uh, to that roof. So this this. Will have, we believe, very tangible benefits um, uh, for buildings that are legal nonconforming in terms of F A R in terms of being able to. Provide their residents with access to a roof deck.
Yeah, well, I'm I'm just to be clear, I'm supportive of the items that you've proposed. You explained them very well to me. I understand that. I just. I just wanted to, you know, make sure we fully explore uh, Mister Shear's uh, suggestions, which which seem, you know. Were equally worthy, so.
And for reference, Tom, our F A R code comparatively to other cities and municipalities, it's not unique, is it?
No, um, when you look at the F A R regulations of different cities, they really vary. Uh, some cities will count areas in F A R that we don't count. Other cities will exempt areas that uh, we don't exempt. Um, floor area by its definition is universal, but what cities choose to exclude and not exclude is not universal. Um, each city has its own unique set of characteristics and circumstances. And that's what informs um, what each city wants to include within their F A R and what they want to um, provide as an exception.
And excuse me, guys. I know that we're getting to the three o'clock hour, so I think if we can. A lot of this discussion is is good, but I think we can include it for our 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 larger discussion on F A R. And I'm wondering if we have a motion at this time to um, recommend in favor of this or some other motion so we can move along.
A move that we uh.
I like.
Go ahead, David.
No, so I mean, I I I understand the need to end the meeting at three. This is an important item. This was, you know, we were told we were going to be able to have a a further, more elaborate discussion. I thought that was this. Now we're being told maybe in August or September or maybe in twenty twenty one, we can have this discussion. From my perspective, you know, I I think that we have a design envelope. It's setbacks, heights. View corridors that help us control the massing of the building. I'm sure F A R has a a a role in that, but it shouldn't be the driving force. We have other mechanisms to drive the massing of a building. I think to Sanders' point, where we're looking at historic structures, they were already built. It can't be redesigned where you put a stairwell. Over the years, we've seen increases in life safety requirements, much like your trash room now has to be A C'd where before it wasn't. That counts through F A R. And I agree that we want to protect the architectural fabric of an existing neighborhood and now allow this. Massing to come forward, but in my particular case in North Beach, we created a conservation district that really details out. You know, the massing of a building and how we want that building form to be like a form based code. So, you know, I'm completely supportive of catwalks, not counting towards F A R to encourage. Catwalk buildings versus double loaded corridors that improve view corridors. Um, I certainly understand uh, adding a rooftop addition and not triggering a certain fire code. So, you know, I I agree. I don't want to open it up across the board citywide for all this massive F A R increase, but. From my perspective, there's some real good valid points uh, that's been recapped in Sanders' email and it's funny enough because I reached those same conclusions on my own, just working. On existing historic buildings. Um, so I think there's a lot of validity to it and something that we should consider in transmitting this ordinance to the commission. Thank you.
Well, let me let me just ask, if if we transmit favorably, and I and I, you know, I think that Sanders uh. Uh, suggestions are are pretty interesting and pretty good. uh, suggestions are are pretty interesting and pretty good. Are we prohibited from adding that at some point later on? I mean, you know, the question is, do we move this forward, delay it right now to to get it in there or or perhaps we do, or theoretically, we can add those require, those uh, provisions into the uh, document as suggested, but um, you know, we're gonna have to move it along. But, you know, we could kick this can in the road, but I don't want to delay this too long either for for, you know, if this is material for other folks and their projects.
Isn't this, isn't this a balance between, there's an economic factor here as well, I think. Uh, the the more F A R that the builder gets or the developer gets, uh, the better it is for him financially. But wouldn't it be better to consider an increase in F A R on each individual, on an individual basis when the, when the, when the uh, and perhaps, you know, grant variances where it's needed for public safety?
Well, changes from, from F A R are not permitted um, are not permitted by the code and obviously we couldn't do site-specific F A R um, determinations without careful analysis. But I think all the points that the board's raising and that have come up um, in in some of the comments by, from the public um, are important. I would just remind the board that the commission has identified these particular items as a priority that they that they would like to move forward. Now that does not preclude the board from continuing to discuss other ways to uh, to either amend the definition of F A R or provide additional F A R incentives for for specific things. But but, you know, any of those considerations should be taken up as a, as a separate matter, as as a, as as they would exceed the scope of of what was referred to you for consideration.
Well, this is a blank.
Yeah, I think that, just picking up on that.
The F A R, this is a blanket discussion of F A R throughout the entire city.
Well, now, David, that that discussion's going to occur either in July or August. That was a separate referral from the commission. The commission asked that the planning board discuss that as a a separate referral. What's what's before you now is just a a much more narrow piece of legislation that the commission said that it would be willing to consider placing on the November ballot because it was much more limited and they felt that it was a narrow enough issue that it could potentially get voter support. I think the broader issues that the board members have been talking about and that the public has mentioned, those are much better suited as part of a more comprehensive F A R discussion that has been referred to you.
But then this is limited to elevator shafts and stairwells.
Only above the roof line. Just above the roof.
Can I, can I, Nick, uh, that what you just said and and of course I have the same sense from 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 Tom, although I'm not sure you said it, but uh, is that a, is that a specific directive? Uh, or is that your sense about what the commission's trying to do? In other words, are we precluded from uh, i- are we being asked to to consider this specific and nothing else or or or?
Well, basically, what's before you.
What are we being asked to do, I guess, is my question.
You're, you're being asked to transmit this narrow set of F A R exceptions. Um, it's four additional F A R exceptions. You're being asked by the commission to transmit this to them with a recommendation. You can certainly make whatever additional recommendation you want. But as I've said, I I believe that um, a broader discussion that you're going to have is going to be much better suited to consider other types of exceptions that have been put forward today by members of the public and have been discussed by board members today. Um, I don't think it would be appropriate to add those to this particular piece of legislation because this legislation is much more narrow. The scope is much more narrow.
Like, like for, for example.
Sorry, sorry, Mister Chairman, just to interrupt, I gotta leave the meeting now. I do apologize, but you have my support on this item. Thank you.
Well, wait, then, oh.
Oh, go ahead. I'm still here. I'm sorry, I'm still here.
I I'd like to move the the item. I I think that um, you know, Mister Cohen made a good point, but that's something that we wouldn't be able to take up. And it's too expansive relative to what we're being asked to do. This doesn't preclude us from giving further recommendations. We can take those recommendations up. I'm very much a proponent for things that can enhance affordable housing. It's not addressed here. We'll take up that discussion in August. We'll see what we can recommend. So I think at this time, you know, unless unless there's significant deviation from, you know, you know, the item that's before us, um, let's, you know, uh, move move something forward and let's let's bring this to a close.
I'm I'm happy to move it.
Do we have a second?
Jelby? Second?
Okay, the motion was to pass this with a favorable recommendation by Mister Barano, seconded by Mister Jelby for the roll call, Mister Brantley.
Yes.
Mister Vitia, if you're still on the line?
Yes, I'm still online and I vote in favor. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Daniel.
Yeah, I would go yes, but again, I would suggest that we uh, request that they consider some of the uh, issues that are brought up in Mister uh, Share's uh, email.
Mister Weeder?
This is just a specific ordinance for a nonconforming building above the roof line, uh,
No, no, this, this ordinance.
On a motion to to transmit the ordinance in the agenda to the city commission with a favorable recommendation. If there are any other comments, I'd ask you any board members bring those up after because right now we're in the middle of a roll call.
Okay, yes.
So Mister Weeder's a yes. Mister Jelby?
Yes.
Mister Barano?
Yes.
And Mister Pietro?
Yes.
The motion passes seven to zero.
And Michael, just just take twenty seconds, just clarify David's point, because I think he he understands it, but just clarify for him really quick.
Yeah, so this, this um, ordinance modifies the exceptions to only include, to include the additional following exceptions. Stairwells and elevators located above the main roof deck, transformer vault rooms, fire control rooms and related command centers for life safety purposes and secured bicycle parking. Those are the additional exclusions that are part of this ordinance.
Only on existing buildings.
No, this applies to, this applies to new construction, existing construction. It applies to.
Well, I'm sorry, it it's going to benefit existing buildings. Because the new construction you're going to, you're gonna just have it designed from scratch.
For the stairwells and elevators above the roof deck is going to be a big benefit for those. Like Tom mentioned, we had the Leslie Hotel on Ocean Drive. They had to do an atrium with a lift. They could not access the roof deck um, with an elevator because they were over F A R.
I get it. I get it. All right. Yep, Nick, Nick, what you got for us?
No, no, just the last thing is since that we've scheduled a a second June meeting that's in addition to um, our regular, our regularly scheduled board meetings, um, I think we should by motion continue any of the uh, any of the items that remain pending to be heard to the, to a date certain of of June twenty ninth. So there's no doubt as to what date they're being continued to. And Michael, maybe Michael can assist with identifying.
Will be, is that when we'll be taking up the tower issue on forty first?
No, no, that the tower issue is continued till um, July twenty seventh. It'll be July twenty seventh.
These are just until Monday, right? Yep.
Right, so I can list the additional. I'm sorry, we had, we had um, some ordinances continued this morning to the meeting on um, Monday, June twenty ninth. And if you'd like, I can read through the remaining items on the agenda that the board can make a motion to continue these items to the June twenty ninth meeting, which will start at nine A M. This is planning board file number nineteen dash zero three three four for fourteen seventy sixteen street. P B twenty dash zero three four three for one, two, three, four, Washington Avenue. P B twenty dash zero three four six for ten Star Island Drive. P B twenty dash zero three four five for twelve hundred Ocean Drive. P B twenty dash zero three five one for seven thirty seventy first street. P B twenty dash zero three four seven for forty three sixty to forty three seventy Collins Avenue. And P B twenty dash zero three three nine um, for five fifty Washington Avenue. These will be continued to the June twenty ninth meeting.
Do I have a motion to continue?
Yeah, I'll move to continue those uh, matters to the twenty ninth.
So we have a motion by Mark and a second by David. Go ahead, Michael.
Okay, Mister Brantley?
Yes.
Mister Vitia, I think he's absent. Mister Milan?
Yes.
Mister Weeder?
Yes.
Mister Jelby?
Yes.
Mister Barano?
Yes, and what time does that meeting start?
Uh, nine A M.
Nine A M.
And Mister Pietro?
Lisa?
Yes.
And I will ask, you know, any of the applicants um, that had their item continued to the June twenty ninth meeting. If for some reason they cannot attend or would like to ask for a continuance, they could send me that request by email and we can at the, at the meeting on the twenty ninth continue any of those items to the the following meeting, which is the July twenty seventh meeting.
How long do you anticipate that the meeting will be uh, lasting on Monday?
At this point, probably five or six hours. The same as today.
Okay. Yeah, and and so one of the things that that I think we should mention is is that, you know, we have a backlog because of the crisis. So we, you know, this, this is um, happening because um, we we've had the COVID crisis um, partially. So I want, you know, members of the community to understand it's not that we're rushing items through, um, but we're trying to deal with a backlog as well. Well, there was the issue of whether we were supposed to be able to have this, have these meetings uh, because they're quasi judicial. And uh, so uh, I guess they they addressed that issue and that's why we're having the meeting now or else everything would have been much further backlogged. Correct, correct.
Yeah, and and David, I could just very briefly, I can speak to that. What what we um, what we did so so is to allow the boards to um, to issue quasi judicial determinations and 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 to rule on quasi judicial applications is we we provided, um, we provided an in-person location as well for members of the public um, and for applicants who don't have access to a computer. Um, they can appear in person at the convention center in a, in a very large meeting room um, where where there's access to an iPad with a camera and you can participate um, via Zoom. Now, I I I want to advise the board that uh, all of this is being done pursuant to an executive order of the governor which suspends uh, any statute that requires a local government body to um, to meet in person. That order is currently, that emergency order is currently scheduled to expire on June thirtieth. We have requested, along with Miami Dade County and the Miami Dade League of Cities, that the governor extend that order to permit, to permit local government boards to continue to meet virtually beyond June thirtieth, but just as a heads up, um, there is some, there is some question as to what, as to what comes after, after June thirtieth.
Yeah, well, you know, we are a hotspot uh, here. We, the cases are rising in this, in this county as opposed to and and in this state and I think some other states, Alabama and Mississippi. So we're, we're still uh, and in Texas. And so we're still in a, in in a reasonable position to ask the governor that.
Of course.
All right, is there anything else, uh, staff, we we have to deal with before we depart?
Well, that's it. Thanks, everybody, for your participation today.
Thank you, I'll go.
We are adjourned. Stay safe, everybody.
Everybody. See you Monday.
Bye.